Good morning. I want to welcome all of you to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for February 28, 2017, last day of February. And I want to wish all who are with us this morning good morning and thank you for being with us. I know we've got some presentations and obviously a pretty variety of, a large variety of items on the agenda this morning, so we'll move right into that in just a moment. But I ask that our clerk, Flo Evans, please call to roll, read into the record any announcements, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and get underway.
Okay. Good morning, Supervisors. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 3 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Betsy Wiley, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance place this morning? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, with that, then, we'll go to our agenda for any items that may be continued and...
Okay. For your Consent Matters, Items 1 through 43, I do need a motion to drop Item Number 5. It's the authorization for the Sheriff and Chief probation officer to execute an agreement with 79 Strong Media to allow for production of the documentary, Seize Fire.
Okay. You have a motion to drop that?
So moved.
Okay, move in second to drop Item 5, and nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then I also need a motion to continue Item Number 32 to March 7. Authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the Master Interagency Project Agreement to transfer, allocate, and expend all unobligated bond proceeds.
Okay.
What was the number on that again?
That was Item Number 32.
That has Mayther in there.
Oh, it has...
Yeah, it has Mayther.
It's just a continuation, so, but I'm going to abstain.
All right, I move for continuance. Move in second. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters abstaining.
Okay.
And that concludes my notes for your Consent Matters.
All righty. I don't have anybody sign up on the Consent Calendar, but let me turn to my colleagues. I'll go to my right first. Ms. Frost, any items on consent? Susan, any items?
Um, no.
Okay. Patrick?
Mr. Serna? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question on Item 7 and a comment on Item 20.
Okay, so we'll...
Item Number 7, Authority to amend and increase existing expenditure agreement with Sacramento Steps Forward by $75,000 for transportation costs for the administration of the winter sanctuary program.
So my question, and I guess I'm looking at Paul Lake about this, is, Paul, how are we going to avoid having to amend late in the fiscal year next year, this particular cost component for the work that Sacramento Steps Forward is doing?
As part of our report back to the Board on March 21st, we're also going to address the issue of winter sanctuary, winter shelter, and how we propose approaching that next year, what the funding would be, and to get a much clearer determination of what the costs are going to be, and do better, more upfront work on this than doing it at the last minute.
So the $75,000 for transportation costs was something that just was not either assumed at some point, either on Sacramento Steps Forward's side or our side, based on what, at that point, they thought was going to be the need for the...
Right. That's correct. The money that was allocated was allocated last year during the budget hearings, and at that time Sacramento Steps Forward had an estimate based on some very preliminary discussions they'd had with RT. And as the work went forward and the negotiations, RT identified some limitations of its own on how low they could actually go to provide that service. And that initial estimate was significantly lower than they were willing to go.
Okay. If I might add, because I know I got called upon, and certainly Paul Lake was helpful, that they actually had a contract with a out-of-county bus company. I don't know if it was one of the districts or whatever. That became problematic for reasons I'm not clear on. In addition to that, then they reached, you know, they brought some outreach to Regional Transit, and certainly, you know, Henry Lee and his staff working, and they were going to try to craft a situation where they could actually provide a navigator in kind, but that was, became problematic. If I'm not correct, Paul, in trying to maybe use some exchange for the services, still would have been a cost associated with it. And I do think this was a little bit more than they had spent last year or budgeted for, and it took a lot of maneuvering, and we were right up actually to the, I think, the rollout for the, you know, winter shelter program and the transportation thereof. And I know Paul and his folks, working with Steve and folks at Sacramento Steps Forward, crafted this, and Henry Lee was very helpful in that regard, but...
This is clearly much more expensive than we anticipated, and I think we're going to have to look at some other alternatives besides RT next year to provide this transportation.
Okay. Susan, you got a question?
Different item.
Oh, different item, okay, all right. Phil, you had another item?
Yeah, comment on Item 20.
Okay.
Item 20, Third Amendment of Fiscal Year 2016-17 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
The comment is this, and as I mentioned to both Nav and Nancy during my briefing, I am growing more and more concerned, especially as we, this board has discussed some of the growing needs, facility needs, and improvements for the jail, that there are a great number of facilities in this county that, as far as I understand it, we don't have any kind of accounting in terms of their useful life and how we are setting aside funds, amortizing funds to replace, not just maintain, but actually replace some of these facilities. And I think at some point, Mr. Chair, it might be worthwhile for this board to have a presentation dedicated to understanding better how we think we're going to be able to not just put Band-Aids on our facilities and hold them together kind of in an ad hoc manner, but actually begin to plan for replacement of facilities, including some very expensive ones like the jail.
Yeah, that fund often gets raided in difficult budget times.
Right. I recall, and Nav reminded me that certainly during the, I believe it was the '08-'09 budget year, that there was a great deal of focus on going into some of the reserve funds for some of the capital facilities to keep things like patrol sustained for the Sheriff's Department, and that's certainly understandable in a crisis mode. But when we're not in a crisis mode, I think it's coming upon us to plan carefully, again, not just to continue to improve antiquated facilities, which I view as, in some cases, some very unfortunate sunk costs. But, you know, how can we, how should we be looking at very long-term, in some cases, measured in decades, not years, how we are going to set aside funds to replace these facilities?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair and Board members, on April 11th, we plan on bringing you your five-year capital improvement program. And one of the topics in there is county facilities. There's a whole lot of work that's going right now to look at the facilities. Our average age when facilities were built is 1976, 1977, so that gives you an idea. I still think that was 10 years ago, but it's been a long time. So we look forward to having that conversation.
Great. And part of that presentation, Ab, could it include giving this board and the public some idea about our property holdings, too? So that, so we can, at some point, maybe explore how we might dispose of properties that we think are not necessarily needed, and maybe use that as seed funding for some of these costs associated with replacement?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I would just weigh in. I had a chance to get a briefing, as I'm sure others did, on this, and I'm supportive of the item, but I would just say that, you know, of all the items here, we've got seven, roughly 7.6 million of them are associated with the jail or RCCC, and we've had some other conversations about other activities. And I think this assessment of not just aging facilities, but when I look at the list here, it's, you know, you've got some ADA and fire system upgrades in this building, and, you know, a little bit of transportation at the Ag Commissioners Building, which that was pre-77, I can assure you of that. But it just seems to me that the amount of funds that are being devoted here, recognizing facilities are aging in place, and yet, when you have 24/7 institutions, they require, obviously, probably a little more attention. But you look at this, and then I know we're still paying the debt service, a portion of that for the sheriff in order to offset that, so we can free up some funds, and it comes out of this same pot of money. And I think that April 11th, that's where you're coming back, so I'm focused on that, because, you know, as we're looking at surplus properties, I also have, I mentioned this to you last night on Nav, take a look at some of our leases. You know, they show up periodically on our agenda for renewal and so forth. And I guess, you know, not just our assets, but all the leases that we have, I mean, I don't know how many tens of millions of dollars a year we put out, both for maintaining facilities we own, and then we account for that internally. We charge all of our tenants, including, you know, for this space right here, in order to maintain those facilities. I think it needs a clear examination. It does. We're post-recession, we're in a better, a little better position, but now that we're getting better, and it doesn't relate so much to the capital improvement program as it just, where we're headed with all this? I mean, you know, I think that in years past, we've had planning documents, we've looked about whether we're going to maintain in this downtown presence, what we're going to do out at Bradshaw facilities, but we're all over this county, and that's a good thing in the sense we're in communities that we serve. But there's a tremendous cost associated with that, and it's just, it's assumed and presumed in our budgets, and it's, you know, the departments are the clients for general services on the leases, and general services has a responsibility to, you know, to make improvements. And I think it warrants a full discussion. And it looks like April 11th is going to be a pretty loaded-up day. We talked about that as well, so we've run out enough time on this one, because I trust there's going to be interest by all five board members up here, and I think it, but I think it should take a look, if you're going to look at property assets and leases.
Got it.
Got it? Okay, thanks. All right. Anything else on this, Mr. Serna? Okay, thanks. Susan, anything else on this one?
Thank you. I declined earlier and forgot that I want to make a comment on Item 31 to planning. It's a boundary line adjustment on Maple Lane, and I talked, we had a comment letter from a neighbor that there were several heritage oaks on the property, and evidently, in a boundary line adjustment, we cannot make a note on the property about heritage trees. And we don't know that they're heritage trees, they haven't been surveyed, but I would just ask planning to do what they can to make a note on the property, so if an application comes in, that review is taken care of. Thanks, Mike.
Good. And I did have a comment on Item 2. Would you be able to read that into the record?
Item Number 2, Extension of the Proclamation of the Local State of Emergency Due to Extreme Weather Storms of January 2017.
Yes. On this one, Nav, as we continue to extend the disaster declaration, which we now have two of them, as I've talked to folks over the last couple of weeks, and people, you know, seeking information on what assistance might be available, particularly in portions of South County where it's only now beginning to dry out, but there's been levy damage on private levies, there's been damage to farms, certainly to some of the farming operations, some houses have been flooded. But one of the things that I recall that provided at least some level of streamlining for folks that were hit in the '97-'98 events was that some technical assistance by county, but also there was some coverage in the event that there was any SEQA required for, say, you know, replacing damaged levies and holes. It had a fairly brief window, but we were of assistance in making sure that landowners, and if there were small reclamation districts, some of them were more organized than others, but that we helped with that, and we provided good information. And I know our OES and coordinating with National Conservation Resource Service and others were helpful in that regard. But I'm just wondering, you know, is that something that we will do? And has there been any information provided on that? I don't expect the answer right here this morning, but this is a continuing declaration, and maybe by tomorrow we could have some information, because people are looking at the damage, doing assessments, and trying to figure out what they do next. And I actually had the inquiry on Friday evening. I met with a farmer who just, some pretty devastating damage on the New Hope Road area there in the southern part of the county, and, but he said, you know, "I got the equipment to fix this, but I don't, if I'm going to get out there, you know, and there's a, you know, a seasonal, you know, stream there, and, you know, what's it going to take, and can I get in there? And am I going to, you know, is somebody going to be out here telling me that, you know, you're not supposed to be doing that?" And so I think that type of assistance can be very helpful. The other thing I would just, would ask is, and this related more to the upstream levies in the Slough House area and Wilton area, but in '97-'98, we did make the offer. I don't think anybody took us up on it because the soil type didn't fit, but because we had soil out at the Kiefer landfill, again, we use it for cover, so it wasn't like, it wasn't going to be used at some point in time, but in advance, folks could use that, we were going to make it available, and I think our board gave direction at the time. I don't know if that makes sense for folks in the rural southern part of the county, but the soil type may not be compatible. It may be more of clays than it is, you know, silt, sandy loam down in some of the areas of the, you know, western portion of the county. But at any rate, I wanted to ask those questions, because people are now beginning, as I said, to mobilize, the sun's out, and things are beginning to dry out a bit, and I think they're trying to figure out if there's going to be any level of assistance, and if it's not any disaster assistance, maybe some technical assistance and some coverage under either state and/or federal declarations that would give them some ability to do that work very immediately, and not have to, you know, worry about somebody coming out and citing them for being in areas they weren't supposed to be in or something, so...
We'll look into that.
Okay, thanks. All right. So any other items on the Consent Calendar, Board members? If not, I have no one signed to speak. Anyone who wished to address any item on the Consent Calendar? All right, then, so noted, then a motion will be in order.
Who consent?
Okay. Chair with second. So let's move in second to approve the Consent Calendar. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters abstained from Item Number 32.
Okay, very good. Okay, with that, we have some presentations.
Yes. Item 44 is the Presentation of Resolution Honoring Paul Filio on the Occasion of His Retirement.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the Board of Supervisors. Rob Leonard, Chief Deputy County Executive, here with Paul this morning. Paul Filio, our Director of Waste Management, with some real mixed feelings on my part being here with Paul, and I think shared by a number of staff people from the Department of Waste Management who are here with us this morning.
Could we move to drop it from the agenda? Does that make any difference?
Yeah, second from the floor, yeah.
We're not taking any, no speakers on this item, we're going to vote right now.
This item is dropped from the agenda. But seriously, here with a great degree of respect and admiration for Paul, and recognition of more than 27 years of service to Sacramento County. And Paul, as you will be hearing, served in a variety of roles, has truly benefited this organization in many ways as he's moved about the organization. The last 10 years as Director of our Department of Waste Management and Recycling, during which he's demonstrated great leadership to the department, to the Solid Waste Authority through a period of significant change in the regulatory environment that impacts his industry. He's led the department, and I believe he's provided great advice and guidance to both the County Executive's Office and the Board of Supervisors during this period. Earlier in our careers, we had the opportunity to work together, and we were laughing about it in conversation, several conversations over the last few months, where out at McClellan, when we were dealing with the challenges of the closure and conversion of McClellan Air Force Base, Paul was the Chief of Engineering for the Department of Military Base Conversion, wherein the chief was the important part, because everybody was a chief, because we realized that if you didn't have an important title, nobody from the Air Force would meet with you. And so although our engineering department was a department of one, Paul was the chief and accomplished a lot of great things. So a lot of great memories, Paul, a lot of great accomplishments, and turn it over to Don.
Well, just to follow on to what Rob said, I'm not so sure even of the title of Chief, that it got you to meet with anybody, so, I know it was supervisor, and, you know, we had a hard time sometimes, but a lot of good work, and certainly, Paul, we're here to recognize you this morning, and appreciate Rob's introduction. I'm going to take a moment and kind of run through the resolution, because I think it sums up as best one could, you know, a few whereas's, a very distinguished career, certainly in public service, but a number of the facets of the career in which Paul served in many roles, and certainly, you know, worked his way, not only up the ladder, but also, I think, contributed in so many ways to things that have really benefited the people of Sacramento County. And again, this morning, we all recognize you for your more than 27 years of dedicated service to County Sacramento, its citizens and residents, and we would note that you were born and raised in Annadale, Virginia. You attended local schools. I didn't have which high school you graduated from, so that didn't get mentioned in here, but you want to tell us?
It's Annadale High School.
Oh, Annadale High School, okay. It was a big town, you could tell, so, just like Gull, Gull High School. You received your, earned your Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering from Clarkson University in New York State, is that in upper New York State?
Upper New York State.
Upper, upper New York State, close to the...
Close to Canada.
Yeah, close to Canada, okay. But he didn't go across the border, he stayed right here within the 48 continental states. He went on to attain his Master of Arts degree in civil engineering in 1984 from the University of Colorado, and worked for a time for the US Army Corps of Engineers prior to his move to Sacramento. And again, I didn't learn how it was that you came to Sacramento with the Corps?
Yes, to it.
Okay. And that was our good fortune that you did. You began your career with Sacramento County in 1990, initially, and this goes to some of the things that Rob was talking about with the Department of Public, again, Department of Public Works, and later in assignments with the Department of Water Resources, County Engineering, Office of Military Base Conversion, Sacramento Sanitation Districts, and finally, of course, his service with the Department of Waste Management Recycling. First as Associate Civil Engineer, Senior Civil Engineer, Principal Civil Engineer, he did all those things. He could only go to Director, and so then his current position is Director of Waste Management. Under his leadership and direction, the department has achieved many milestones, and some are mentioned here, including the completion of the conversion of the on-road fleet to natural gas fuel vehicles, and implementation of a culture of safe work practices, both in the field, but certainly in the Kiefer landfill and other assets, the transfer stations that we maintain and operate. He also oversaw the growth and improvement in operating revenues. You have healthy budget, and certainly, it makes you a target for other departments, but you're enterprise fund, so it's kind of tough to, you take too much of that away from you. And all the while, though, you maintained, I think, some of the lowest facility fees, and obviously residential collection rates in the region. We haven't had a rate increase in the recovery section.
2010.
Since 2010, so you really held the line, and again, I know our board and certainly the people we serve appreciate that. And in fact, even coming through the Great Recession, the department was able to weather it in a way that didn't, in that department, require a single layoff. Additionally, in your role, you've served as the manager for the Sacramento Regional Solid Waste Authority, and helped guide that organization and its members, the, most recently, the City of Sacramento and the County of Sacramento, Cetrus Heights was with us for a while. And we actually moved us to the forefront of recycling program performance, were looked to by the state as an entity that's innovative, but also that contributes to, not only to good recycling protocols, but the economic and environmental development and performance in this community. You forged coalitions with businesses, municipalities, public agencies, nonprofits, and other stakeholders, which has helped this county and its member entities in the Solid Waste Authority to receive the Integrated Waste Management, Solid Waste Management System Gold Medal, and helped secure more than $2 million in grants and payments, incentive funds to enhance operations, which again, has brought significant savings and benefited ratepayers and residents of this county. In addition to your daily work, though, Paul has also demonstrated a real commitment to his community and helped out in many other ways, in addition to obviously participating in his children's growth and development as they went through schools. He served as a member of the Advisor Committee for the Laguna Creek High School Green Energy Technology Academy, and has also volunteered his time and resources for projects elsewhere in the world, including efforts to provide clean drinking water to people in remote villages of Ethiopia. And I think it's in keeping with Paul's belief and his credo that in helping others, you should seek value in everything that you do, including your, certainly, daily work, but that's true, right?
It is.
It is. You want to know how we know that? People told them?
I know how we know that.
Okay.
That's what I was looking at.
Oh, okay. That's a good thing, and again, I think it is important to memorialize that today as well. Anyway, all that being said, as of this Friday, you're going to be heading out another adventure in life, and that is in the world of retirement, and doing some things that you want to pursue in a way that, you know, certainly brings satisfaction to you and your significant others and loved ones. And so, in the company of your loving wife Kathy, and certainly with your daughter Erin and Kyle, you've devoted a lot of time to your family and to certainly helping them in ways that they've supported you as well. But you have a very deep passion for running, for cycling, and outdoor athletic endeavors, and so I guess your plan is, I assume it's after the snow melts, but maybe not, that you're going to embark upon a five-day, five days, excuse me, 50-day, 50, five-day, 50-mile backpacking trip in Yosemite, and...
After the snow melts.
After the snow melts, okay, good. And again, I think, again, you'll have many opportunities to do those types of things in retirement. So as you leave county service, Paul, you can know with confidence, as we all do, that during your career and your tenure, you've served the people of Sacramento County well, you've served with integrity and conviction, and you've made a great contribution to an improved quality of life for citizens and residents of Sacramento County. So with all that being said, this board, on behalf of the people of Sacramento County, wants to extend its sincere appreciation and gratitude to you for your 27 years of good work, of dedicated public service, and also extend best wishes to you, Kathy, to your family, for good health, much happiness, and many blessings in all the years to come. Congratulations, Paul. Do you all want to join? We're not going to let him go easy, so we're all going to lean on you, so, okay? Not Kathy. We got a picture, we're going to say some words, so.
Well, as you're getting back to your seats, I will remind you that I've been told I had a reputation of being very brief at the podium, so this is not a time I'm planning to change that reputation. But there are four thank yous I'd like to make as I leave. First and foremost is to the aforementioned, my wife Kathy. She has been great support, but probably most importantly, she's always made sure I never took myself too seriously, so I appreciate her for that. Second, I'd like to acknowledge Nav and Rob. I really appreciate the confidence you had in me, the mentoring you've done for me. Your support has been fantastic for me through my career. Third, I'd like to thank your board members. I guess I'll characterize my appreciation this way. We took a tally, and during my tenure, we brought 297 items from Waste Management to your board for approval, and our record was 297 and oh. You approved every one of them.
All right.
If that is in evidence of an endorsement of what we were trying to do, I don't know what is. So I really appreciate the confidence and the support that you had in what we are doing in the department. And last, I'd like to express my gratitude to the 256 men and women who make up the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. There's a few of them here today, but of course, most of them aren't, because most of them are out doing what they do every day, which is to take care of our community and make sure it is clean and safe. Today, those men and women will tip 60,000 carts, and they will set every one of them down with the lids closed. down with the lids closed. They will do that in the cleanest and quietest trucks in the business today, and they'll do that for the lowest price in our region. At our facilities, those men and women will handle over 2,000 tons of waste today, and they will do that in a manner of the utmost professionalism and environmental stewardship, and they will also do that for the lowest price in our region. So, to all of them, and to all of the many people that I've worked with in the county for my 27 years, and on behalf of Kathy and Erin and Kyle, I will simply say, thank you.
Okay, we have some comments by Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Peters, and I trust by the rest of the board members as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually going to refrain from most of my comments, because there's another meeting in about a week or so, that I'm sure we'll have an opportunity as well. I, I wasn't going to say anything today for that reason, but when I watched you up there as Don was reading that off, and watched you growing increasingly more uncomfortable, I thought I would prolong that.
You're too kind.
I, I do want to just say that, you know, in the year that I've served as SWA Chair, I've gotten to know you as the professional that you are. I've spoken with, I mean, people within our industry, within your industry, employees, people on the outside who work with the industry, and I have come across no one in the professional ranks of county government that has received more accolades and praise than you have. And actually, as Supervisor Peters was joking about, you know, not allowing this to go forth, many, many asking me, you know, is there anything we can do to keep Paul around longer? I mean, you are managing an area that is probably the most heavily regulated area in government, or one of them, in local government, and you've never used that as your, as your ceiling, that was always the floor, and that, that in itself was a full-time job, but you did much more than that and looked at other ways that you could improve the quality of life, particularly in the last year, I've seen you do that with some of the ordinances that we have adopted with your leadership. So, on behalf of the people of District Two, anyway, I want to say thank you, because whether, many of them know the name Paul Filio, they certainly can appreciate that you have changed the quality of life in our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Well, Don, I think you did a good job, you got him to blush at least twice. I always thought that was kind of cute. I wanted to thank you, wish you well on, in your retirement, but I, I learned from you that Waste Management was not just a service, it was more of a business, and I thought you were, you are very innovative and entrepreneurial in your attitude towards your department. Representing District Three, we get very, very few complaints about the trash collection, it just happens, it's something people can take for granted, and I think that really goes to the way you manage the department. And I hope the aforementioned Kathy is going to be very happy to have you home, and you'll be dropping this government lingo from your...
You better believe it.
Couldn't help it. Anyway, thank you so much for your years here, and, and doing such a great job in your department. Your successor will have big shoes to fill.
Thank you. Great. Thanks, Susan. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly want to echo the sentiments that have been expressed so far by my colleagues, Paul, that especially the parts about you being entrepreneurial and, and thinking, I would say thinking a lot differently than some of the other public servants that we have a chance to engage with on a daily, if not hourly, basis, and I will put it this way, that I've come to know you as someone that approaches a challenge, not from the standpoint of how does, how does the challenge fit within a regulatory context, or, you know, what are the, what are the parameters that limit the ability to problem solve, you actually approach it from the standpoint of, okay, I understand what you need, you're trying to do for your constituents, now let's go solve it. And that's been very refreshing on a number of occasions, and I thank you for that. I will also remind you and everyone else listening that, I think it was 2012 or 13, we had a chance to work closely together on a franchise fee adjustment that was not easy, and it hadn't happened in some time, so I had a chance to, to really engage with you on something that I knew was going to be politically charged, but I think with your, your leadership, we were able to see it through with the least amount of collateral damage, so, again, I want to express my thanks to, to your years, for your years of service, and wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you. Thanks, Phil. Sue?
Paul, I think I first met you in late December, and you took some time to begin to orient me to the county as a new county supervisor, and I remember our meeting and how amazed I was at all that you've done in such a short period of time, and the fact that you, you, you are basically taking the, the way we looked at garbage and changing it, and, and basically changing the whole business model, and the flexibility that you've shown in no garbage to landfill in the next five years, I think is what you told me, is that correct?
Well, at least no organic garbage to landfill.
And I just want you to know that I was amazed at all that you had accomplished, and I want to congratulate you on your retirement. I'm sorry I didn't get to work with you longer.
Big friends.
But, I do appreciate everything you've done for the county, and hope you have a wonderful retirement, and don't let any bears get you in Yosemite on that backpacking trip.
Well, thank you, Sue. Paul, just quickly, I certainly had a chance to read from the resolution, but would just note that I've had the good fortune of working with you, and certainly knowing you for, if not the entire 27, nearly all of that, certainly in my prior capacity in working for Supervisor Toby Johnson, I know, was able to counter you in the public works end of it, and certainly followed your career, and, you know, again, on the path that we both worked through in our, in our respective careers, and I want to just, again, express thanks, as has been expressed here by my colleagues, and certainly in the resolution, for, for your good work, again, for your willingness to, not only to, to listen, and then, you know, really, I think, roll up your sleeves and, you know, try to solve problems and address issues, and I can assure you, and without boring everybody in the audience, that there have been some particularly unique ones in the, in District Five, one, obviously, the Kiefer landfill sits, not in the, you know, in the smack in the middle, but certainly close enough to it, and, and over the time, certainly preceding your directorship, we had struggled with, you know, both the operational aspect of that, but also, obviously, how we fit in with the neighborhood and, and our work with landowners that are our neighbors, and actually, and some that were there long before the, the landfill, believe it or not, and, again, I want to thank you, I know that certainly, one of the Jason landlords out there in the Slough House that Mr. Dufresne certainly has appreciated, and I've expressed that to you in the past, your attention to his particular concerns, but I think that's the, you know, embodiment of, of a good public servant, is someone who not only takes their, their role, and goes with their job seriously, but also is able to look to the details that come behind a particular constituent inquiry, or a ratepayer, or a residential issue, in the case of, you know, garbage collection, those are important. It's the little things that do matter, and certainly the big, big do as well, and, and your attention to that detail certainly has, speaks volumes about your public service, but your, your willingness to take all facets of the job and, and, and run with them, so to speak. And I would just note, too, because we've kidded about this before, but actually, I had a chance to see Paul and, and his daughter Erin here a couple weeks ago, across the street in, to Labou, and when I was first campaigning for my, my first election to office, at least to this office, I was walking in the neighborhood in Laguna, and Paul had, I guess it was Erin.
It was Erin.
It was Erin, and I was out kissing babies, but I was certainly introducing myself to the voters, and, yeah, it was nice to chat with Paul, and again, the familiarity, and, again, there was a good conversation, but it was a good chance to certainly meet people in their neighborhood, and, and again, we kidded about that from time to time, because Erin is now a full-grown young woman.
Well, I would, I would point out that she's 25 now, so, for those of us who think Don's been on the, the board for a lifetime, you know, it's...
Getting closer to quarter century, anyway, so...
I would also point out, she's actually finishing her first month of county employment, and so, gee, I think she's watching, so, just a shout out to her.
Oh, great. Well, that's good. So the next generation, obviously, has been inspired by you and by others, and so, again, that's, that's a great way to certainly close my comments, but I want to just, again, wish you all the best, and certainly, many blessings to, to you and Kathy and the family, and thank you for your service, and enjoy retirement, obviously, there's a lot of great things out there to accomplish, and, and wish you well, so, thanks, Paul. Okay, next, we've got...
Item 45 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Indigo Moore as the poet laureate of Sacramento by the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission.
Okay, and I'm gonna do that, and I think we're also gonna have some poetry presented to us this morning, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, this morning, it's my good fortune, on behalf of the board, and certainly the community, to recognize and acknowledge a gentleman who we're gonna hear from in just a moment, but this is Sacramento City and County's poet laureate for the next, next three years. That announcement was just made recently by the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission, and Indigo was in a competitive process for that, but certainly his credentials, I think, speak well for themselves, and his contribution as a, as a poet and as a presenter are well-known certainly in this community, but I think both across the state and nationally, and he's, his work here locally has included teaching at the California Poets in Schools, he's also obviously participated in a number of different presentations, from libraries to the Shwiners Hospital and elsewhere, so he takes that goodwill and the good words to, to the community in many different ways. He's also served as a judge for poetry competitions, and provides, as we'll get a taste of this morning, some very inspiring poetry performances, both for audiences, large and small, and he's worked with a number of other artists in collaborations, including renowned local bass player Gary Pineda, world-renowned composer and musician David Amren, as well as Alvin, is it Ailey?
Alvin Ailey.
Alvin Ailey II, and dancer Nate Hunt, and he's a member of the Association for Writers and Writing Programs, and participates in conferences, both statewide and nationally, and so, we're very, I think, pleased and privileged to have you this morning to share with us, but also to join in the affirmation and commendation of you, Indigo, for your, your work, and recognizing you as a poet of distinction, but more than that, as the Sacramento poet laureate for 2017 to 2019. So, this resolution recognizes that, you can put this on your wall, it's not as poetic as what you're gonna share with us, but it does talk about you and commands you for your good work, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You got a picture, and then we'll let you read. Okay, I'm gonna switch around? Okay. Just do a double negative on the... And you can tell us a little more about yourself, and about, and you want to read some poetry as well.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here in front of all of you. I want to thank the Sacramento community, and to thank SMAC for choosing me. I've had what can be considered, I guess, a diverse background, I've worked in factories, I've spent my time in Desert Storm, I was an engineer for 21 years, I spent much, much of that time at Intel, and what I've always believed is that the divide between what we do in the daytime and the arts that we experience at night doesn't need to be as wide. Everyone in this chamber, the people you represent, everyone we know has a story to tell, and that story is usually expressed through the arts. I want to give you an idea, basically, of who I am with two short poems. One of the great things about representing poets is that we believe in condensed language, so I won't be up here very long, and get you an idea of what you can expect from me, and you will be seeing me over the next three years. Back through the storm door, I left the south broken, a busted wing and a crooked eye. Still, I wake mornings with the taste of honeysuckle on my tongue. The phone rings, voices weary with traveling, wires weighed down with crows in thick heat. I know it's the south, calling me to christen the born or bury the dead. Lord, I'm still addicted to its touch. He doesn't have long, Indigo, if you're going to come, it better be soon. In bed hours later, my mind's still talling to the phone's bad news. Weed, codine, scotch. I've ingested enough fog and brain ash to blackout the moon, but the crucible of the past is relentless, grinding behind eyelids. Memories spark wild along the nurse's telegraph, the lens focuses backwards and my mind grays I dream my past, a fragmented play spliced together with rawhide ties and silk thread. It grows claws and jumps the stage, a beast my hands don't know how to tame. There is no balm for the past dull ache. When the blue jay rolls up his song, the whole damn world spins down on me. Falling back through the door, I'm broken again. There is an extra star in Orion's belt tonight. I arc my mason jar up through the fading light and snatch the firefly in mid-pulse. The heat night, heat lightning is a distant sweetness, sugar pink throbs on nimbus clouds draining from the night's basin. A screech owl's cry hugs the pine-peak horizon. Behind me is an aluminum woos, a swing, a miss, a curse. In firefly baseball, the elusive lime-green flickerings mock us all. Blind in the grang, we are forever doomed to swing where they were. We swear and corkscrew to the ground, the tall uncut grass plays slither kite to the evening breeze. Silhouetted, mama laughs at every exaggerated lunge twist and fall, her fingers are Promethean tongs that trap each cigarette's volcanic ember, but tonight, there is more flame than a heart or a hand can hold. With a twelve-firefly lantern pressed to my cheek, does my face glow, mama? Do I shine? Tomorrow noon, the rusted beak of the weather vane will swing north. Mama, summer, the fireflies, all gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Indigo, for sharing, and we intend to invite you back a couple times later this year, if you could, maybe to just start our meeting off with, with another reading, so kind of be thinking about that as we go through the seasons, and certainly be able to share, so, anything else you want to share with us this morning?
Just that I'm happy to be here, and next time you invite me back, I won't be so premature as to step away from the podium.
Oh.
And thank you very, thank you all very much, and as I said, I am very intent upon making the arts a primary source of expression for all of us, and I do believe that I have the ability to do that. I've been, as I've said, I've been walking many walks of life, I've worn many hats, and all hubris aside, I believe I have the ability to speak to everyone, and I look forward of bridging all these gaps. Thank you.
That's great, that's great. Mr. Serna wanted to weigh in, and I think you may want to introduce anybody. to introduce anybody that's with you today as well.
First of all, Indigo, congratulations on your poet laureateness, I guess. Really enjoyed the two pieces you just recited. And I was wondering, is there a place where we can go hear you recite more? This is your chance to broadcast on Channel 14.
Thank you. IndigoMoore.org, and that's I-N-D-I-G-O-M-O-O-R-N-O-E.org. It's going live today. And it will have a list of all the readings, the presentations, and many of the initiatives that I am taking apart in will be listed there.
Very good.
That's great. Anybody else you wanted to introduce that was with you today? Anybody accompanying you here, anybody from the commission?
No. A lot of my friends are artists and therefore, you know, out scratching out a living, or they're engineers and they're at work right now.
Well, they can tune in on Channel 14. The rerun of this is on...
Friday, March 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Okay, so if they want to see you on television in the rebroadcast, a rerun for the early part of the season, they can see it. And this meeting, obviously, is 6:00 on Friday evening. So, but we, thank you for being here today, Indigo, for, again, for sharing and for being willing to serve in that capacity. I trust that it's not a very high-paid position, but nonetheless, I guess the satisfaction of advancing the arts is going to, you know, do us all good. And certainly, you're a great ambassador for that. So, we commend you to your task.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much again. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, retirement, a little poetry, and next.
So, for your next item, this is the Presentation of Resolution in Recognition of Sacramento Covered 16th Annual Healthy Kids Day.
Great. Okay, Supervisor Cerner's gonna do this for us.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and fellow colleagues, it's my pleasure today to recognize Sacramento Covered and their Healthy Kids Day program on their 16th annual successful event here in Sacramento. I think, as many of you are aware, and maybe those here in chambers and watching, know that Sacramento Covered has been instrumental in ensuring that especially our youth in our community has access to the health, healthcare coverage that they deserve, their oral and dental healthcare as well, but also access to healthy eating resources and a whole host of various points of entry into our healthcare continuum here in Sacramento. I do want to put this on the overhead, if I could, please. Can you zoom in on that? I think Kelly will remember back in 2015, I actually had an opportunity to attend, I guess what was then the 14th Annual Healthy Kids Day at what was Sleep Train Arena. And I was joined by Senator Pan and Assemblymember Cooper as well. We actually received our annual flu shot there from, I believe it was our public health nurses that regularly volunteer for the Healthy Kids Day. So, I'm not gonna recite all the wherashes, but please know that we are resolving today to commend Sacramento Covered Healthy Kids Day as a very successful event, this on their 16th anniversary of a terrific program. We wish them well and look forward to more years of the great work that they do here in our community. So, with that, I'm gonna issue my resolution to Kelly Bennett, the CEO of Sacramento Covered. We're gonna take a photo, and I think she's going to invite up a special guest as well. All right, very good.
Morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Thank you so much. What a pleasure to be here today. So, 16 years, and yes, I was at the first Healthy Kids Day at the Florin Mall. This event has been really special to us. It was actually started as a way to do enrollment assistance on a Saturday for working parents. We started at the Florin Mall. We've been at the Boys and Girls Club. We've been at Prairie Elementary School, Endercombe High School, Valley High. And we outgrew all of those locations because we had so many people in attendance that were coming out for health information, or they'd come out to get a flu shot or a health exam. But more importantly, our team would then work with them to connect to ongoing healthcare services. It's been supported by all four health systems for almost that entire time. And it's been a really great, it's our sort of big, one big splash event that we do each year. We outgrew those spaces and were welcomed into the Sleep Train Arena in partnership with the Kings, what, three years ago. And I'm excited to share today that the event is moving to the spring, May 6th, which is tick-tock, right around the corner.
Right.
And we'll be at Golden One.
Oh, very good.
And it's gonna become a more of an outdoor festival, really promoting a free farmer's market for anyone that comes out that day. So, we're really excited to announce that. But the reason, a big part of why we outgrew those smaller venues is the partnership with Sacramento County Public Health Nursing Team. So, I really want to bring up Kate McCauley because she and her team of nurses have, and she's gonna get her own resolution today for her to share back at the department. But over the last three, I think it's been three to four years, they've provided over 2,000 flu vaccines. And I think, what I know from Kate is she doesn't like a lot of public attention on her, but I would say, that same year, two years ago, she went on air with me to promote the event to give a flu shot to Slamsen, the lion. So, you know, all in the name of encouraging people to get out and get their shots and be well during...
Did you have the veterinarian there when you did Slamsen?
Yeah, standing by. I think we all got flu shots that day. Anyway, all good, such a good sport and all in the name of having people be healthy in Sacramento. So, I just really wanna thank Kate and her team. They always say yes. They always say, we can do as many shots as you can bring people out for. And it's so great to work with them. I know moving to the spring kinda changes things up for flu season, but we have other opportunities throughout the year that we'll be working with the department to make sure we provide opportunity for flu vaccine. But I think we'd love to have you come out in May and get creative about what other health services we'll be working on together. So, thank you so much to Kate and the whole team. I know you work, you have a whole cadre of folks you work with. So, I don't know if you wanted to...
I just wanna say, it's been a pleasure to come out to Healthy Kids Day, in addition to it being an excellent venue for us to reach some children who are not immunized against the flu, as well as the rest of their family. So, we look forward to being able to do that again in the future.
Mr. Chair, I think I probably left the scene too early. Would you join me down there for a photo with both Kathryn and Kelly?
Sure, sure.
That'd be great. I did wanna say, I think you shared with me that we do more vaccines at Healthy Kids Day than any other outreach throughout the year. So, we're really proud of that. But the good news is, anybody, even Supervisor Cerner, can get a flu shot when they're in attendance. So, please come out on May 6th.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. For someone that doesn't like public attention, sure are good public speakers. Thank you.
You know, while Kate and Kelly are still here, and I see Jeff Leatherman, that, you know, May is not, early May is not quite when we do the Kids Don't Float campaign, but it's close to it.
We're ramping up at that point.
Yes, so that may be part of, you know, again...
That is a terrific idea.
Yeah, yeah.
We was already thinking about it.
Okay, they already thought about it. Kelly's already ahead of it.
And you're sitting next to the right guy.
Yes, I see you got Jeff right there, and you had Rangers in the back there. So, but thanks, Kelly, for your work too, 16 years. And I'll just share real quickly that, and this may have even preceded your work with the Helder Kids, but when they still had the caravan, I remember Muriel Johnson was on the board at the time, so it's been a few years ago, but they came forward in flu season, and we were just gonna go out and see the van, the mobile, you know, didn't tell us we were gonna get the flu shot. So, that's the last time I had a flu shot, by the way. So, because we were on camera and, you know, it was kind of, you know, so at any rate, watch out for the guy who's got the needle that may stick you with your flu shot. So, at any rate, thanks for your good work and for helping families and children prosper in this community. So, we congratulate you and thank you, Phil, for your work and all the members of this board for their support. So, okay, with that then, we'll move on to our next item.
For your hearing matters, item 47, it's the Department of Regional Parks Service Review Report, updated for fiscal year 1617 budget additions and fiscal year 1718 recommendations.
Okay, now, Robert, introduction, or Jeff, go right?
Jeff, right into it.
Okay, you don't get the entree.
I don't. It's just me.
It's you, no drum roll.
Jeff Leatherman, Department of Regional Parks, and thank you for the board for having us today. Just to talk a little bit about the direction of regional parks, where we're headed with our staffing and our budget recommendations coming into this next fiscal Just an overview of the regional park system. And the map continues to shrink as the names continue to grow, as we add additional facilities to the regional park system. Just in summary, we've got 15,000 acres that we're responsible for, three community centers, six historic ranches. We have our delta facilities, preserves, including the Kasumis River, Stone Lakes and Deer Creek Hills, and four golf courses, along with our traditional regional park facilities. But the quick stats don't really tell the story. As you look at all of those facilities, each of our facilities has a small community, and sometimes a large community when you talk about the Parkway, that are dedicated to its preservation, to its history and to its success. And so, we are afforded many stakeholders that all tell a story in their different parks and facilities. As we organized ourselves around the service review report, we consolidated it down into these department divisions and programs. And I'm not gonna run through all of them, but really, the one that I'd like to highlight that some often, is often forgotten, is the last one there in our county-owned facilities, that our staff does maintain the majority of the landscape around county-owned facilities, and we're very proud of the work that we As we continue to grow, partnerships have been vital to the success of the department. The America River Parkway, Gibson Ranch, the golf courses, through our Course Affairs Committees, Elk Grove Regional Park and our partnership with Kasumis CSD, Gene Andel Park and our Sacramento Modelers, the list goes on and on of the partnerships that we create in order to be successful.
Could I?
Yeah, I can go back.
Mr. Cerner?
The partnership list here, Jeff, this is, this does not include the army of especially Parkway advocacy organizations that I would consider our partners as well.
That's true. This is just associated with our facilities.
That's a conservative list.
Yes, that have some sort of contract associated with the department where they're doing specific work. But you're correct, this does not even begin to encompass, as you would describe, the army of people that are involved. It doesn't include our community service areas that provide a bunch of different services in those areas. Just in general, this is the second time that we've brought the service review report. We've done a significant amount of work with our community in evaluating our existing services, reviewing those services. We've been to the Recreation and Park Commission a number of times over the past winter and fall, and really trying to isolate what kind of staffing growth should we be looking for and program growth should we be looking for, not only in the 1718 year, but then beyond. And further, how do we meet those expectations that the community has of the department? And that review effort has really taken us to this point where we're inviting questions, comments, and consideration by the board to really give us that direction as we move into the budget process for 1718. Catch up my notepads here. Just for some history, you have our projected personnel growth as we look out into the planning horizon of 1920. It also gives you a historical perspective of staffing that we've had in the history of the department from 2006. For us, this is not about hitting a specific number of staff. This is really about defining what the community and the board and the department's expectations are, and then building a staffing model to meet those expectations. So, we kinda look a little further through the breakdown in variety of colors here. I wanna highlight a few, but you start to look at our illegal camping detail that is called out in our Law Enforcement and Safety Group, really that has just started over the past couple of years. Our education and recreation services is there and has grown and shrunk over the past decade. As we've started to ramp up operations at Mather, that's also represented in some of the Dry Creek, Delta, Mather, open space grid there. But really, the core group of law enforcement, maintenance, administrative, as one would expect in the 2009, 10, 11 year, we had some decreases. And now, through action of the board, that has started to increase in various areas.
Jeff, could you hold for a minute?
Yeah.
Supervisor has a question?
Thank you.
Sure.
So, the first thing that I was drawn to on this chart, Jeff, it shouldn't be no surprise to anyone, was the illegal camping section in any given year.
Yeah.
Can you explain why there is no, there's nothing shown here for the years 9, 10 through 14, 15?
Sure.
Because I'm a little confused, quite frankly. I know that since I've been on the board, which is from the end of 2010 on, that there has been, you know, substantial amount of focus on illegal camping. So, this, I'm trying to reconcile that.
Sure. And that is represented in the Law Enforcement and Safety category, but in years prior, it was kind of rolled into our ongoing operation with our law enforcement and ranger operations. And so, what we've started to do in 1516 is call that out as almost a separate division, if you will, within the ranger services, so we could have a true understanding of what the resources and the costs associated with illegal camping were in our facilities. And so, that's why you start to see it called out this way, is it gives us a benchmark from the 1516 year of really tracking not only the personnel, but the expenses associated with that operation.
So, before my time on the board, involving to the left side of this chart, there was a designated illegal camping detail in years prior to the recession.
That's correct. In years prior, there were dedicated staff. They weren't accounted for separately outside of the individual divisions.
So, the right-hand side is intended to communicate that we're rebuilding that?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Cerner, when we had the crisis we had starting in 9, 10, that's one of the details that just merged into Law Enforcement and Safety.
Okay. To me, that's a very important footnote for especially the public to understand that we weren't just, you know, sitting on our hands in terms of illegal camping enforcement.
Thank you for the point. As you start to compare that with our general fund allocations, 2006 through 2019, 20 is where projected out. 2006, we're in that $6 million range. And as we look at kind of our future projections associated with full implementation of the service review report, we would be somewhere in that, just over, or just under the $10 million mark. Now, I'm not presupposing any board action with this chart. It's just representative of where the service review report takes us, should the board choose to implement any portions of that during your budget deliberations. And that takes us really to the crux of what we're working on in 1718 is our implementation goals. And that drives also the positions that we're looking for and our priorities associated with it. In 1718, we're really looking at reinforcing that positive identity and brand within the regional park system, connecting with our Sacramento County residents through outreach and education. You'll see that reflected in some of our priorities, but there is tremendous opportunity to bring people into our regional park system, have them stay local, especially as we look at our youth through the education process and our partnerships that we currently have. We're also looking at expanding that. How do we drive more users from the youth population and from our schools into our facilities and help them to be our future advocates and future protections of our park and resources? Improving an outreach and communication effort to reveal the accomplishments of the department. Frankly, we don't talk enough about the good things that we do. We have a tremendous resource that we not only protect, but also that we provide activities and special events for. And we need to do a better job of our outreach in letting the community know what those things are. We need to identify the necessary staffing resources, training and partnerships to deliver the quality services in a timely manner through our ongoing efforts with the service review report. We need to continually evaluate and respond to the public safety needs throughout the regional park system. And this is reevaluating not only our existing practices... And this is reevaluating not only our existing practices, but future practices and continuing to strive to meet expectations and do better. And then developing operational improvements and promote access by our surrounding residential communities. What we're looking to do is really enhance those partnerships, as you look at the Parkway, the Dry Creek Parkway and other regional park systems, as I mentioned earlier, we have a tremendous amount of community support, but how do we help continue to foster that support and continue to harness it in a way that's positive for our facilities? As we look at our specific implementation initiatives, first and foremost, initiating the Natural Resources Management Plan for the American River Parkway. It's been a project that we've been working on for the past few years, we took the draft request for qualifications to the Recreation and Park Commission last month, have some edits that we're continuing to finalize, and that document will be ready to be released here in the spring. Really excited about having that project come forward, it will be truly a tool that we will use for our future management and organization around the Parkway. Continue, as was mentioned earlier, our life looks good and you and kids don't float safety campaign, Supervisor Natale has the pleasure of joining me this weekend on Friday evening to receive Best of the Best Award for California Recreation and Park Society for that campaign last year. We were able to successfully stop drownings for the last summer in the American River Parkway from Memorial to Labor Day. And yes, I hear the claps in the back, but, you know, honestly, it is, it was such a pleasure not only to be directed and driven by the board to have a better outcome, but also then to deliver that to the community and really recognizing that people can be safe while recreating on the river and ultimately go home and enjoy time with their families after they're experiencing the river. We don't frankly want to be part of the headlines on the American River Parkway where people are drowning, I want other headlines, not those. Developing and implementing the Education and Community Connection Program throughout the regional park system. Evaluate and revise our illegal camping detail and our crime response throughout the regional park system. Evaluate and revise the department's fire field reduction efforts, that also ties hand in hand with our Natural Resources Management Plan. And then developing a capital improvement and deferred maintenance plan for the regional park system. As part of your packet you received today, kind of our deferred maintenance and capital improvement needs throughout the regional park system as an attachment, we're asking the board to take any action on that and we'll be bringing that forward in the CIP as part of an element of our capital improvement plan, but it's our effort in just articulating and recognizing what our needs are for facilities.
Jeff, Sue?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question?
Thank you. Jeff, when you bring your capital improvement deferred maintenance plan forward, will it include things like replacing the fence at Ansel Hoffman Park and improving the road in there and some other parts of the parks generally?
Yes, yeah, what we're doing with that capital improvement and deferred maintenance plan is we're trying to have a single stopping point of all of our needs throughout our facilities, so it will include those elements along with Ansel Hoffman, the golf program, but specifically to the asphalt infrastructure and our fencing infrastructure.
Well, they're not the only things, I just, for some reason, we don't seem to hear very often about, it's usually an emergency need, so I just wanted to make sure that was gonna get on the list.
Yes.
It will be there.
Thank you.
And so our top three priorities coming into 1718, again, this is our staffing priorities, we do have some other priorities around the operations with facility improvements, the Natural Resources Management Plan, supporting the new growth in Sacramento County, and that equates really to the implementation of the plan, improving our service levels in administration, recreation and planning. And what we're driving at that is the need for the deputy director as our top priority in staffing. Just behind that is the expansion of our education interpretive programs in Sacramento County, creating that link between all of our regional park systems, as you look at what happens within the regional park system, the Parkway tends to kind of be a standalone facility along with Kasumus River and Dry Creek Parkway, and we want to start really connecting all of the communities that use those, especially the children, through the education process and see some cross-travel from the communities of Galt coming up to the Parkway, from the communities around the Parkway coming down to our Kasumus River Preserve, and creating the link between our facilities. And then number three is improving our public safety and consistent law enforcement in regional parks, and that equates to a ranger supervisor, and it's got some bullet points associated with that. But we have been providing the supervision for all park rangers during operational hours is a key focus for us. Right now, we're having some supervision that's been done over the phone and at home, and we don't actually have supervision during all of our operation hours, and so that fourth ranger supervisor would provide that position. As we summarize, the top eight priorities as we're running into 1718 are listed here, the top three I just went through. As your, any questions that you may have and any actions that you may take, I would just ask that, item number five, which is the Dry Creek Open Space Patrol, you take that element separately, as it does include some elements of the Mather operation, and that would allow a separate action on that item. And that's the conclusion of my presentation as we look at the service review report.
Okay, Jeff, we have questions by board members, we have some speakers, any other comments? I could just ask you, maybe Jeff, just on your last point is you want to call out item five? I thought we already approved the Mather.
Supervisor Natale, as we asked for action on this item, on, item number five has components that has Mather related items?
Oh, yeah, I know, for, for.
Supervisor Peters, that's.
Okay, that's why, okay.
Yeah, that's the separation.
Had we not already approved that going forward, I thought we'd already taken care of that.
We had, this is an additional position on top of the one that you approved last year.
Okay, all right. And just on that, the improvements, I know that we have the item that got continued this morning, that will be coming back to us on the 7th, but the additional fencing that needs to get done ASAP, and I appreciate Troy's work on working with you, that's, as soon as we get two weeks of sunshine and gets started, right?
That's correct, and we're working with Economic Development on how we're getting that fence and the plan associated with it. The two weeks of sunshine may be a little bit of a push, but we'll get that trajectory.
Well, I just, I worry now because we're vulnerable.
Yeah, agreed, and we did do some additional improvements in some of our most egregious areas there with some barbed wire fencing and some rocks that have seemed to work thus far.
Okay, all right, well, I have a couple of questions, there may be other comments too, but let's go ahead and hear from our speakers and, oh, I'm sorry, Phil, you want to wait and get, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand the process that led up to what we're being asked to consider today in terms of possibly amending the service review. This is, this is a product of the Recreation and Park Commission and your office, Jeff, coming to these conclusions in terms of recommended staffing adjustments?
Thank you, and I apologize if I wasn't.
That's correct, we worked with Recreation and Park Commission over the past probably about four months, we had meetings in October, November, and again in January to finalize the recommendations here, to review the presentation and provide the recommendation forward to the board today.
And so this would morph into the recommended budget?
Yes, it will be, his requests will come into the budget and we will analyze it and then make the recommendation based on our resources.
Was, Jeff, during the commission meetings and whatever offline discussion you may have had with individual commissioners, was there any consideration of other agencies and their possible assistance in terms of some of the initiatives? Let me give an example. Chair Natale and I have mentioned to our CEO several times now, the prospect of having solid waste work a little closer with parks in terms of the cleanup effort on the Parkway and the use of our trucks and our dumpsters and trying to solidify a working relationship that basically amends what would otherwise just be the responsibility, I suppose, of just park maintenance. So that's one example, the other, which is a little more recent, and those that, those of us that will recall from our last Regional Sand meeting, I had proposed that we look at some of their budget that might be used for cleaning up the Parkway within the river floodplain. So, those are maybe two things that aren't necessarily, you know, maybe aren't something that was considered at the commission meeting, but I think it needs to be part of what is moving forward towards, but it needs to be considered, so that we're actually looking at not just what's in the realm of parks, but what's in the realm of the county to actually accomplish some of the initiatives that have been outlined here.
The answer is yes, and both of those topics, the department's been made aware, we've got some equipment purchases that we're working with the Solid Waste Authority right now to help us become more efficient in how we're collecting garbage in the Parkway. We are also strategizing on how we can make some recommendations in relation to regional sanitation and some opportunities that they may have to meet their goals that would help us with some of our service delivery as it relates to illegal camping detail.
So Nav, is that something that you will have, something very specific that will be presented during our June budget hearings that memorializes that?
Yes, well, the work product that's gonna come out, whatever we need to do to augment Jeff's budget or in solid waste, it'll show there. District engineer reached out to both Jeff and to Rob, two weeks ago?
Correct.
Two weeks ago, on the idea that was floated in the solid, in the sewer district, and they're looking at what we can do with that.
Okay.
If I could just follow on though, Nav, I want to maybe put another exclamation point behind this, because I think it's something that doesn't take a whole lot of noodling on as relates to the solid waste enterprise. We have a county asset, we certainly have a contract for pickup of, you know, some of the trash that's already retrieved. In here, we talked about a park maintenance supervisor and 40 ton a day and so forth.
Forty yards, right.
Forty yards, yeah.
I wish it was forty tons. Polables and tons, I deal in yards, it just makes it very confusing.
Forty yards, you're right, so, stand corrected, but there's probably 40 tons to pick up out there, so.
Very true.
I would just say that it's not just equipment, I think, I know we do this around the Kiefer landfill, that we have basically county forces and/or those who may be brought in for a particular effort to help keep the public roads clean from debris and so forth that, you know, gets blown off of trucks and makes us a good neighbor out there. There's that dissimilarity in my view about this, is that here we have a county enterprise that is healthy, and again, we commented Paul Filio and his folks this morning for their leadership, unless there's some legal hurdle that I'm not aware of, I think we need to be able to move into gear quickly, and it's not just about equipment, it may be about personnel, we have, you know, park maintenance folks that certainly have a role, and we don't want to displace that, that's not my point at all. It's to supplement that, and I believe we can make a very serious dent very quickly with the deployment of the equipment and the forces to help parks along the entirety of the Parkway, it's not just in the lower end or the middle end, the entirety of the Parkway, to allow us to, I think, be strategic, but to be effective and to be quick about it. And so I guess I'm gonna say, I want to emphasize that, I know the idea only arose here in the last six or eight or 10 weeks, although it's been kicked around, I just think we need to move swiftly on it and to get ahead of it and to stay ahead of it, and I think it's a good partnership, it's marrying two county agencies, and it's a county maintained asset, and I think it helps supplement parks and allows park maintenance supervisors and other folks to do other things that they do in the normal day rather than just pick up and supervise a picking up of the trash. And so I guess I would ask that we, you know, have a plan, you're gonna come back to us in April 11th with some other stuff on capital, I don't know when we can get back to us, but I'd like to see something, not just, I don't want to wait till June budget, I think we could talk about this more quickly and be effective in the springtime and actually dealing with not only the camp, you know, some of the camp debris that's left out there, but other debris and really make a, you know, a significant dent, we know where those problem areas are and.
Supervisor Natale, as Jeff and Paul both have the green light to do what they need to do, assist once the waters recede, the long-term solution that we're looking at is that if there are other things we can do, solid waste fund to help us out, that's what we're debating at this point. But the green light is there for him to use, whatever he needs to do to clean the Parkway once floodwaters go back, and that's true for Dry Creek, any of the other areas.
Any of the tributaries, okay.
Anywhere.
Well, that's good, no, I forget, it does be.
That's all in motion, we have the authority to do that.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Serna, okay, that's good.
So, Nav, you mentioned that you're, I guess you're talking directly with Prabakar about the prospect of what the Regional Sand Board might do to appropriate resources to help in this regard. Is it possible that you, working with your counterpart at Regional Sand, could put together a schedule for the Regional Sand Board to act so that we have, we know one way or another whether or not there will be some resources from Regional Sand to clean within the floodplain by June, so that we have a better, clearer understanding of all the component parts and how that might affect the park's budget?
I want to ask Rob, because he had the latest conversation with Prabakar, so Rob.
Yes, Supervisor Serna, I spoke with Prabakar, the district engineer, last week, we have meetings that are, a meeting that's being, follow-up meeting that's being scheduled, we talked about several concepts in specific detail in terms of, say, for example, funding an additional position within parks and also other alternatives in terms of non-staff resources to meet this, we could certainly be back to the board and the sanitation district board prior to June with the product of this discussion.
I'd like to have a briefing, if we can schedule a briefing, I guess with you, Rob, to understand a little bit more in greater detail in terms of what the possibilities are. You mentioned perhaps funding another FTE for parks, but I'd like to understand kind of how that was concluded is the best way to use those resources. Again, we haven't done anything other than express an idea at Regional Sand, I'm actually glad to hear that this has progressed to the point of our executive teams in each respective agency working together to brainstorm, but I'd like to have a little more detail.
Certainly, we could set that up, and we were focusing on both staff and equipment and other resources to address the very issue that you're framing.
And I suspect the first action that would come out of that would be a recommendation by the district engineer's staff or the Regional Sand Board to consider, I would assume, pretty soon, whether it's the next meeting, I don't know, but it would have to be fairly soon if we're gonna get to a place where we, again, understand what we have in front of us for fiscal year 17 and 18.
That's correct.
Okay.
One other comment, again, I appreciate the effect of green light, thank you Nav for highlighting that, and I appreciate also the point you made about Dry Creek Parkway and maybe other tributaries, but the county, and maybe this brings a broader point beyond just parks, but with the Water Resources Department, you know, obviously there's creek maintenance, and that's one aspect of it, but there's, again, coming to some of the camping and some of the things that have, you know, migrated out into other suburban and urban portions of the county, but where the county actually has requirements for maintenance, if we were able to deploy crew or crews that both could, you know, do Dry Creek and American River Parkway, I think that there could be a really a strong complement and be a good utilization, again, of, you know, the funds that we have, and again, assuming that, you know, passes, you know, clearance with council, I just, I think it may be a way to broaden our ability and to really to, I think, make a significant dent in, you know, debris that we're seeing not only along, you know, major water courses, but also in some of the other areas that, you know, is not necessarily vegetation and so forth, but it's, you know, related to activities and whether it's illegal dumping or it's, you know, illegal camping or just, you know, stuff that ends up in our waterways, and I think to the effort that, you know, we're working with Regional Sand on, it certainly wasn't just exclusively to the American River or the Sacramento River, but I think there's a way to really build a partnership and to have a program that I think could be a model one for, again, how we deal with removal and disposal of trash that's put into public areas that are maintained by different entities, but everybody kind of has their silos on these things, and we've been pretty good about keeping the silo walls pretty insular, and I think now's an opportunity through your green light, certainly the work of Jeff and solid waste and maybe water resources, of defining some ways to actually utilize funding and resources, but also do it in a way that people have that skillset, and, you know, it's not denying the private sector any involvement in regular trash pickup and so forth, but these are county assets and/or county maintained water courses and waterways and areas that I think we ought to step up and see if we can do better, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could, you know, one of the things that was mentioned during the Regional Sand meeting where we had, I think, some good initial conversation about the potential assistance or contribution from Regional Sand to help keep the American River Parkway specifically as clean as we can, you know, I did bring up the fact that we don't just need to look at what's in the toolbox here at the county, we have a great, you know, pantheon of advocacy organizations that do great work in the Parkway, especially the Parkway Foundation that does regular cleanups. So why, you know, I think, hopefully, when we have a briefing, Rob, you'll let me know how and whether or not, you know, some of the, whether or not there's any consideration at this point of appropriating resources that might assist those organizations to maybe do more of what they do. I don't know how much, you know, trash and debris is picked up on any given, you know, Parkway cleanup day, but I have to believe it's pretty substantial, having been a party to that a number of times, Rob, you've been there. So that's one of the things I'd like us to carefully consider, maybe not entirely, but perhaps as an adjunct to what we're considering. perhaps as an adjunct to what we're considering in terms of staffing and that kind of thing.
I think on that, on the foundation, if there is an opportunity for us to work with them, we'll absolutely explore it. What we are working was more internal on what we need to do to make sure solid waste is available than working with the district engineer, and if the other one, advocacy groups want to assist us, absolutely, we're open to that suggestion.
Yeah, I'm, just so, you know, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, what is going to get the most trash off the parkway?
Understood.
Yeah, I don't really have any allegiance to how we necessarily do that, but I do have an allegiance to making sure the parkway's kept as clean as possible.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions about Jeff's report? I do want to know, acknowledge we also had a community support letter that was received, signed by a number of organizations, some of who are represented here today, and, you know, recognizing some of the discussion day, but also, I think, citing ongoing concerns about staffing and support for particularly the American River Parkway, but they talk about parks in general too, so I just, did you see that, Jeff?
I did, yes, thank you.
All right. All right, with that then, if there's no further questions by board members or comments, let's move to our speakers, and we have half a dozen or so, so I have Diana Pajeto, followed by Randy Oshman, followed by Dick Barber.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Diana Pajeto, I'm the Executive Director of the American River Parkway Foundation, and we are here today in support of Jeff Leatherman's process in the 17, 18 budget, most definitely for the resource management plan. I probably think the foundation has been a big pusher of this plan, working with multiple organizations from Pacific Gas and Electric, SMUD, and a number of businesses of the importance of a resource management plan for the parkway, not only to remove invasive plants, but to look at additional funding from state and federal organizations that would assist in creating the parkway to be the best that it can be. And of course, we are 100% behind a deputy director position that would allow Jeff to be freed up and have that position really concentrate on what it means to have a resource management plan done in a timely manner of hopefully of eight months to a year and a half. And of course, the second big issue for us is education on the parkway. As you know, we have been instrumental in having the Campfire Day Camp and Sacramento County Office of Education conduct outdoor environmental education camps on the parkway, and our goal is to really see how can the parkway and all parks really be used as an outdoor classroom for kids aged 1 to 99, whether it's for a research project through UC Davis or Sac State, but we have this great resource of 4,800 acres, so I encourage your yes votes and allowing Jeff to hire the additional staff in the future. Thank you.
Great, thanks Diana. Okay, Randy.
My name's Randy Oshman, I live out in Realinda, I do volunteer work on the Dry Creek Parkway. Jeff's priority list on this first document that was on the agenda, priority number five is a park ranger, an additional park ranger assigned in the Dry Creek Parkway in open space. I know this is something we discussed before, but I would like to see that line changed to where there's a, it says, "The additional ranger assigned in the Dry Creek Parkway, period," and the open space is another issue. On attachment one, it says, under law enforcement and safety on page five, "With the expansion of ranger staff, the department will be able to reinstate regular patrol cycles at Dry Creek, Sacramento, the Delta, Deer Creek Hills, and other open spaces." This says reinstate means there isn't anything out there in Dry Creek Parkway right now. So we're having a lot of issues out there with campers. Why do we need a regular ranger presence on the parkway? It's a five-mile section of the Sacramento County, the parkway's a five-mile section of 115 square mile, 114 square mile watershed, and if you're familiar with Roseville at all, Warrior Park, there's a creek that goes through there, that's Dry Creek, and it runs from Rockland and Roseville area, and all that water goes into Realinda. So in the Sacramento County section of the Dry Creek, which is about five miles, like I said, we have off-leash dogs, we have fires that are set by people, we have illegal dumping of trash, dead, illegal dumping of trash, dead animals and live animals, we have illegal camping, and it's very difficult for the average citizen to deal with these issues by themselves. We need the presence of a ranger out there. We don't see the rangers very often, and I don't want to get into all the details of what happened last year, but it's been unacceptable. An example, and I know my time's almost up.
Okay, Randy.
We have a camper out there now, he's been out there for, I would say, six or seven, well, more, eight months now. He's been in four different locations within a half a mile of the same spot. One location, him and his friends, they literally, what they're doing now out there, and I'm sure the American River, they strip the topsoil down, and then they reconfigure the landscape so they can have sleeping areas, and they can have this one area, can I continue? Is it okay?
Yeah.
They actually made a sunken living room where they have a raised area, and then they have where they can sit around it, and then they can eat their meals on this raised area. Well, they stripped all the soil away, so I was out there yesterday because this area has flooded recently, and the roots of the trees in that area are now exposed. Those trees are eventually going to die, and we're going to have a hole in the parkway, and that canopy, which now shades the creek to keep it from being too warm, because it's a savin habitat area, will now get warmer because these trees are going to be gone. And they're slowly deteriorating our parkway by doing this, and this is not just one, this is just one instance of many that happen out there. So I'll hurry up and get done.
Yeah, if you can conclude, yeah, Randy, please, yeah.
What's that?
If you can conclude, go ahead, I add a little extra time, but if you can go ahead and bring, say, conclusion, please.
Okay, so that's just one example of someone that's destroyed the parkway and is desecrating the area. There are many reasons why we have so many illegal campers. Each person has their own story and issues, but there's one thing they all have in common, they're slowly destroying our parkways, and our rangers, one of our rangers' tasks is to protect our parkways from this kind of disconstruction, destruction, so would you please approve the increase for ranger staff for the Dry Creek Parkway?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, appreciate it.
Randy?
Mr. Serna?
Is this the camp that you can see from Elkhorn?
No, that's, that's, excuse me, that's a camp that has been.
That looks like a pretty sizable camp last time I drove down Elkhorn.
Right, that's been there for a long time, they spend a lot of resources cleaning that camp up. That particular camper, a lot of people are there right now because just south of there, it's been flooded the last two storms, really bad, where Realinda Boulevard's underwater. So they all kind of migrated to that area, and I don't know what the situation is with those people.
I mean, I think the last time I drove by, I saw no less than probably 20 people camping out there.
Yeah, it's because of the water rising.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good, thanks Randy, appreciate your comments. Okay, Dick Barber, and Dick's followed by Mario Rupert and Mary Tappel. Morning, Dick.
Chair Natoli and members of the board, good morning. My name is Dick Barber, I serve as the Vice Chair of the County Recreation and Park Commission. I want to go on record for the commission that they are in full unanimous support of the amended service review report. The commission has reviewed this report for at least three of our meetings and has proposed revisions and listened to input from the public during those various meetings. We look back at the 10 years where we've come, when we had to cut back on staff, and basically what we're looking at now is a balance, a balance of the visitor demand and the recreation facilities and park facilities that we have. We've added two park facilities, we've added to the parks themselves, park units, and the population has, visitation has just grown exponentially during this 10 years of time. You can only imagine, we don't have hard figures available, but the population in the county certainly over this period of time has grown, and so has the visitor use aspect. The staff report mentioned 5 million visitor user days per year, which is quite a bit, and we're basically now trying to get that balance, playing catch-up, and I think the board has been doing a great job up to this point, but we're still not there with the service review report, we're trying to get there by 2019. The commission agrees with all eight priorities that are put forward. I think the top three priorities are, because of the specific workload involvement of those priorities and the needs that I think have become much more important with those are probably more important in the list of priorities, but then again, it's really hard to choose between, and so we do feel that all priorities are necessary. So I encourage the board to approve this amended service review report at this time and carry it forward into your budget hearings. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dick. Thanks for your work on the commission, too.
Thank you, Dick. Okay, next, Mario.
Hi, good morning, County Board Supervisors, Mario Rupert, formerly Herrera, last name changed, as you may know me as that. Actually, I come to you this morning, actually, just as a regular resident here of Sacramento, also Sacramento County, although I am actually affiliated with a lot of different organizations throughout Sacramento, just to kind of do my part as a volunteer and advocate for the parkway, and also an advocate for the children also in the district too as well. There is actually a community support letter that I'm pretty sure you have all received by Sarah, if I can have the projector, please? Thank you. Which, of course, you have received, even though I'm not on that particular letter, I do actually support what they are recognizing, what they're asking for in regards to the budget for the 2017 proposal, and also I do support for the deputy director position as well, which is, of course, highly needed. I wanted to also voice out in regards to the gentleman that had spoken prior moments ago in regards to the issues that are taking place over in Realinda. Of course, we also do have our problems here, also on the other side of the river, as we all are well and known of, so I just kind of just wanted to reiterate of, you know, what concerns he actually does have, as they are actual factual and taking place all along the parkway, and we do have illegal activity taking place. This is actually just one of the pictures, which is about 50 feet from, before the flood had actually taken place, that actually the road that leads into Camp Pollock. This is about 50 feet from where recreators would actually go. Last year, I had actually spent a lot of time cleaning up that particular area, and just off to the left of that picture is a road that leads into Camp Pollock. We, and myself and other volunteers of the community, have actually cleaned that up numerous times, but when flooding does happen, unfortunately, a lot of this debris does in fact go back into the rivers, so we just, of course, we'd like for your support, continue to support, to actually keep it clean as well, and also with the trash.
Mario, why you have the picture, I just wanted, so, again, appreciate all the work that you and other volunteers do, and certainly our rangers and others who help support. What's your sense about how long it took to accumulate this? If you're out there regularly, does this happen over a week's time, month's time?
This can happen, sorry, I'm going to cut you off, this can actually happen within a week's time, two weeks' time, it gets really decimated. This is just a small portion of that riparian forested area. Also, trees in fact are being hacked down, the cottonwood trees that run along Northgate are in fact, had been hacked down and opened up, which is causing that forest to actually dissipate and being destroyed even much further. But this is just one of many, many pictures that I personally have documented for the past two years as being an advocate, so if I were to share the pictures that I have actually collected, there would need to be no words, just pictures shown to show the progression of what we are dealing with here.
Before you take that down, if I could, through the chair. Mario, in instances like this, I think I know the answer, but especially during the winter months, were you seeing fire rings and fire pits and evidence of open flame?
Unfortunately, yes. Everything from fire rings to just downed trees to bags that are hanging on the actual branches of the rivers and creeks, which are actually fecal matter. Nobody wants to, of course, clean that up. That's just what we are dealing with, also with massive amounts of needles, and also orange caps, suds, needles. It is an ongoing situation, and we all understand that as residents and as park recreators as well. That's why I feel personally that the residents should in fact be involved, not just the county and not just the city, but actual residents, you know, if residents are willing to step up to the plate and, you know, coordinate some type of district cleanup, some type of community cleanup themselves, in coordination with the county cleanups and in coordination with the city cleanups, I think that it could actually be a really positive impact for the whole community, not just, you know, a couple times a year. I have actually attended the Creek Week celebrations twice, which is a wonderful, wonderful celebration time, but I just feel that we need to be more proactive and constantly provide cleanups and celebrate the creeks and rivers all year long, not just certain times out of the year. Once again, I have attended it, and this is a wonderful, wonderful festival, and I'll be very, very brief on this next one. The gentleman had also asked about acknowledging dogs. These are actually just loose dogs that are up and down the Two Rivers Trail, not too far from where we are currently, and, you know, the city and also the county had in fact, you know, redesigned and made that park a beautiful area, but unfortunately, due to the floodings, we have a lot of the individuals that are currently still camping along that area, and there are a lot of state and local employees that do frequent that area, but to have loose dogs when the other individuals have dogs on leashes, this is just becoming more of a situation here.
I just want to comment here, I mean, you take a look at that picture, if you didn't know better, you'd think it was a third world country. I mean, that is just incredibly distressing. Look at that.
Another one along the Two Rivers Trail. So once again, I do emphasize that, you know, that we are trying the best that we can to clean it up, however, when we do clean up and they go back into the dumpsters, the dumpsters are pretty locked up, especially at the ones over there at Discovery Park leading off to Richards Boulevard, but what is happening is that either someone has cuts or some type of pliers that are cutting the physical lock, climbing back into the dumpsters when no one else is looking, emptying them out, and then it ends up back on the parkway again, so it's a vicious cycle. So that's why I do in fact, just to suggest to somehow get the communities actually involved and to have them also love and admire the parkway. Diana had actually said, and also Mr. Leatherman had also indicated about the education for the youth, this is also a really good way to get them also involved because in fact, this is their future as well.
Okay, thanks Mario. You know, I'll stay up there, I've got Supervisors Frost, Serna, and Peters all wanting to weigh in here, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mario, those pictures are disturbing, and I appreciate that you brought them because I have not seen that on the parkway. I have been on tours with some of the groups, but what we saw wasn't quite that bad. I do have a question for Jeff relating to the Creek Weeks and organizing volunteers for creek cleanup. My concern relates to needles and risk to those community members, and do we have a training and do we have equipment like gloves, heavy gloves to protect people when they're out there cleaning up this type of thing?
Yeah, yes, we do, and the foundation, Diana Pajeto is also here from the foundation, and she can go through the specific protocols associated with her volunteers, but the foundation does coordinate our volunteers for the cleanups, both in the spring and fall. As it relates to the lower river in the Discovery Park, Wood Lake areas, we actually require that the volunteers be 18 years or older so that we don't have youth down there in the areas where we know we have some higher risk spaces, and then we also provide needle containers and other awareness, including the right equipment to remove those needles. What we've also done in the past couple of years is we're actually starting to pair our maintenance staff with those cleanups so that our maintenance staff can be there to assist with some of the more hazardous items that we may find.
Thank you, and also I just wanted to quickly say to Randy, if you could connect with me or let me give you a business card, maybe we can connect at a later time, so that I can learn more about the Realinda issues that you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna, and Supervisor Peters. Stay, Mario, you may have some other questions, I don't know, you don't have to.
Oh, sure, no problem.
I just wanted to thank you, Mario, for. I just wanted to thank you, Mario, for being here and sharing those images with the board and with the public. I think it just underscores why I've just, I've barked incessantly for the last six years about this. I can guarantee this board, I can guarantee the public, even after a big cleanup, after the annual foundation cleanup for the entire parkway, we will see images like that on the parkway. So that, I mean, that is something that is so prevalent on the lower reach, and I know it's prevalent in other areas, but the lower reach is ground zero for what you just saw on the screens. And as someone, Supervisor Frost, that has actually been stuck by a hypodermic needle while cleaning up the parkway back in 2012, I can tell you, it's pretty damn distressing when that happens. And especially when it happens and you're seeing all kinds of youth groups out there trying to do what's right, trying to clean their parkway. So I'm delighted, actually, that Mario did what he did today, because I think the shock factor is good once in a while for this board to encounter, but it just emphasizes and underscores, again, the need for us to really pay very close attention to our resource allocation for dealing with illegal camping and the effects of illegal camping. I know that there's a lot of debate about, you know, the expression of compassion versus, you know, being good stewards for the parkway, but as was just displayed, the consequence of people living unsheltered in an urban parkway is pretty devastating. It's devastating to our natural resources, it's certainly devastating to my constituents who want to use the parkway for legitimate reasons. I know of, you know, hundreds of people that have contacted my office over the years that share with me that they will not use the lower reach of the parkway because of what was just shown, because of loose dogs, because of being harassed, chased even, especially in the area near the 160 over crossing. And so, quite frankly, you know, as much as I am not proud of the imagery that we just saw that shows really devastating, the devastation to the parkway, I think it actually is very useful to remind this board that we need to do everything we can to, you know, again, appropriate the necessary resources to combat it. And, you know, it's not lost on me, Mr. Chair, that in the report that we're being asked to consider today, we're reminded that we have 15, over 15,000 acres in our parks inventory, and you think about, we have less than 25 rangers that are in active duty today to provide public safety and to deal with illegal camping. I mean, that is so woefully inadequate, it's unbelievable. And so, again, I know I'm a broken record, especially during June on this, and we've had, on occasion, the ability to, you know, find funding for one ranger one year, two rangers the next year, but as much as I do appreciate the work of the commission, and I certainly appreciate Jeff's difficult job, I think it's just incumbent upon this board to understand that our general fund allocation of $6.3 million is such a drop in the bucket in terms of our ability to be good stewards of our park assets, and hopefully, one day, we'll have the ability to maybe do a complete overhaul in terms of our budget and what's necessary to really protect the public's assets.
Okay. Supervisor Peters.
If I may add, as a suggestion possibly to help with the situation, if maybe perhaps there could be like some type of ranger station, even if it's not constantly used, at least it kind of maybe possibly would show that there is somewhat of a presence, maybe that might possibly be a deterrent to diminish the type of negative impact that we currently are seeking.
Okay, thanks, Mario. Supervisor Peters?
Mario, you can sit down, my question isn't for you.
Thank you.
I guess I want to step back and say, those pictures are devastating, and I've seen it in the district, the portion of the parkway that I represent, and, but I don't think we should lose track of this, this is really a bigger issue. This kind of trash is actually out in our neighborhoods. It's in the camps, in the creeks, and areas where there are not very many people, and, you know, it's, for me, I look at it and I think of all, when I put my trash out, it's usually in a kitchen bag, and then those bags get dragged out to these sites and opened up, and should we be getting, engaging our waste management people and coming up with a different kind of garbage can? I mean, we tell merchants, we tell retailers, we tell office people to lock your trash bins. Well, maybe we need to figure out some way that we can lock our own personal trash bins, because it's just so easy. Now everyone's neat and tidy, they put it in a little kitchen bag, and then they put it in the trash can, and it just makes it easy for people to pull it out and drag it off to another place. You know, maybe there's another solution, but we probably, I think it's, would not be, I think it's important that we examine some other way to deal with this trash problem, because it isn't just the parkway. As much as I hate, you hate to see it in an area of natural resources, I hate to see it along the roads and the creeks in the residential areas, and our, you know, unincorporated area and all the cities in our county. So I think some time needs to be spent figuring out if there's another way.
Good point. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted, before closing, to highlight that I'm also receiving complaints or concerns from residents in Rio Linda who would love to commute by bicycle to their job in Sacramento, but have tried it, and it's just too scary, and they've decided it's not safe on the bike way. So that's sad, because that's the one thing we're trying to encourage people to do, and if they don't feel safe, then is there a way that we can get more rangers out there to patrol those areas that are particularly populated? I don't know. It's a concern, so this is a good start. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I would just, I'll end my comments one more time, though, we've got a couple more speakers, but I think this needs a broader mobilization. Some of those pictures, and again, I would certainly concur, I was, I commented earlier along other creeks and byways and in public areas, that that just doesn't happen overnight, some of those accumulations, it may be done in a week's time, but if we're mobilized and maybe there's a better way to secure our curbside containers as well, I think that's probably worth, you know, considering. We aren't the only community that confronts this, I'm sure, but to look at those pictures and to think that that's replicated, I mean, that's even scarier to me, that's replicated not just up and down the parkway, or Dry Creek Parkway, or along bike trails, or in other creeks. If that's prevalent, then, you know, we're falling way short. And again, it's not just our problem as a county, but we share with, obviously, with our citizenry, I think the volunteer corps that has either enlisted and/or is, you know, stands ready and has, you know, offered their efforts. So to what your comments were earlier, now, I think this requires, you know, broader focus. I mean, you know, we take pride in, you know, our community and, you know, welcoming people here and so forth, wouldn't take very much, put some of those pictures up and say, you know, welcome to, you know, the county's streams and rivers and, you know, natural areas, because that, it is, it's disgusting. And so, I can't put it off on parks, I can't put it all off on, certainly on any one entity, but I think, again, I look to solid waste as being at least a part of the solution set here, you've already said that earlier, but I think it takes a mobilization, it needs to be concentrated, because this may be an ongoing battle, to use Supervisor Cerna's, you know, kind of combating it, but it's not one we have to, you know, certainly, you know, look at our flanks and look at how disgusting it is and say we're losing it over there, and then we go over and take care of it, and by the time we get back to it, it's another accumulation of that. So I think whatever we do, we need to be smart about it, but I think we do have the opportunity here to really step up, support our parks, our creeks and byways, our natural areas, and our community. And again, I know we face it on the streets and vacant lots, too, but this is, those pictures are worth a thousand words, so I don't know if anything else you wanted to add at this juncture, but we, so I trust you'll be back to us long before June with an approach that, you know, will, you know, ramp it up and hopefully have us, you know, in a matter of days, if not a few weeks, mobilize in a better way. If it takes emergency, actually, I mean, some of that's a public health issue, we've talked about, you know, what's in that debris, that's to be disposed of at the curbside, it's not just what people may add to it with their own, you know, fecal matter or needles or whatever, that's coming in from people's trash, you know, in a lot of cases. That is public health issue, and so I think this begins to really move up the charts as it relates to the seriousness of the issue, and again, it's not like we weren't aware of it, but I think, again, for those that may not have seen those pictures in the past or something that is akin to it, it's pretty startling, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just one last statement about this. I think it's also a good reminder at this point, too, that there is a very pronounced intersection here between what we're trying to achieve on the homeless rebuilding or homeless continuum here in Sacramento County, and especially the low barrier triage component part of that. Not that we're going to be able to get everyone to agree that is living on the river today to take shelter in a low barrier triage setting maybe in the future, but I do think that it will have some impact. And again, I think our obligation is certainly has been stated here this morning, our obligation is not just to responsibly look out for our park assets as best we can, given our other priorities, but I think as we continue to work very hard this spring on rebuilding our continuum here in the county for service provision on the homeless front, that when we see images like that and we understand that illegal camping continues to be as prevalent as it is, we have an obligation on the other side to, again, in the expression of compassion, to provide as best we can those resources for people that would otherwise be camping on the parkways, and not just the American River Parkway, as Randy stated, the same impact is happening right now in Dry Creek and elsewhere in the county. So I think we ought not to lose sight of the fact that this is one of those times as local public policymakers that, you know, we have a number of balls in the air, but that's certainly one of them that we ought not to drop.
Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to, sorry, I just thought of the Sacramento Tree Foundation. Are we working with the Sacramento Tree Foundation? Randy described how they're cutting away at the landfill and exposing the roots and destroying the trees, and that's, those are important assets, and so the Sacramento Tree Foundation, that's what they're all about, maybe they can help us in repairing some of those situations along the parkway. Are we already working with them?
Currently, we don't have any active projects with the Tree Foundation, but we have worked with them as a department in the past with various projects, whether it be mitigation or other planting.
Yeah, they're great. I mean, they've worked with me, they don't charge anything, they bring volunteers, their whole mission is around trees, and so I wonder if they'll be able to help us out.
I'm sure that that question can be asked and answered as well.
I just wanted a notion that, in listening to the discussion, and I think, you know, understanding the seriousness of the issue, it just seems to me that this idea of camping is seriously distorted, if that's viewed as camping. You know, it's one thing to be out of doors and certainly to be without a lot of wherewithal, but that, you know, that to me is, you know, that's a degradation of natural environment, and whatever your wherewithal or state life, that is not acceptable. I mean, again, those type of conditions to live under, it's one thing to, you know, further degrade it by, you know, taking the vegetation or cutting trees and so forth, but to look at that accumulation of trash and garbage, and, you know, and again, to have that portrayal of that being camping, that's, that to me is a terrific distortion of the idea of camping, so. Anyway, with that being said, we do have Mary Tappel and Betsy Wyland waited very patiently while we've kind of waded into this, and those are the last two speakers in this item, so.
Hello, members of the board, I want to thank you all for being concerned about the trash, and I won't belabor it too much, I have a few pictures, too. And the last picture that Mario showed, that happened to be Arcade Creek, and on the comments of Sue Frost, you hit it on the head. That was the accumulation, part of the accumulation of garbage that happened that actually closed down our creek cleanup on, at Rio Linda Boulevard crossing of Arcade Creek, which we, my husband and I had done with the creeks, the local creeks council for some 20 years. We had uncapped drug needles, so we had to shut it down for safety reasons, and we moved that cleanup now in the spring to the broad, public, open beach at the confluence of our Two Rivers, and I always do a safety check there beforehand, and no kids are allowed to pick up any needles. And that's why, we've had real restrictive cleanups because of the danger to kids, as well as we warn all the adults, of course, and we have our policies for handling dangerous things, but I wanted to bring that up. And then, this is for what I've seen, we really need more effective hauling out of the trash after it gets collected. Not only the picture that Mario showed where the trash was already bagged for being hauled out, it just didn't get hauled out. We had insufficient operation of whatever the haul-out procedure would be. We just need more of the garbage hauled out faster, and we need any full dumpster hauled out immediately, or it gets raided and the people throw the stuff down on this, this is the parking lot in the north part of Discovery Park, they throw the stuff down on the parking lot to try to scrounge through it. Most of it has, a lot of it has been collected from other garbage cans. A lot of these people are hoarders, that's why, who are doing illegal camping, that's why they got kicked out of any shelter they were in, or any house or apartment, because they're hoarders, and they not only accumulate fecal matter, but they also accumulate rotten food and the rat scum, and they get kicked out. Now they've brought that to our parkway, and it's horrible, it's a public health hazard, it needs to be removed for everybody's health, including those illegal campers themselves. And this picture is also from Lower Arcade Creek, it's just the best hidden pit bull that almost got my husband and I as we went in there with the camera, just to take a picture of what had accumulated under Marysville Boulevard Bridge. But you see that this pit bull is not only loose and uncolored, it is almost invisible because it's the exact color of the grass, and it did start at us aggressively. And so, the loose dogs that Mario showed, that's a real big problem, it's often pit bulls, and they're often ganging up at least three dogs together, and they're roaming around looking for food, and this is one of, I have a picture, one of the, this is one of the areas where we also think that this, these bikes that are accumulated, this happens to be on the land side of the Two Rivers Trail, this is about at north, a little upstream of North 10th Street. This accumulation of bikes suggests also people might be stealing bikes and bringing them right into the parkway, and it's very in-your-face for people like us who provide bikes for kids for safe riding on parkways, as well as the North Sacramento Bike Trail. This is a picture of August 2014 bike giveaway to kids for helping clean up the North Sacramento Bike Way, again with a prior safety check by the adults for those loose needles. And we gave out bikes to 57 kids and really emphasized through the city council of District Two office how there's interconnectedness with all of the American River Bike Trails. People need to be able to use the parkway safely for their health, and we currently have a lot of people that are dying early of diabetes in our county, the death rate, it was a recent Sacramento Bee article, has gone up 8.5 times in just a decade, for people from their mid-30s to their mid-50s. These are real premature deaths, people need to be able to use the parkway for all the combined psychological, mental, physical, and even spiritual health, and this is a degradation that has to be stopped, and we are able to do it, we just need to focus on it, and not quit until it gets taken care of, much better than it is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. We're still showing the white screen up there, if we could switch over to, and Mr. Cerna, you know?
Yeah, just had a question for Jeff. Jeff, what is our policy on the dumpsters at Discovery Park in terms of the, do we require the haulers to give us the, those look like 20 yarders that have some kind of enclosure on top, or ability to secure the trash at some point?
So we've gone through a series of different efforts with the dumpsters, including lockable enclosed dumpsters, and those continue to get broken into. In January, just before Discovery Park flooded, we worked it out with our waste hauler that we have a protocol now where they just get hauled out after our maintenance crews are done for the day, so.
So nightly, they're...
Yeah, at about 2:30, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, our waste hauler kind of does that as their last pull for the day, so they... that as their last pull for the day, so they will drop a fresh one for us and then pull the full one out. We were able to implement that protocol twice until Discovery Park went underwater, but that is our protocol from here on out. And we're also using that same protocol in other areas, whether it be the Dry Creek Parkway or others, that we're hauling that waste out, either with our vehicles or with our waste hauler.
So by the time they haul out in the mid-afternoon, I assume that our maintenance staff have adjusted their activities, too, so that they're not removing half-empty dumpsters, they're removing full dumpsters?
That's correct. So we're essentially running five days a week as opposed to the four days a week now, shortening our timeframe so that we can have the waste haulers come in and make that pull.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, Betsy Wyland. That's the last one on this, unless there's anybody else that couldn't sign up.
Good day, supervisors. Thank you for your time, and thank you so much for this workshop outside of the pressures of budget hearings. This is, you committed to this last year, and thank you so much for following through. Greatly appreciate it. Betsy Wyland with Save the American River Association and the American River Parkway Coalition. You did receive the letter that I'm sure you've read from the coalition as well as other community partners, and I want to, before we finish this workshop, I want to draw your attention to the second paragraph of that letter, item one. And this is what I consider the elephant in the room that we're not paying enough attention to, and we need to. You of all, well, three of you so far have articulated the issues with public safety on the parkway. I've worked with Randy Ashelman, Dry Creek Parkway issues. I'm working now out at Mather with the Vernal Pool Complex out there, as well as the parkway, as well as the Urban Creeks Council. And public safety and our rangers are that front line that allows all of us to be able to get out into our parks' resources and find them safe and clean and maintained in the sense that the natural resources are still there. You supervisors, I don't have an answer to this, but it needs to be discussed. You, in the last few years, supervisors, have really supported bringing our rangers back, and you've funded positions and allowed the ranger force to start to really come back after the crisis in 2009, 2010. But the problem is, and I really wish you have your chief ranger here, I don't want to quote facts and figures, okay, because that needs to come from your ranger department, from your ranger or your parks department. We hear this in the coalition because we have the participation of our chief ranger once a month. We hear over and over again, he's working on recruiting the rangers, he even gets rangers through training, and we end up losing those rangers. We've trained them to the tune of thousands of dollars and months' worth of time, and we end up losing them because they receive better offers elsewhere, higher paying, basically, is what I'm saying. So we've got to address this. We either can't attract enough quality people because the pay's not good, or we get those people, we attract them, we get them trained, and then we promptly lose them. So I would ask you to please hear from your chief ranger, get the story straight from, you know, the horse's mouth, so to speak, with the details, and then, like I said, I understand budget constraints, this is expensive, but it needs to be talked about. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your time today. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Thanks for your advocacy for parks for all these many years, too. Now, did you want to address maybe that last point? I know we have the ranger and certainly Jeff here, but.
We looked at the issue last year. We're going to continue looking at it. The issue that we face with it is that the type of work they do and some of the public, the law enforcement, police, and the deputy sheriff, there is an issue that they're having in recruiting and retaining police officers. And unfortunately, park ranger is one of those areas that they come in, we train them for post, and the police agencies pay much more than what we pay our rangers, so we become a training ground for it. Having said the negative, the positive that we're looking at is that to have a continual filing, continue the process, we know we're going to lose folks, is what can we do to keep bringing folks into it? The type of ranger we're attracting is a little bit different these days. It's not somebody that's coming in that's going to look at a career. Some of them are retired cops coming in. Jeff has a fairly aggressive outreach program that he's been working with the chief ranger on it, so we are, we monitor it, and if there is an issue with the pay, we will be back to the board if we see that disparity coming up. But pay is not what we're hearing is causing them to leave. Some of these law enforcement agencies and the type of work they want to do, there's more, that's more what they want to do. Jeff, you want to add?
Nothing to add to that, just a quick stat that we have currently, four vacancies. We have a new list that Personnel has put together, and we're optimistic that we'll have those four vacancies filled coming in with candidates.
How soon?
We expect it. There we go. We expect the list sometime this week, actually, from Personnel Services, depending on how long it'll take us to get through the background process, that's usually about a two to three month process, to get the background, medical, and psych done. That puts us right in the beginning of the summertime, June, July, assuming that we've got candidates on the list that we can hire.
Can you not do some pre-qualification, pre-screening on some of those things?
Not on the background check or the psych and medical. We have done the pre-qual on their skills and abilities through the application process.
Supervisor, I tell you, this is a lot of the law enforcement, more, when I say law enforcement, not the rangers, but sheriffs and police departments are facing similar type issues, is that the background check is what can hold up. We can fall in love with a candidate, we do the background check, and we're finding that there's some issues that come up, so we've got to start over.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Sirna, Supervisor Peters on this.
Thank you. So I've been aware that this is an issue for some time now, and I know it's difficult to figure out how to hit a sweet spot in terms of competing with these other law enforcement opportunities for these post-trained individuals, but is there something that we're doing to intentionally kind of rethink how, who and how we're attracting folks that aren't just interested in the law enforcement part of it, but perhaps maybe the natural resource part of it? Because to me, the uniqueness of a park ranger, especially a park ranger in Sacramento County with the kind of assets that we have that we expect them to serve in, is that there is a lot to be said for a ranger's responsibility managing our natural resource assets as much as providing the public a safe place to recreate. So are we doing something intentionally to kind of rethink who we're going after, being maybe a little more surgical about it than we have been in the past?
We.
To find someone that actually wants a career as a ranger, actually sees the merit of maybe staying with the county more than a year or two, you know, to serve in that pretty unique capacity.
You're correct. That is the challenge we have, is kind of finding that spot. The way our ranger history is, that it used to be was more the recreation, less on the law enforcement side. Given the circumstances for the last six, seven years, we have made a little bit of a shift more into law enforcement. In discussions with Jeff and with Rob and with the chief ranger, we are trying to figure out, how do we kind of recalibrate this, that there is a law enforcement component, you've got to enforce the camping ordinance, but there is a recreation piece, you went into this because you wanted to be a park ranger. Not everybody wants to be in the police force.
Right.
And I think we are getting candidates that want to be in the police force, they cannot get on, or the police forces are not, there's delay in it. It's a good gig to have, if you will, for a couple of years, and then they move on. We're going to continue to strive to see if we can find that spot, and it's a difficult one. I mean, it's, we're going to have to continue working on it.
Okay. Senator.
Along that line, I had, in my community meetings, I've had law enforcement come and talk about various things, and they all say, in fact, last week it was Highway Patrol was at my Carmichael meeting, and people were asking about sufficient numbers of Highway Patrol in this instance, and he said, "We just can't hire people. There aren't enough that can pass the background checks." Just verified what you did. Primarily, it sounds like they're asked if they've smoked marijuana in their past, and that's a disqualifier.
That is one of the disqualifiers.
Yes, that's for the younger group. And, but, it's just, there's too many disqualifiers in the application process. Not saying that they aren't correct to ask the questions, but, and it's everywhere in law enforcement. I've heard the Sheriff's Department say it, and now the Highway Patrol, and certainly I've been hearing Jeff for several years.
It's a continuing struggle for us.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? I have just all the testimony, we have the staff report for us, and if there's nothing further, we're going to break out item five under the, and we'll take the balance first of the recommendations as it relates to priorities one through eight. So a motion would be in order on those items, with the exception of number five, which is the ranger position, Dry Creek Parkway slash Open Space Patrol. We did hear Randy's comments about having that only for that, but, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Can move in second, and this is then for items, so one through four and six through eight. Nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, and then we now call out item five, which is the staffing for the ranger for Dry Creek Parkway slash Open Space Patrol. A motion on that? Chair, move? Second?
Second.
Okay, move in seconded, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay. And then out of this, now, we have some reports back, particularly as it relates to the cleanup and trash and.
What we can do administratively, as I mentioned earlier, I used the word greenlight, we're going to continue working as we need to come back and report to you on the status. We'll come back. What will happen now with the process is that Jeff will present the budget into the budget office, this will go into our whole budget deliberation, and we'll come back with a recommendation to you in June based on the priorities that Jeff has outlined and that you endorsed today.
Is there a way that this could have been presented to us? I mean, again, I guess it's certainly subject to budget, but, you know, this is kind of the workup to that, but, you know, we take things mid-year, and all this was is just basically say included into the budget, so that's got to go back to the whole vetting and around. Is there some reason why? Because hearing what he just said, he's got three months' lead time to fill four vacant positions that are already funded. If we don't take action on this until June budget, then you're looking at some positions that we might very well fund, that won't even get filled until latter part, if not the early part of next year, latter part of this, early part of next year. I guess that's problematic.
The purpose that we had in mind when we came up with this was to kind of bring this item to your attention on what's happening with parks. It was more of a policy, this is where we're going with it. It wasn't so much to augment budgets. That's not what the intent was, because we, quite frankly, we don't allow other departments to do this, that can all line up and have their service plan, but you had expressed, the board collectively had expressed some desire to know what's happening in the parks and what kind of activities are they doing, and that you wanted to have some input before the budget came into the county exec's office. That's the intent behind it. If we felt like it was at a point that we needed to start augmenting budgets for mid-year, that's a different discussion we would have had with you.
Well, again, I was just against the backdrop of items that we may hear later today or certainly next week at the latest as it relates to, and one of them is going to suddenly get pushed off to budget now as it relates to staffing for our CCC, but one of my colleagues, Mr. Sirna, made the comment, and I think correctly so, that just the request just for staffing that facility was going to be, you know, 50% more than the annual budget for parks from the general fund. It was going to be $9 million and some dollars, and we get $6.3 million for parks, and so that's contrasted, and so I recognize that those are all tugs and pulls and are properly vetted in a budget process, but clearly, you know, some of what we looked at today, if it has to wait until June for some budget authorization in order to begin to attack this, then I for one would say bring something back to us sooner. Again, we have the ability, certainly this board, recognizing, respecting processes for annual budget update, but I got to say, and this isn't the first time we've seen pictures like that and had this discussion, but I think to the broader question, I think it warrants us, at least from parks piece of this, but solid waste and maybe water resources and law enforcement. Again, you know, they don't, they aren't responsible for the cleanup, but, you know, they're a part of the team out there, and yet we're getting drawn other ways on funding for other things, and I don't want to get too much sideways here, but it speaks to me, anyway, as to, we leave here, and now we're given direction, include it in the budget discussions, and we'll see you all in June, and, you know, then we're going to decide against everything else what we're going to do. I think that some of what we're talking about here warrants consideration, and if it's outside the budget process, then I guess everybody gets to fight for a little less on the table this year, so.
Well, I, what, on the cleanup, we had the discussion in December, Jeff has made the adjustments on the dumpsters, talked solid waste about what needs to be done. We are not looking for any budget augmentation on that. We're working with the sewer district on what they're going to bring forward. The plan today was more to give you an idea of what kind of challenges parks is facing, being an assistant director, be a ranger, maintenance. That's the discussion we want to have, see if we are going in the right direction. It appears we are, so now we've got to put that into our budget process to look at the totality and then bring it back to you.
Okay.
If we felt that we could not do the cleanup that Jeff spoke of, that I spoke, absolutely we'll be back to you and say we need some augmentation in the budget to fix that.
Okay. Well, let me, I want to highlight this, and again, I think it's not unimportant because it's in, and it relates directly to what you just said. Priority number four, Park Maintenance Worker Two, talks about what that person does. It says, "This will result in an increase in trash removal from the regional park system. The Park Maintenance Worker Two will provide staffing to maintain an average of 40 cubit guards of trash removal per day, Monday through Friday, which equates about 10,400 cubit guards annually, under the current system. The department diverse staff during the winter months to illegal camping team, but starting in May, the team will return to the traditional maintenance schedule, which decreases the daily rate for trash removal during spring, summer, and fall." And so with that put forward, we know coming into spring, we're going to be short, and we didn't do anything today that's going to supplement that, and to me, that's an urgent piece of this, and all we said is we'll look at it more in June, and I recognize what you just said. So that, though, and if that's on the park side equation beyond other partners, I think that, you know, in light of the priorities, it was priority number four, it wasn't one of the top three, granted, those are very important and they have a priority rank, but that says to me that we're, in a few weeks, when springtime hits, we're going to be short again, and we're going to be back to business as it was. I guess I for one have a problem with that, so I don't know of anybody else, in the sense that you can bring another item back, and it's not to call out one over the other, but that says to me that, you know, we thought we're fighting a losing battle now, well, look at, you know, it just got worse when spring hit.
And just to weigh in on that from the operations perspective, what we currently have, and I don't want this point to get missed, is we have four full-time maintenance staff assigned to the illegal camping detail that deals just with trash, and so that is our constant. We bring in those other workers as they're available to enhance that current service. And so I don't want that points to be missed, that there is a baseline that I am evaluating off of, which is that constant maintenance baseline, and so, as I say, that there's a reduction where staff gets moved, that work doesn't discontinue, there's just a smaller result because we have to move some maintenance staff back out into the field and other results.
Okay, but these others relate to, I just took that one, but when I see the maintenance worker and the six and seven here, talk about illegal camping, trash cleanup, dealing with litter removal, fire fuel reduction, and so basically, all those positions are unfunded, and we just have to promise we're going to talk more about them. It's a priority, and it's not unimportant what we did today, but we didn't really do anything to conquer the problem, did they?
Supervisor, I tell you, this is just one department that you're hearing.
Yeah.
We have 40 other departments that can line up, give you exactly 30, 40 items that will be equally meritorious on it. What you have in front of you is a plan that we, you asked us, what kind of plan do you have to tackle the problem we're facing, given the resources we have? That's what we're presenting to you. We do believe that given the trash pickup, what we need to do going into spring with Jeff and with. Jeff and with solid waste, that we can handle that. Those items in the budget, if they get into the budget and they're funded, it will end up augmenting what we have. But that was the nature of the request today, was not to come in and prioritize parks budget over anybody else's budget that also has similar type needs that are out there. If, and I can emphasize enough, if we feel like we're going to fall short, or there's an issue that's going to come up, we'll be back to you. We'll come back to you and say we need more authority. We feel certain at this point, given what work we need to do and the work that Jeff's doing, Paul Philio and his successor will do, that we can accomplish what we need to do to clean up the mess we have on our hands right now.
Okay. Just one other thing I would just say though, that this rises to, you know, gets to one of the core things that counties do, and that's public health. And I guess what I see, and this just didn't happen overnight, so I don't want to just, you know, act like I'm shocked that this is, but this has begun to rise the level of public health urgency. And I guess that's what I would say. And so, yeah, all other departments stand before us and all the competing needs, I get it. We've all been here and done that, except for Supervisor Frost, but she'll get her time soon enough here in just a few, few short weeks. But I would just say that, you know, what we're seeing in our public places is, again, and there's a combination of things, and we're going to deal with, you know, the homeless piece of that, but that's not all of it. There's the illegal dumping and there's, you know, security at the curbside and all that. I just, to me, I don't think we tolerate that. Otherwise, you know, we haven't come very far in 150 years if that's what we're going to allow to happen in our streets and our, in our natural areas. So enough said. Mr. Cerner?
Yeah, I just want to respond to our CEO that I'm not, I don't think any of us are thinking in a vacuum today about, you know, just putting on blinders and saying, well, this, we ought to double the parks budget without consideration of the other multitude of agencies and services that we deliver our constituents. I think what you're hearing pretty clearly today, and again, I'm actually kind of relishing the conversation because now I'm getting the sense that it's not just me being a broken record on a subject, is that we're measuring success by whether or not our parks are kept clean and safe. I mean, that's not an unreasonable expectation for an elected person to have who has the daily responsibility of representing hundreds of thousands of people each. So you've heard from our constituents, you will continue to hear from our constituents, whether or not we're doing a good job, you know, where there's room for improvement. And quite frankly, that's the beauty of the system that we operate in, is that we get this constant feedback loop from the people that we are responsible for, for representing. And hopefully that inspires adjustment where needed here in local government. But I want to be clear, I'm not, at least I'll speak for myself, I'm not thinking about this in terms of ignoring other departments. I mean, heck, we, you've heard all of us speak as forcefully for the need for change and other aspects of county service delivery, whether it be law enforcement or homelessness or, you know, roadways. And I know that that is really a reserved conversation for June, every June. So I get that part. I think what you're hearing today, Nav, and others, is that, you know, we've seen some images that really do remind us that there is a lot of room for improvement. And I look forward to the June discussions, not just as it relates to parks, but everything else. But obviously, we can and should be doing everything we can within our, you know, collection of funding sources to maximize service delivery. And I got to tell you, I appreciate the fact that Jeff and his staff have been working with what they have, quite frankly, to do his best job that they're expected to do. I mean, that's, it's got to be frustrating for him as much it is for us to figure out how best to deploy personnel and work within very limited means to supervise and to keep safe and clean such an immense amount of acreage with so few people. So just wanted, just wanted to react a little bit to the county CEO's statement about concern for other, for other agencies, other budgets.
So we'll have a report back shortly about trash cleanup and how we're going to deal with that. It doesn't wait till June. You'll be back to, okay.
Yeah. I just want to, I don't want to belabor the point, but the trash pickup and that, I mean, Jeff and folks are telling me we have a plan. We'll let you know how that's progressing. If we need to augment budgets, we'll come back to you on that.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. Thank you all for being with us this morning. We'll see you back here at budget time, I'm sure, and thanks for your good work on behalf of parks in our community, so, and your advocacy as well. All right. With that, then we've got one more morning item.
Item 48 is the transient occupancy tax allocation policies in process.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we were in front of you two weeks ago on this item, and the board added four other options. What I was just going to do very quickly was to tell you what those options are and what we're looking for is board direction, where would you like to take this item? Just as a reminder, I'm going off attachment A of the staff report. Our recommended option that we presented to you was one million out of the TO on transit occupancy. It comes into a competitive process. The chiefs of staff get the, get the applications and they make a recommendation for the board who to fund. At the meeting a couple of weeks ago, the board also expressed desire to say, okay, a million instead of a million, how about half a million? That's in front of you two. You could do half a million with same process that the chiefs of staff make the recommendation. The other option that the board wanted to be discussed is that since the TO is generated an unincorporated area, how about if we just did a million dollars strictly for the unincorporated? Item number four was a competitive allocation and same thing, a million dollars instead of going through the chiefs of staff. You directly get to hear the pitch from civic organizations that want the funding. And item number five, that you had also expressed some desire was status quo. Our recommendation is the one that we recommended, just some very preliminary feedback on the other options. If you would like to keep the status quo, I mean, I don't think Britt will ever say no to have extra money in the general fund, so you never, he stands on that one. The competitive allocation coming directly to you, I mean, that's fine with us. It's, we'll have to work with flow to find a day on a calendar for you to have either half a day or however you want to structure that, so that we can have that discussion. What we don't know is since for the last 10 years, we've not had a competitive process, we really don't know what the universe is out there. We know if it's 100 organizations, is it 10, 15? But once we issue the RFPs, they come back, we can work with flow on how we will present that to you, and you get to hear directly. On the unincorporated area, same kind of comment, we really don't know what the demand is out there. So it could be that we could allocate a million in the unincorporated, might end up becoming too much money. And some of the requests, majority of the requests that we do get does come from a city. So one of the things that we want to do is create a process to tell folks, if you want to get money from the board of supervisors, here's your avenue to get there. So if we parse it out to just unincorporated, we believe the city will still have items that will come through, will still go through the same process we do, bringing that back to you. Half a million, we are, I think our feedback to you on that is, half a million does work, but we, a little bit of caution on that is, since we don't know what the demand is out there, we don't have half a million will be enough. And our commitment to you is that whichever process you pick, we'll be back to you about, hopefully more in January timeframe, to report back to you that we set this out, here's some of the observations we have, and here's some of the changes we think. It could be we put out a million, we only got 600,000, so we can have a discussion, where do you want to take that? Could be we put out a million, and there's 2 million worth of demand that came in, what does the board want to do with that? But our intent will always be to come back to you in January, have this dialogue with you, and get further policy direction from you.
Okay. Thanks, Nav. With that, go to my colleagues here. Mr. Cerner, you punched up first. Supervisor Frost, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, I appreciate the work that's gone into refining these alternatives per our last discussion on the subject. I mean, going through the options here, I guess the reason that option four seems most appealing to me is that this board doesn't, quite frankly, doesn't get a lot of opportunity to weigh in directly on discretionary funding. And so, you know, I've been told by the CEO that in years past, when it was left to the board to determine appropriating TOT revenue to various organizations, that that was a day-long activity. Don, you probably...
It was.
Remember that. And I, I have no problem, you know, appropriating a day out of, out of the year where we are very deliberative and have a, hopefully a rich conversation about how best to appropriate rare, pure discretionary funding for good purposes, working with responsible organizations, whether it be in the unincorporated county or one of the seven municipal agencies in the county. I don't look at it that way necessarily. I look at it from the standpoint of the substance of what work is going to be completed with the funding. And I think having a system where we're directly engaged to determine the merit of the use of those funds is one that resonates with me. So I'm, at this point, unless there's going to be something proposed by one of my colleagues in terms of a hybrid or option six, at least given what's in front of me right now, option four is leaping off the page.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Frost, and then Susan Peters.
Initially, when we started having this discussion, I was of the opinion that we should just go with status quo and leave the money in the general fund and divide it between the departments, just given that we are, there's so many demands on the discretionary budget and there's not enough money to go around. The, I've come to learn that, I guess, the county has in an ongoing way been helping some of the nonprofit organizations who have come over time. And so the question I have, is that how you came up with the million dollars a year for this? Or is that what you generally are ending up giving out annually? How did you come up with that number?
Million was a round number that we came up with. We, the past did not give us much indication because as I, in my comments, I mentioned that it's been 10 years since we've had any kind of process. We thought to test the waters initially, let's start with a million, see what we get. So that's how we came up with it. Unfortunately, it's not more scientific than that.
Okay. So this is just a way to basically create a process that's more formal, that helps us vet, do a better job at vetting organizations?
Correct.
Okay. And I wanted...
I would just say, too, we retain the ability though to move money back if we, you know, if there are other competing needs. I mean, that's the other thing, too, is that, it's just in the past, it's, perhaps the last 10 years has been, it's all been assumed by the exec's office, and then if we wanted to pull it out, you know, it was, you know, much more difficult. It's easier to put it back in than it is to pull it out, I can assure you.
Okay. And I wanted to echo what Supervisor Cerner said. I agree that the proposals should go directly to the board. I think the board should be able to have that direct input. And I wanted to just throw this out, I don't know if this is a good idea, but a third of the county is unincorporated. And then a third is Sacramento City, and the other third is all the other incorporated cities. Many of the cities have their own economic development support funds, so I'm thinking about the unincorporated county and just asking if maybe allocating a third of that economic development stimulus to those different areas to reserve out so that those areas have an opportunity to compete, if that would be possible, so that we make sure that the unincorporated, because in the unincorporated county, they may not be as aware that these things are possible, and there might be a way to reach out and stimulate some activity in that area also. I thought I'd ask my colleagues what they think of that.
Okay. That's out on the floor for discussion. A couple of people want to weigh in, and I think we can bring them back for some discussion. So, anything else, Sue?
No, that's it. Thanks.
All right. Susan Peters, and then Patrick Kennedy.
Yeah. I, to Supervisor Frost's comment about a million dollars, I personally think for year one, a million dollars is too much. We've been out of the game for so long, I think we ought to set it at half a million and then raise it up in future years if needed. I am not in favor of number four because of the, I remember very clearly during our budget process of years past of having the groups come in and all line up out here and ask for money, and it really raises false expectations for them and a lot of disappointments rather than a competitive process. It's, a competitive process is something they understand, and I think that it's kind of mean, actually. I am leaning towards the chief of staff review and recommend. We can change the recommendations if necessary. I also think the unincorporated area must have a strong emphasis because that's where all the TOT comes from, and we haven't ever had a preference for the unincorporated area, which gets you back to the half a million for the first year or two, where we will need to have a process to stimulate applications. I also think that we need to have a policy change that, that all requests for TOT, extra money like this, come to the board of supervisors in the budget process, so that we see it once a year and we can compare, just like we were talking earlier about parks, not knowing, you know, divvying up money in advance of the budget doesn't allow us to compare the needs of all the different requests. And I remember a couple of years ago when we were talking about the Science Museum, and it was not in the budget process, and I was very uncomfortable with not being able to hear from all different kinds of requests at one time and make an evaluation when we have X amount of money to spend and being able to compare it that way. So I would like to suggest a policy change that includes that, that all requests come to the board during the budget process and once a year. So I, those are my thoughts.
Okay. All right. Patrick?
Thank you, Chair. I had the invitation of the chair to speak up on the one particular subject is the, the unincorporated versus incorporated, and this has absolutely no bearing on what the makeup of District Two is. It's just from a practicality standpoint, and we've seen this before, as a hypothetical, if, you know, if an organization happens to have its main office or where they're located is in Rancho Cordova, you know, that's not to say they don't provide a lot of services in Rosemont.
Understood.
Yeah. That's why, these artificial boundaries, I would rather, I think that we're all adults and able to, you know, come to that determination somehow, rather than having a solid, steadfast proportion.
It's just that in the past, most of the money goes to the city of Sacramento, and not that there's, they have lots of good programs, but they also smack leans towards city of Sacramento programs. I just think there needs to be an emphasis. I wouldn't say all the dollars need to be spent there, but outside of the city of Sacramento.
We could always do a joint meeting with the city of Sacramento.
Oh, that's a good idea.
We got some openings on 28th of March. Hails out, guys. Ready?
We're not available.
Okay. All right. Phil, I'm going to weigh in too, so go.
Sure. I think on that last point, though, and using the example that Supervisor Peters uses about the Powerhouse Science Center, this is to Patrick's point, you know, the Powerhouse Science Center, while located in the city of Sacramento, I think you can make a pretty clear argument, once it's up and running and becomes an educational resource for youth, it's not going to be restricted. There's no, there's no requirement at the entry of the Powerhouse Science Center that says you must be a resident of the city of Sacramento.
That's not fair. And that wasn't, that wasn't what I was talking, what I was talking about was it was out of the budget process. That was my concern on that issue.
This is to Patrick's point, though. That, that type of facility, even though it's located in the city of Sacramento, is going to be, dare I say, it's going to be serving actually outside of the county of Sacramento. It's going to be a regional... It's going to be a regional educational resource. So, I do think it's fair that it be used for comparison here.
Yes. But my comment about it had to do with it's out of the budget process. So, we couldn't compare it to some other need that came in.
Okay. All right. I just want to comment on Sue Frost, you punched up, too. I just, in looking at this, and I appreciate certainly the work now that you bring this forward. I know this isn't, you know, Britt's favorite thing, but he's a good budget man and he's going to, you know, take the direction. I think it is very important that we hold out, at least for the consideration. And again, I certainly trust the judgment of my four fellow colleagues up here about wading through, you know, you can look at the geographical aspects of it, or, you know, who serves and so forth. But I think we haven't done this for a number of years. And, you know, my recollection, and going back many years ago, was it, it was, and again, some of it even predated, obviously, you know, the incorporations of the, you know, cities of Citrus Heights and Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove. But nonetheless, I mean, you know, the boards, there was deliberations in hearing from the community and weighing out, you know, what was available, whatever the amount was, you know, was able to, I think, come to agreement. And there were, you know, in addition to not just programs, but, I mean, you know, we had, at different times, supported things in the parks, in libraries, community centers, working with other park districts. It wasn't just limited to nonprofit or not-for-profit organizations. We certainly can put those limitations if we choose to. But it was, you know, it was competitive. And in historical societies, we looked at a whole realm of different things that would, you know, you know, call upon an investment for, you know, serving people of different ages, different walks of life, in different geographical areas of the county. And again, I have every bit of confidence that as far as difficult as it might be, because I don't have any doubts in my, doubts in my mind, whatever amount you put up here, you're going to have more calls on it than you will available dollars in a given year. But that's a good thing, too, because it shows an interest and it allows this board to think, to look at, you know, the realm of things that may go otherwise unfunded, unsupported, or for lack of maybe some either capital investment or some initial program investment will allow them to prosper and to, you know, do better what they do as being partners and serving people, this community, in a variety of different ways, a lot of them recreationally, some culturally, some civically. And so, anyway, I'm encouraged by this. I would support the, you know, calling out at least an initial million dollars, again, based upon what we get into in budget, you know, we certainly are looking at what comes to us. We could always, you know, put some of that back. But I, you know, I know that if we say, well, we're going to start with this, that's all we're going to have available to us when it comes time to deliberate. And I would want to reserve the opportunity to send that back if we choose to, rather than have to call it out. So, you know, and again, Item Four, I mean, the competitive allocation, again, I think our Chiefs of Staff certainly could do some screening and assist in that regard, but I still think that, you know, as it relates to recommendations, I would like to have this board, in this same exchange we're having right now, have the ability to weigh that out and talk about communities of interest, communities that we represent, other interests that would be presented to us, you know, from the, from the audience and from the, you know, those of us seeking funding and support. So, I would like that to be done here, not to belabor it, and maybe we have a streamlined approach to that, so that there's some categories and/or, you know, areas that, you know, we could kind of winnow that down. But this is going to be the first go-around, and we may all have had enough of it, but if we choose to do this by the end of this year, that we would look to modify the process further. But I think for a first start, I would go with the Four, maybe with a little bit of modification as we talk about it. Anyway, Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Serna.
This applies to nonprofit and profit, correct? So, any organization could, or is this nonprofit only?
We're calling a civic, is nonprofit.
Nonprofit only. Okay.
And county departments.
But it could be the county, too.
Yeah.
Could be county departments, it could be cities, too. If nonprofit wants to partner with the city, that's allowable, too. Right, Britt?
Yes.
Yes.
And we do not have an economic development support fund within our economic development department?
No, we do not.
But also, like, an independent park district could apply?
Correct.
So, or dependent, independent or dependent?
Yes, correct.
Another jurisdiction, including the cities.
It'd be a school district, right?
Okay. So, and then, I just wanted to clarify that it would, I think, at some point, when we have those resources, it would be really great to have an economic development support fund that emanates from our economic development department for small businesses that need a leg up. And I also, you know, I understand what Supervisor Kennedy is saying about boundaries and drawing lines. And so, then, my question is, how do we, how will we go out to notice this to the general public? Maybe that's where, because you never know who's going to apply. You have the best of intentions, hoping that people will, but you don't know who really will step up for that, so.
We'll have Troy.
Maybe that's where the unincorporated area gets equal opportunity because they receive the message just like everyone else did.
Right. Understood. Thank you for the question. Troy Givens with the Department of Economic Development. We would go through a variety of channels. We would work with our public information officers to get word out through social media as well as through your offices and most of our advertising venues to make sure that we've had a broad outreach to all of those organizations. And there are organizations that represent all of the nonprofits that we would work with as well, to make sure that we're in newsletters and other things.
Okay. Troy, anything else you want to add while you're there? Just about, you know, you're familiar with at least how it's been done for the last number of years. Anything else you need to, you would like to add?
No, I think as long as we have board's input, we're ready to act when your board takes action.
Okay, good. All right. Phil?
Mr. Chair, there's no further discussion. I'd like to move that we go with the item, with the Option Four, the competitive allocation. The proposals will go directly to the board. I think your idea of having our Chiefs of Staff involved in some type of screening protocol is a good adjunct to the option. That's my motion.
Okay. Did we talk, yeah?
You can make a substitute if you want.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second. And then, Ms., Sue, you've punched up.
Can we include with the substitute motion that we do, I liked Supervisor Peter's idea about doing it at the budget, during the budget cycle, so that we can do it one time a year and it's, we know the money's there? Can we include that?
Yeah, it's not a substitute motion. It's just a friendly amendment. I'll take the friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment. Thank you.
All right.
Another amendment, if I would suggest, that there be an emphasis somehow on areas outside the city of Sacramento.
I'm not willing to accept that, just because I don't, I think it becomes very-
You don't represent the unincorporated area.
No, I just think it gets very, I don't know. I just don't, I think that begins to make it very prejudicial.
Maybe an emphasis on equal representation through all areas of the county.
And I think there's one way to, in your application form, you can garner that information. So, this board, to Susan's point, but to all the points that have been made here, again, I have confidence that we'll work through that, that, you know, not just looking at, you know, orientation to the geography or who it serves, you know, most closely, but we can, we can ask that, you know, kind of what their, what their audience is, you know, and what they intend to do with it. And so, if it's a community center out in Orangeville or in an arcade, or if it's a, you know, historic building down in the South County, or it's a, you know, it's a, you know, it's a science center in downtown Sacramento, I mean, again, we can kind of bet that, but we need to know what it is, who they propose to serve, and who their audience is. And that needs to be very clear, because I think it will lend itself to the conversation that we're having today, but also to the consideration, because that maybe we're, we say, you know, if this is being largely generated from hotel motel tax in the unincorporated area, then, you know, people can take that into consideration. So, I mean, I'm comfortable, again, with the discussion that will follow, and probably lively at times, as it should be, about how those resources allocated and decisions we make, so.
That, Supervisor Tulli, that was going to be one of the questions we were going to ask in the application, is that who are you going to provide this to? And what's the base of your population you're doing? So, we were going to incorporate that anyway, and if there is information on the unincorporated that we need to get more information, we're going to ask those kind of questions.
I mean, I would suspect that we would have a number of applicants for funding or potential fundees, I guess, that would actually be providing their services countywide, so both incorporated and unincorporated areas.
Correct.
Okay.
My goal in that is to try and encourage the arts in areas other than the city of Sacramento, the arts and other civic investment opportunities.
Ditto.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sue, you were punched up, and I have a speaker, so.
I have one last question. You said it's easy to put it back. What does that mean? Is that just a decision that we need 500,000 back in the general fund?
It's easier, it still takes, you know, it takes three of us to direct to put it back, but.
Okay. So, we're looking at a million? Is that, or are we looking at 500,000?
We don't spend it all during the budget process. We can give it back to Britt and spend it, go willy-nilly with.
That's a good characterization, Ms. Peters.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second.
Here's two bucks. Go crazy.
Yeah. With a friendly amendment. So, I do have a speaker, Mr. Pastor Tillman. You want to speak on this item?
And could you repeat the motion when it comes time?
Okay. You bet.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you.
Yeah, Chris.
President and the board members, this is my first time speaking. I'm up from Los Angeles. Apparently, you have a trans-attack occupancy application. And I'm just making a suggestion, maybe through your wisdom or resources, you can allocate some funds to nonprofits to help store the homeless or transgender people's property. Because what's going on, apparently, they're using this no trespass notice that the police gives out to discriminate and criminalize carrying property through the, through the public domain. And to give you one example, an owner who sees a homeless person or transgender person or minority, ethnic base, they don't want that person near their business, they say, you have to leave, I'm going to give you no trespass notice. Never asking them to leave before, just the first time they see them, giving them this notice and holding them hostage, false imprisonment, until the police can come to serve them. That's not the intended use of the no trespass statute, as far as I understand it.
Okay.
It's not supposed to be used as criminalizing the homeless person. It's not intended to be utilized as a racial barrier to access to your resource or to your business. That's how it's being applied.
Okay. Well, Pastor, just to your point, though, that we're going to seek applications, and so if some program that you wanted to do along the lines that you just outlined, they certainly could apply for these funds. I don't think it will be limited, you know, how that might compete in the process, I don't know. But understand your point, so there, you know, nonprofits will be able to compete with this money to apply.
Because in LA, they have a big storage bin, have bins, and the kids, they come put their stuff in the bins. And that keeps them off the streets.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion. Yeah, I know you signed up off agenda, too, so we'll call that in just a moment, but you signed up, okay. All right. So, we have a motion, and a second, if you want to restate the motion, Mr. Serna.
Yeah. So, the motion is to support the Option Four as presented as attachment one, noted as competitive allocation, proposals that go directly to the board. This would be for a million dollars. We would establish a protocol that involves our relative Chiefs of Staff to screen these applications. The ultimate recommendations, though, would come directly to the board for deliberation and decision, and that this would be an exercise that we take up during our budget deliberations every June. That's the motion.
All right.
I have one comment, not addition to the motion. I would suggest that economic development, maybe have some conversations with the Sacramento Regional Foundation about an application. They, you know, do a lot of this kind of grant stuff, and understanding how that works could be important. They also have classes for nonprofits to take and learn how to raise money. And, I mean, there might be some symbiosis there, not move the money over there, but maybe learn how to do it.
Ross, okay.
Before we vote, I'm going to ask Susan this, you probably know it best. When is the, when is the day of big giving?
It's, I'd have to, it's at the beginning of May. I know it's during cap to cap, so.
Like, May 2nd?
May 14, 15.
Oh, it'll be May 2nd.
So, we'd be making our decisions the month after it's done?
It's the 2nd.
Okay.
Okay. Because the cap caps April 30th through the 3rd of May?
Yeah. It was the 4th last year.
Okay.
Will we know the results of the big day of giving, then?
By?
At that time, when we're making the?
By June, we would.
Oh, yeah. You'll know the day after.
Yeah. So, I guess the way we, the way we'd look at it, then, is if we're going to make our decisions in June on this, I guess it gives them, the nonprofit world, those that would come seeking funds, plenty of time to plan for the next fiscal year to make quality proposals. Let's, I'm looking at the glass as half-full here.
Cap to cap starts April 29th and May 3rd is the last day.
I would just note also that, to the point about economic development, that it's my understand that we would continue the $90,000, which is, you know, economic development and marketing, but also provide a new allocation of $100,000. So, that's actually to provide target support for economic development initiatives that may arise during the year.
May 4th.
Okay. May 4th, so it's on the Thursday. So, is that correct? Isn't that embodied in your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
So, there actually is. So, you're actually bumping that, plus we're giving more of a program administration, we're going to double that.
That is more of our admin component. I took the question, I mean, do we have any kind of funds available for small businesses or any kind of incentives? We don't have that kind of fund established at this point. We do want to start working towards that.
But I think you've got two different items here. You've got two bullets on page, just to be clear, page three. One is continue providing $90,000 for economic development marketing, and then $100,000 for target support. And then, you also got to increase the program administrative costs from the current $90,000, similar number, repetitive number, to $200,000. So, those are two different, is that correct? I'm reading this.
I'm going to have Troy help me with that.
Okay. I just want to be clear, because otherwise, it sounds like, because we're actually putting in $300,000 more, if I take that correctly.
You're correct, Supervisor Tulli. There is a component for administration, and then there's $100,000 that is set aside. We often have requests mid-year from organizations like the Sports Commission and others that we haven't budgeted for, if an event comes up that we need to access funds for. So, if those aren't used, they would carry over till next year.
But it's a new allocation, though, right? Troy, is I?
That's correct, to provide that flexibility to react to those requests.
And those are what we use, like the Amgens and these other folks that come through.
Right. Right. Okay. Okay. And if we don't use all the $200,000 for the grant program review, and we'll see how that goes, somebody's going to tell us, all right, that's just not the, that's not just presumed, assumed, that, because we're more than doubling that amount.
Yeah. No, that's what we plan in January, is to report back how the program-
I know it's a lot of work, because people do good work. It's just that that's a lot of, it's a pretty good bite. That's a 20% bite out of the total amount.
And you'll let us know as soon as you have the application processed, so that we can push that out to our district or help?
Correct. Well, our plan will be, you will make a decision in June, you'll tell us who you want to give the funds to, we'll get the contracts up and running and get the money distributed. Our intent will be in July, get that out.
But she's talking about announcing the process.
But I'm talking about the notice, like, if we're out doing community meetings, we can let them know.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no.
That they go here to?
When and how to apply.
Yeah. We, once, once we get the direction today, we will get you all the information about the application is going to look like, where to apply, what's the deadline, and what date you need to come before the board.
All right. Your direction is forthcoming immediately. Motion's on the floor, if there's anything else? If not, please vote. If not, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Yeah, 5-0, go forth and do good work.
Two years' worth of work there.
Yeah, very good. Okay, I did have one off agenda speaker before we move into a closed session, so Pastor Tillman, you had signed up off agenda, and so I won't make you wait all till afternoon if you want to come forward. We typically allocate no more than five minutes, but if you can deal with it in three, Pastor Tillman, that'd be great.
Oh, okay, it won't be very long, because I was so grateful, to run into one of your employees, and she actually copied a copy, what they call a reporter's transcript of a preliminary hearing.
Okay.
Okay, anyone who have legal training, that's the, that's the charging hearing, where a judge decides whether there's enough evidence to bind over an individual defendant to Superior Court for trial. Well, if you read this six-two-page transcript that's filed, you will see multiple abuses, and one of the biggest abuses, the way that we coach and encourage undocumented people to file for victim assistance based upon a domestic violence charge. What I'm trying to say in a simple term is that, we, the system motivates them to lie and subjugate a perjury in order to get maybe $5,000, $10,000 worth of resources. And this is a perfect case that demonstrates that, in this case, the undocumented parent coached her how to lie to the system about being abused by her husband, and she wasn't abused, she totally made it up, and she's mentally ill, and that she's using the disconnected county resources and the DA's office to propagate felony charges of perjury, conspiracy to commit perjury, criminal enterprise, and to put someone away in prison for four years, all based upon her testimony, which is a lie.
Okay.
And her drug dealer and two-time murderer is the one who coaching her how to work the system. And it's very clear that, when you read it, that she's lying, but yet, no one can put the brakes on the system going forward and crushing some young man. So, the transcript is suffocating, once you read it, you see what I'm talking about.
Okay, so you're gonna provide, that copy, you're gonna provide a copy to our clerk?
I did, and the point is that we're spending probably thousands, who knows, millions of dollars on putting innocent people in prison, number one, and spending thousands of dollars for victim assistance when they're not entitled to it. So, they call that work in the system. You tell a lie, everybody gets around the lie, rally around the lie, and then we put people away, and we get money, and that's easy, because no one says, "Wait a minute, she's lying, why don't we stop this system?" You can tell she's lying, she committed perjury, but because they're disconnected, and there's an adversary proceeding, it allows them to go forward to the next level and next level, and usually, they get the defendant to plead guilty with the risk of going to jail for more time, so you never get to the truth. And had I not got a copy of this transcript, I wouldn't have known. And the PD's office, the PD officer, Neramai Vendetta, he refused to give me a copy, because he knows what it, what it shows, if the public reads it. I had to go down to LA and hire Mark Garagos to see if he'll take the case in order to just break the ice, because everyone's afraid that if we break it, then we, we got a system that's not working, it's broken. So, hopefully, since you allocate money, and you can oversee the DA's office and the PD's office, you can put a dent in this nonsense, where the taxpayers are spending thousands of dollars for a lie. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, and if you, if we have a copy of that, we'll make sure that we could, you know.
If John Doe, average guy, can read and tell she's lying, then how come the DA doesn't know she's lying?
Okay, we'll make sure we get that forward to the district attorney's office, take a look at that, so.
I appreciate it.
Good, thank you Pastor Tillman for being with us this afternoon, okay. That concludes our morning session, and we will journ into a closed session and return down here at 2:00. Good afternoon, want to call on the session, the February 28, 2017 meeting, the afternoon portion of the meeting, and I thank all of you who joined us for the afternoon session, and a pretty full day thus far, and I look forward to the items that are still yet to go. So, with that, I'll have Flo call the roles established at Quorum once again, and we'll get right into the agenda.
Okay, good afternoon, Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a Quorum.
Okay. Our first items.
For your first item, I do need a motion to continue this to March 1st at 2:30. This is your Cortland and Walnut Grove Special Planning Area Amendments.
Okay, continues for 24 hours and 26 minutes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so move. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, okay.
Okay, for your next item, this is the Bradshaw, Arco AM PM request for a use permit, special development permit and a design review, and this is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Bradshaw Road and Kiefer Boulevard in the Cordova Community, and the environmental document is a negative declaration.
All right, Leanne, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Leanne Moffett, your planning director, here to give the staff presentation. This is a request for Arco AM PM and other facilities. The site is located at the southwest corner of Bradshaw and Kiefer in the Cordova Community, and the request is for a use permit, special development permit and design review on a site zoned for commercial that's a little less than two and a half acres in size. The Arco service station will have eight pumps, a 24-hour convenience store, and a drive-through car wash. There will be two drive-through restaurants, both will have amplified sound to take orders. One is associated with the Arco AM PM itself, and one is a standalone drive-through restaurant. They are also, via the use permit, asking for larger signs for the restaurant via deviation from the sign requirements of the special sign corridor, requesting to have a 10-foot-high sign rather than a 6-foot sign, and a 42-square-foot sign rather than a 24-square-foot sign. They're asking for a special development permit to allow a wrought iron fence rather than a masonry wall adjacent to residential zoning, and I would note that that residential zoning is actually built with Rosemont High School and is the ball field, so it's not actually residences, even though it is residential zoning. And then finally, a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. I also want to point out that correspondence was submitted on Thursday of last week by the applicants, this memo dated February 23rd, where they are volunteering to add three additional conditions that were not in the original board report. The first of these conditions that they have voluntarily put in has to do with designating a parking stall along with an electrical vehicle charging station for use by electrical vehicles. The second additional condition has to do with the county installing a signage into the Rosemont Community, and so they have agreed to show two potential locations in their landscape area for a county-funded sign there. And then finally, an additional fairly lengthy condition here on this slide, about ongoing and operational issues, which were really around discouraging loitering and nuisance sort of individuals, and as staff, I will say, I think we'll look at this condition, because it's written fairly well and is probably one we may want to be including in other ongoing projects, I think it's a pretty good.
This is our District III supervisor taking a leadership role.
Yes, representing.
That's good. Anticipating what the future may bring.
Yes. So, that's a, that's a good condition there, and one I think we'll look at applying in other places as well. So, wanted to get those into the record, since they weren't in the original board report. Now, moving on with the rest of the presentation, this is an aerial of the site in the vicinity. In particular, I want to point out, at the bottom left, is the Rosemont High School and the ball fields that are sort of depressed at a lower elevation, that are immediately adjacent to the site. This is a rendering of the future facility. We are looking generally south and slightly southwest, so the ball fields would actually be right behind to the north at the top of this slide here, just to orient yourself. And so, that is the Arco AM PM in the upper left, and the canopy there, sort of in the center, on the far upper right is the drive-through car wash, and in the, in the right center is the standalone restaurant. Here's an aerial site plan, in this case, the arrow is going north, and so the canopy there is shaded in the center-right, with the Arco AM PM on the bottom, the car wash on the lower left, and the standalone drive-through on the center-left. These elevations are from the design review materials and give you a general sense of the elevation and color scheme and design of the project. The design review advisory committee actually initially, or did vote 2 to 1 to recommend denial, the design review administrator supported it, but since that denial, the applicant submitted a revised canopy design, which essentially addressed the concerns expressed by the design review advisory committee in their remarks on their reasons for their denial. We did not send it back to the committee for a revote, but the revised materials essentially addressed their concerns. The Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council heard this in November and voted 6 to 0 to approve. The planning commission heard it on January 23rd, wrote, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval, and so staff is here today, also recommending approval. Your board report details those specific actions to be taken, but they include determining that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, and adopting the negative declaration, approving the use permit, subject to the specified findings and conditions, including for the record, the new additional conditions volunteered by the applicant, approving the special development permit, also subject to the same findings and conditions, the design review, and adopting the MMRP. And that is the end of staff's presentation on this, and there is an accompanying item on the alcohol license, and I can do that after we're done with this item.
Okay, is there any reason why we couldn't call both of those, Chris, that we called it?
Can do that.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and call that item too, and do the presentation, and anyway, speakers over here for either or, so.
Excellent.
Okay. So, for the next item, it's the Arco AM PM Bradshaw and Kiefer PCN ABC License Hearing to determine whether a public convenience would be served by issuance of a type 20 liquor license. This is located on the southwest corner of Bradshaw Road and Kiefer Boulevard in the Cordova Community.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so if I could have that PowerPoint up also, I will go ahead and run through All right, thank you very much. This is the exact same location, so I don't belabor that point. It is a ABC license to determine whether public convenience would be served by the issuance of an off-sale beer and wine liquor license for the Arco AM PM. We just looked at the aerial there. This is the typical map that we provide you that shows the locations of adjacent facilities that sell either type 20 or type 21 liquor licenses. There are any in this immediate intersection, they're, they are more located to the north, to the south, and over in Rosemont. Again, it's a type 20 license. The need for the PCN is triggered because, based on the census population becoming over-concentrated, I would note that in this census district, there's a lot of employment areas, and therefore, the residential population is a little bit less, because it's primarily, there's much more employment than there is residences, but the criteria is based on the number of residents, doesn't really take into account employment. The site is not a high crime area, and the applicants are asking for the liquor license so that they can provide their customers with one-stop shop for gas, beer, and/or wine and grocery products. We will put the typical business license conditions on this, as we do all of these types of facilities. I'm not gonna read all the typical business license conditions, they were in your board report, they're on this slide, as well as this slide right here. Additional information, the Census Trac standard allows for two off-sale liquor licenses, approval of this one will result in three. There are five off-sale licenses within the larger one-mile radius. The site is approximately a quarter mile from the front of the Rosemont High School, and we did work with the school to notify parents of this, and there were none in attendance at the planning commission hearing with concerns, and no one, no comments were received, and no one from the public attended the CPAC meeting. So, staff is here recommending that you approve the PCN request, which the CPAC also recommended approval of, 6 to 0, and the sheriff is not in opposition with their standard conditions applied via their memo. So, that concludes that presentation.
Leanne, maybe you said it, the notice went out to all the parents at the high school, is that correct? This is probably as broad a notification as we've done on any recent memory.
Yes, and it was not really part of our typical noticing, it was some noticing that the school needed to do, so we worked with them so that they could do that noticing, yes.
Okay, but again, I think it's important, however that came about, and again, I certainly want to, you know, obviously, the applicant paid for that exercise, but I think, you know, because of the proximity, and I know that when I had visited with folks some months ago, that expressed, you know, certainly concern about, you know, one, what, you know, the school as well as parents might, you know, say about proximity as it relates to the proposed use, and I think, again, you can't, you couldn't do any greater notification probably than what was done, so I would compliment all the folks involved in making sure that got, that got attended to. And this is a, just, this is a off-sale beer and wine, when you say liquor license, it does not include full distilled spirits.
It is beer and wine.
Okay, all right, can I ask other members of the board any questions of the item? I only have two people sign up to speak on both 50-51 applicant representatives, and so I'll call them forward, but if anyone else is in the audience that wishes to address this, certainly feel free to approach the clerk, and we'll make sure we call upon you. So, I have Scott Patterson and Pete Tobin, if either one or both want to speak to this.
Excuse me, Chairman, can I have everyone stand to take an oath?
Sworn in, I was just gonna say, we need to be sworn in, right, so, if you're gonna offer testimony or comments, respond, please stand and be sworn.
Okay, the appropriate response is, I do, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement that you have been sworn.
Great, well, Mike was gonna lead us in the pledge, you were ready to go, I tell you.
I was ready.
He was smart, leading us to the flag.
Ready to go.
All right, anyway.
So, I'll fill out a speaker slip, I'm Mike Isle from Tykert, and I have been sworn, so.
Thanks.
Excited to be here tonight on the Arco AM PM project, and could I have the overhead, please? It should work right there. Great, thank you very much. Oop, little sideways. Okay, so, we're excited, this has actually been a long process for, for Tykert, going back a number of years, for the AM PM project and actually that corner, and so, what I thought I'd do, it's been a number of years, but we're gonna keep this really short, what I'm gonna do is just a really brief presentation on a little bit of the site history, some of the outreach that we've done, probably one or two minutes, maybe, and then I'll introduce Scott Patterson from Cowgold Development, and then we'll, project team will be available for questions. So, as we get going here, I'd also want to take a second to thank staff, they've put in a tremendous amount of time and effort on this thing, special acknowledgement to Leanne Moffett, Leanne Mueller, Tim Hawkins, Emmanuel Mihot, so they've really, really spent a lot of time with us, so we do appreciate that tremendously. So, as we get going here, Leanne also already indicated kind of the general project vicinity, we're over here at the southwest corner of Kiefer Boulevard and Bradshaw Road. The site is actually part of the larger Aspen Ford Development, this was a master planned planning unit development that Tykert came in for, and actually was approved by the County Board of Supervisors back in 2004. That area encompasses Kiefer Boulevard on the north, Mayhew Road on the west, Bradshaw Road on the east, and then some of Tykert's property on the south end. So, it was about 114-acre master plan, planning unit development, we started that back in the year 2000 for some of the master planning associated with getting the Rosemont High School on the property, with the residential project, that's right here, called Aspen Village, which has now subsequently been built out, and also for this corner. So, this was an anticipated use way back in 2004, we knew at some time, at some point, we would come back in and build out this corner. We've taken special care to let the area build out a bit, and also to identify the right user, which is ultimately, you know, one of our main concerns, how this property builds out, what this looks like years from now, because this corner represents the entryway to some of Tykert's larger land holdings along the Jackson Highway Corridor, so this has been very important to us in terms of the right architectural and landscaping feel, look, and then ultimately, the correct operator who's gonna be in here for the long haul. In terms of outreach on the project, we've spent quite a bit of time, both with the Rosemont Community Association, with the Rosemont High School, with the neighboring property owners in the greater community, developed this project. What we've seen from that outreach is a better project at the end of the day. We've made a number of changes, starting with the west edge, adjacent to the property owners who own the small commercial light industrial property where the Fit Eats is located, so we made some changes from a, more of a see-through-type wrought iron fence to a solid block wall, due to some of their concerns with the project, they didn't want to have eyes into their property, so we've agreed to make those changes, make a solid wall on that west side. We've made a number of interior reconfigurations due to outreach with staff from the county, as well as some architectural adjustments that Leanne actually mentioned earlier, related to some of the design review comments, made some changes to the overall canopy of the gas station. We also heard some really good comments from the county as well, Leanne mentioned a few of the conditions that have been added to the project, so we've acknowledged the need for the Rosemont entry sign, so we've agreed to provide up to one, you know, location, we'll show two locations, and ultimately, the county can decide on where they want that. Some of the modifications to the site to reduce nuisance, potential for nuisance issues later on, and also the addition of electrical vehicle charging stations, so we think overall... So we think overall this outreach has helped tremendously. It's a much better project as we go forward. We're really proud of it and take this opportunity to introduce Scott Patterson from Cow Gold Development. They will be the ultimate owner and operator of the site, and we are excited to have them on board.
Thanks, Mike. Scott, just while you had your exhibit, please. Let me put the exhibit back just for a second. Just want to point out that where the interface is there between proximity to the football field and obviously the baseball fields, there is quite a grade differential from ground level, which those ball fields are located up to the, so there's really no shortcut, wrought iron fence or not, for folks that may want to patronize the, you know, food establishments there, right? I mean, they've got to have to go out and around. They can't get out to Bradshaw Road unless they scale a fence or take, you know, a hike up a pretty good slope there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a 25 to 30-foot grade differential here along the south side, so yeah, access would be.
I just wanted to make the physical distinction, and the aerial doesn't show quite as well. People are familiar with the site, so maybe all my colleagues knew that. I just want to be sure that there's, it sits much higher than all of that, and so the chances of somebody, you know, getting a hamburger or a soda and then coming over the fence and down to the ballgame is probably going to be fairly rare, if at all, so.
Right. Great. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, yeah, thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, Scott. Just tell us you've been sworn, will you?
Please. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board supervisors. My name's Scott Patterson, and I have been sworn.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you for having us today, and I'd also like to say a thank you to the planning staff who have worked diligently with us and with Tykert. And I also want to extend a thank you to Tykert, who has been the most involved landowner, seller that I've ever been involved with, and it's been to the good of the project. They've helped with design and their theme that they've started out there, and that's been really, really beneficial to the project. So thank you, Mike, and Randy, and team. California Gold has been a business for over 35 years. We're based in our little hometown, Sonora, up the hill, and so we've been in the real estate development game, as well as we're owner-operators of AMPMs. And so I'd like to quickly just take a few minutes, talk about our Bradshaw project. This is a well-designed project that we've spent a lot of time on the architecture, and as you see on the overhead, this will be one of the nicest AMPMs that you've ever seen. We've taken the time to make sure that it's well-designed and will be aesthetically pleasing. This is a safe and secure site. It's well-lit. That's important to us, that our customers and soccer moms and folks feel very safe when they come to our site. That's important to us. We have a strong site plan with great access and circulation and good parking. We also have over 40 security cameras that I want you to know are on-site, and as I mentioned, it's well-lit with security cameras, and we keep those tapes on file for over 30 days. So we're real excited about the plan, and we hope you like it as well. We're also here today, as was mentioned, for our PCN and our type 20 off-site beer and wine license, and we want you to know that we take the sale of alcohol very seriously. My brother's here with me today, who's my business partner, and he has three kids, one in high school and two in eighth grade. I have three high schoolers, and the sale of alcohol to underage kids is a non-starter for us, and we have a no-tolerance policy for that, or a zero-tolerance policy. We also have a carding program where we just eliminate the risk and card everyone, which makes it pretty easy. We have a zero-tolerance policy for our employees who don't follow that program. And of course, that works real well for us, and we've never had an issue in all of our other stores. We're also in agreement with the sheriff's conditions and different conditions in the conditions of approval. We also have had, as was mentioned earlier, unanimous support from the Corp PAC and for the PCN. In terms of economic development, we're going to employ between 15 and 20 people on a full and part-time basis, and then the quick-service restaurants that are adjacent will also employ between 15 and 20. We're also going to invest approximately $6 to $7 million in this project, and we're going to hire local subcontractors whenever we can. We make a practice of doing that in our business. So we're real excited that we've had great support. As Mike mentioned, we've communicated with you different associations in the community, out in the area, the Rosemont Association, Corp PAC. We've communicated with the school and the neighbors, and we've had unanimous support, and we really attribute that to good communication and a strong design. This project certainly fills a need in the area. There's a need for commercial services, lots of employees around, and there'll be great economic benefit to the county and to this local area. In conclusion, we are in agreement with the conditions before you today, and we request your support, and we're certainly here to answer any questions. My architect is also here, Pete Tobin, if you have any questions of him. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions of Scott or Pete? Good, thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Just a question for, this is for transportation. I see Mike Penrose. Mike, we had with the, the smudgway in across the way, we, there was a bit of a snafu on the landscaping for trees along the Bradshaw Quarter. Has that all been worked out so that as development, this is probably the, you know, sole development for some time along this stretch, but it's on the other corner, I mean, they show a nice landscaping plan, so this doesn't pertain to the applicant as much as it does. Did we get that worked out with the sanitation district relative to trees?
Yes, we have. We've had that worked out, yes.
So that won't be?
Should not be any constraint in this site.
Okay, good. Thanks a lot, appreciate you coming. Didn't expect to get called upon. Okay, all right. Anybody else? Matt, John, anybody? Nope. All right. I have no one else sign up to speak then, and with that, I would just compliments to certainly to our staff, to the applicant, to landowner Tykert, and to all the other players, and I would move all the recommended actions, both on the use permit and the environmental document, as well as the PCN.
Second.
Is that for both items?
Yeah, for both items, yes. Okay, the motion is second. Nothing further, please move.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Okay, next item's next, what, till 2:30?
Couple minutes.
Okay, next item's at 2:30, so we'll take, you want to take up anything else or appointments?
You want to do the nominations?
Yeah, we'll take our appointments while we've got a couple minutes here, so.
Okay, that would be item 53.
Okay.
Okay, so for item 53, your nominations, you are continuing to March 7th, the Adult and Aging Commission, Children's Coalition, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Youth Commission. Continuing to March 21st, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your items today, we have the Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
Okay, chiefs have interviewed and recommend the reappointment of the incumbent, Maureen Fitzgerald, and continue the remainder to April 11th.
For the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to March 7th.
Okay. And for the Law Library Board of Trustees, Chairman.
Recommended, again, chiefs have interviewed, recommend to reappoint the incumbent, June Coleman.
Okay. For the Maternal, Child, and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Chairman.
Okay, it's recommended that for parent representative seat, Robin Blank's Guster. There's been a letter attached from Head Start recommending her and the chiefs have also interviewed, and then we continue the remainder until March 21st.
And then the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to nominate Diane Abbott to fill the expired term of Jay Free Love, and I want to continue the remaining to March 21st.
Okay. And then for the Public Health Advisory Board.
I have a number of interviews pending, so continue to March 21st, 2017.
Okay. And then for your Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to nominate Zachary Arbios. I want to continue the remaining to March 21st.
Okay, and this concludes your nominations.
Okay, we'll come back to the, from our own ranks, we'll call the next.
We'll come back to that, yes. Okay, for your 2:30 item, this is item number 52. This is the Planning Commission revocation of the Howe Operations Use Permit and Variance. It's a public hearing to appeal the revocation of a use permit and variance for Howe Operations located on Bradshaw Road, in the west side of the Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard community. And I do want to say that if there's public testimony, that we need to take an oath on this as well.
Okay, well, why don't I go ahead and do that, then? I went, I mean, it's time to speak. I see the applicant's representative here and maybe others, so if there's anyone going to be speaking on this, please, or think you may want to, please stand and be sworn. Testimony being sworn.
And the appropriate response is, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record and state the statement I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you. I know, and we had this on our agenda just a little more than four weeks ago, and at that time, it was suggested there would be a meeting, and I trust staff will give us a summary of the meeting with the applicant, applicant's representative, other parties, air quality district representatives, and planning and code enforcement. And we said we'd come back here, see what sort of progress, if any, had been made or was contemplated, recognize obviously that a number of things that would be required, that were required previously, certainly weren't going to be accomplished in a four-week period, but there needed to be at least some indication that there was some forward progress. But nonetheless, probably, we're going to have the hearing here today anyway, so, okay. And so I'll let you introduce yourself and tell us what you know about what's happened in the last four weeks.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I do have a presentation. So, good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. I am Jessica Brant with Planning and Environmental Review. At your January 24th hearing, as stated, the board continued consideration of this appeal to today at the request of the appellant. Staff has prepared this presentation to provide a background on the revocation action, as well as an update on communication with the operator since the hearing. On October 24th, 2016, the Planning Commission revoked a use permit and variance granted to Howe Operations to run a wood chipping and recycling facility at 5260 Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard community. Community development staff had requested the revocation due to ongoing failure by the operator to comply with use permit conditions of approval, which contributed to multiple zoning code violations while the operator conducted business on the site. I will provide an overview of the violations, but representatives from the Code Enforcement Division are in attendance to respond to any detailed questions the board may have regarding these violations after the presentation. During the revocation process, community development staff became aware of parallel enforcement activities being undertaken by the County Environmental Management Department and the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, related to the operator's lack of compliance with solid waste facility and stationary air pollutant source permitting requirements. Representatives from both of these entities are also prepared to speak further regarding their experiences with the operator after this presentation, if requested by your board. The operation has a lengthy history of noncompliance, as detailed in the board letter and supporting documents. In summary, wood waste stockpiling and chipping operations began on the site in 2004. After being notified that a use permit was required for the stockpiling, chipping, and recycling activities, the operator applied in 2007, which was then approved in 2011, conditioned on site improvements. No site improvements were made, however, wood waste stockpiling continued on the site over the next three years with intermittent grinding and hauling activity. A code enforcement case was opened in 2015 after notification that site operations did not appear to comply with zoning standards. After attempts by the Code Enforcement Division to obtain site compliance were largely ignored, and the hazard of allowing the stockpiles to remain became increasingly a concern, this revocation process was started in late 2015. This is a quick visual of the site condition. While this photo is from 2014, estimates by environmental management staff who have done site visits recently indicate that 2,000 to 3,000 tons of wood waste remain on the site today. Further, at a recent site visit on February 17th, Code Enforcement confirmed numerous inoperable vehicles and junk and rubbish at various locations on the site. In contrast.
Jessica, just let me ask you, so was that site visit in conjunction with meetings that were held with the applicant and/or discussions with the representatives?
Yes.
Okay, I just, again, I know you had this presentation prepared before that.
Yeah.
It'd be helpful to kind of know, because they at least get some indication that there was, you know, a meeting that occurred that, you know, wasn't under some sort of warrant order, it was done under a property approach, at least for inspection, so.
Yeah, it was an agreed-upon inspection.
It was, okay, okay.
Yeah, with the operator's representative in attendance.
Very good, okay, thanks.
So in contrast, this is the approved 2011 site plan for Howe Operations. Generally, the site was split into two areas. I don't know if this is going to work. The first is a large vacant area encompassing the western half of the property. The second area is the eastern half of the property comprising the proposed developed operations area. Oops, sorry, there we go, thank you. This is a detail, a close-up of the operations area that was approved. Key items I'd like to highlight are the approximately acre and a half work area, the delineated truck path around that work area, perimeter walls and fencing that were proposed along the north and southeast property lines, the new relocated wider driveway to the south of the existing home along Bradshaw, and roadway landscaping and improvements. Prior to January of this year, no site improvements had been installed, and the work area had expanded significantly beyond what was originally outlined. I don't want to belabor, but multiple agencies have invested significant resources to address the operator's ongoing lack of compliance. The lead Code Enforcement Officer has made a total of six site visits to the property, issued five notices of violation and one administrative penalty, and I'll detail those in a little bit. And then, as stated earlier, air quality and environmental management are also undergoing enforcement activities related to their respective regulatory requirements. Context photos, this is a photo taken facing west from the existing drive on the property. Looking to the property to the left on the photo, and then the adjacent property is Creek Crush, GNR Trucking, to the right. I wanted to note that the operator has recently installed a concrete barrier, also known as a K-rail, along a portion of this shared northern property line. This is a photo taken in May of 2015. Again, another approved coordinated site visit. This photo was taken of some of the piles on site. And again, there are additional photos from the February 17th visit as well available. The Planning Commission at their hearing on October 24th unanimously approved staff's recommendation to revoke the use permit and the variance. In doing so, the commission adopted findings that the operator's intent to comply with the required conditions of approval appeared absent, and that stockpiling of materials constituted operations of the facility. The commission requested that Code Enforcement work on an abatement plan for the site as soon as feasible. On November 2nd, the operator appealed the commission's action. Board hearing was January 24th, and as the chair noted, the board did grant the applicant the request for continuance, and the operator representative committed to continued cleanup and site improvement work, and staff committed to meeting with the operator representative to further coordinate that cleanup. So since the January hearing, the regulatory agencies that I've mentioned met as a group with the applicant representative on February 6th. At that meeting, a coordinated regulatory compliance guidance document was provided to the operator representative. Key immediate actions from the guidance document, which is included in Attachment 1 of your packet, including payment of existing fines and fees, removal of inoperable vehicles and junk and rubbish on the site, submitting improvement plans for the new driveway, and that all material shall be removed from the site without chipping. The representative committed to paying fines, removing equipment, and further inspections, one of which was the February 17th inspection with Code Enforcement. Code Enforcement at that inspection confirmed that significant amounts of materials in inoperable vehicles were still on the site. Air quality staff has met with the operator and a representative, they did that on Friday, the 24th, to begin negotiations on settling air quality violations. The operator representative reports that they have installed air quality violations. The operator representative reports that they have installed a concrete barrier along the northern property line, though, again, it's not fencing, which is the ultimate required site improvement, and that work on a block wall around the southern residential property has begun. Staff has not confirmed the block wall. And then finally, I believe, the operator's engineer did submit improvement plans today. Fines and fees, as of this morning, it's reported that no outstanding Code Enforcement or environmental management fines or fees have been paid. In addition, staff was informed earlier this week of outstanding building permit violation fees also owed. The current balance of Code Enforcement fines and penalties is $7,117.52. Environmental management fees and penalties is $3,606.75. Building inspection fines and penalties, $1,271.01. And as I mentioned, air quality also has outstanding fines related to equipment violations that they've been in discussions with the applicant about.
Jessica, just a clarification, so on the building fines and violation fees, was, there may have been some notices, but was that shared in the meetings that you had, or that you said that was just learned earlier this week, well, today's only two?
No, it was not shared in the meetings. The notice of payment was sent to Jody Howe, and it's date, it dates back from 2015, I believe.
Okay, so, again, it was, again, in combing our files, we found that there was outstanding issues, but they should have known that, but nonetheless, that wasn't, but the other two, the $3,000 for EMD and the $7,000 for Code Enforcement, those were discussed previously and were known to the applicant prior to this week, I guess.
Correct, yeah. Re-noticing was sent to.
And you said, was there any discussion, and again, I'll let the applicant speak on their own behalf, but at the time, when you had this roundtable over the last couple of weeks, was there discussion about payment of those, and was there any indication whether that be forthcoming, or whether it was, people just mute on that point, or what?
No, there was discussion, and there was agreement that they would be paid.
Okay, so that was where you, staff understood that there would be payment prior to today's hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So, in closing, since the last hearing, the operator has made minimal progress towards taking the immediate actions identified. Staff continues to be concerned, given the length of time that the current violations have persisted, that bringing operations into full, ongoing compliance is unlikely. Therefore, staff continues to recommend the Board uphold the Planning Commission's revocation of the use permit in variance. Thank you.
Let me ask my colleagues, questions of staff on any aspect of this, or any follow-on that wasn't in the report? Okay. Am I good, Jessica, and one other question before you leave the dais, or the, in the discussions with applicant, I mean, they submitted plans, I mean, it was, said that we're going to do it the next day, but I, at least they got them in before we heard the item. And in your understanding of the payment that wasn't made, but what about, so what was discussed, you talked about the kind of the formation of a financial settlement, but also of a plan. Can you share, and maybe your colleagues from EMD and/or air quality want to present that?
Yeah, I think I would leave that to air quality management, or air quality, to discuss the settlement.
Because it relates to the material on site, and I know I had my staff briefing on this, but, and the, I guess, inability for the current chipper machine that's neither available to Mr. Howe and his folks and/or that's on site, that that's not going to pass muster and get a permit, so there would need to be some other sort of equipment secured in order to accomplish that recognizing the material exceeds what was allowed for in the use permit. So, the conversations along those lines were?
There have been conversations with air quality staff related to that, because I do believe there is at least one piece of equipment that is on site that could potentially be utilized, but they can get more into that.
All right. Because, again, I, you know, getting compliance, there are different ways you get compliance. You can say haul all the way, haul all the way to landfill, I'm not sure that's the smartest thing to do. On the other hand, you know, we certainly don't want to reward behaviors that, you know, end up with, you know, stockpiles of material that were not permitted. And so I guess I'm kind of curious, and so maybe you're not the person, maybe I can ask, I don't know if it's you, Dave, or whoever from AQMD, you can at least talk about if there was a inclination to go in that direction. That's not staff's recommendation, that wasn't your recommendation four weeks ago, and I appreciate the, you know, the presentation and the work that's been done, thus, you know, as a follow-up. But I guess I'd like to hear from air quality and EMD if necessary, but certainly air quality as to.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli and members of the Board. So, yeah, we've, we're in-
And you're Dave Gross, and you've been sworn, right?
Yes, I am Dave Gross, Stationary Source Division Manager for the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District. We are in negotiations regarding our penalty. The penalty is for operation of unpermitted source, sources of air pollution. Specifically, at question were three chipper grinder units. Two of them are what's known as Tier Zero, which are no longer able to be used anywhere statewide, they've been phased out through state law. And then one Tier One engine, which is still an older, a little dirtier than some of the newer technology out now, that currently has an existing portable equipment registration on it. And, but because this is a facility, a long-term, that's not a solution unless he, unless he obtains a district permit for that as well. And he's, he has no current district permits to operate at that facility. For the purposes of mediating any, any stockpile issues, we've agreed to allow him to use perp at that location, so he can use an existing piece of equipment if it's properly perped. But that would only be to mitigate the issue to the point where it's acceptable to county staff.
Okay, so you would allow them to use that chipper under prescribed conditions to reduce the amount of material on site and properly chip it?
That would be a temporary solution.
Okay.
Going forward, we would require a permit. To date, we have not received a permit application. We've received partial information from the respondent regarding, some information that we would need to both evaluate the permit and evaluate the case that we're working on, so.
Dave, let me ask you, if it's a fair question to ask you, but assuming somebody were to go at this, you know, with a strong desire to come into compliance, obviously the material, once it's shredded or chipped, has to be removed off of site as well, so I guess there has to be a place to take it to. But with the amount of materials there, with your knowledge of the equipment and capacity, assuming that you devoted folks at least working hours to doing that, could that be taken care of fairly quickly, or is that, is it a matter of weeks, or days, or months, or?
I don't have a good feel for that.
Yeah.
You know, I personally haven't seen the amount of material out there. We know that there's a specific capacity for the, the chipper grinder unit that we think is the one that's anticipated being used, and I don't know how that would translate.
Okay, and I can ask the applicant, if he can probably respond, I was curious. Again, you guys, you know, obviously you're, you've permitted a lot of different types of equipment, and recognizing, I'm talking about necessarily 24/7 operation, but what it would take to actually come into compliance, because there is a, under the existing use permit, they're allowed to stockpile a certain portion of material, and they exceed that by how much? Roughly, what's your estimates?
Oh. So, the estimate is that there's 2,000 to 3,000 tons on the site currently.
Right.
The, the actual approval was more of an area in which they could work, which is roughly 15 feet by 30 feet high per pile, 30-foot diameter by 12-foot-high stockpile, two areas of that. So.
So has anybody done a calculation, Jessica?
No.
So we don't know if they're two times as much, three times as much, only half as much?
I mean, I would, I think it's 10 to 20 times as much.
Okay.
Yeah, currently.
Somebody could figure that out, I trust, at least volume and occupying space. But I just, again, I'm trying to get some sense of how much is too much, or, you know, or what, and, and, because we're being asked, can we obviously take a very serious action here, and certainly in light of a lot of staff work. Revocation's no small matter, we don't see these very, very, very often at all. I count on one hand the number we've ever seen of this board in all the years I've been on it. So it's just, you know, it's a serious matter, and obviously, staff has done a very, you know, thorough job in preparing for today. I just, but again, those are the types of questions, I think, that need to be, at least have the answers behind them. So, maybe somebody could do a rough calculation while we're taking more testimony. Dave, anything else you want to add?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I can be available for anything after the fact.
All right, let me ask, environmental management, did you want to present anything? EMD, is there anything you wanted to put on the record? No? Okay. All right, if there's, did he say anything? No?
We have questions.
No, okay. Have you got questions? Okay. All right, with that then, we've had the staff presentation, and again, we've seen the recommendations, and I heard an update of what transpired over the last 30 days. So with that, I'll call applicant representative, Mr. Saman, and if you'll just state your name for the record and tell us you've been sworn, and allow you then to present and respond, and tell us what you think about all this.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman and the Board. My name's Nabil Saman, I've been sworn. Thank you for allowing us to have 30 days to kind of get this thing rolling. I promised four things the last time I was here. We almost got all four done, but not quite. So, the things that we didn't get done, that I really wish we would have, was to pay the fines that are outstanding. That's about $11,000. The reason we haven't got that done is because we just don't have the funds at the moment. My client doesn't have the funds. We're in escrow on a loan that's supposed to close this week. That will help fund the payment of those, so, you know, if we had an additional time, we could get those paid. As far as the Air Resources Board, the fine for that's about $125,000. I've met with them. We've got that down to $75,000 at this point, but the facts are a little unclear. I'm making an inquiry into the information they have, so I can advise my client on getting that. So it's not a small matter, it's a big chunk of change.
Right.
As far as the other things that we promised, we did do the north wall, we've got a K-rail there. That was recently done over the last 30 days. And I'd point out that we've had this unimaginable historic amount of rain, and that is just, as much as I want to push some of these things, we just simply can't, it doesn't make sense. So the south wall, we're ready to work on it, but it's so muddy out there, we just can't do it.
So, let me ask you that, Mr. Saman, but so, if I looked at the plans correctly that Jessica portrayed, that the original use permit didn't call for K-rail, called for a chain link fence along that northern boundary line, the separation between the properties, is that correct?
Yes.
It wasn't a wall, it was a chain link fence?
The chain link fence.
Chain link fence, okay. So I guess, in light of, is, understanding that you're not prohibited from putting K-rail, but is there, is that part of the plan? Was K-rail going to be sufficient from your, from your clients, or was a, was a chain link fence in, in the, in the plan?
We met with Anthony Santiago, we've had several meetings, so I can discuss those individually.
Okay, sure.
But we met with Anthony and kind of talked about the situation out there in one of the meetings, and the adjoining neighbor that's grinding the concrete has encroached onto our property.
Right.
So, we got that encroachment removed, and to put a fence there didn't make sense, because it would just get bowled over. So we've got a K-rail, which, the whole idea of the plan was to have a separation from the property lines. The K-rail's the best resolution, and I think the county and staff's happy with the K-rail.
Yeah, I don't think they're incompatible uses, which are both becoming industrial use, but I get, I did, that wasn't what was in the plan, so it sounds like there's been some communication with staff relative to whether that would be substantive compliance. I don't know, Leanne, at some juncture, maybe you speak to that, but before we conclude the hearing, as to whether, if he's been talking to Tony Santiago in, you know, land survey and permit section, then whether that's been cleared with planning.
Chair Natoli?
Yes.
I do want to correct, Jared Wickliff reminded us that while on the actual site plan, it does say chain link fence.
Right, that's what I was reading.
The condition 21 of the original approval states, "Provide a physical barrier between the property to the north and the use permit property. The barrier shall be a fence, K-rail, or other means that clearly defines the property line and prevents materials from the unrelated business to spill over onto the other property."
Okay.
So I do think that the K-rail is a reasonable substitute.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. Did you then put it for the entire property boundary, or did you just, for a portion coming down into the?
The entire northern, northern property line.
Okay, so you've satisfied that condition that hadn't here before, being satisfied, okay.
So we did that. And I had mentioned that we'd moved a telephone pole before, so, you know, that was a 25 or 30 grand, that was already done. The southern wall that goes around that southern neighbor, we just, we couldn't do it, it's too muddy, I mean, so that's on hold. There's some equipment, primarily the shredders, there's two shredders on the property that are not legal to be used on the property. I talked to Air Resources, we had a meeting this last week, and we kind of have an understanding that they're not going to be used. If they are used, we'll notify them. They wouldn't be used for shredding, they would just be used to, for maintenance purposes, so we can get those sold. So that was okay with Air Resources Board, at least at this point in time. He's in the process of acquiring a-
Well, I think, Mr., I just wanted to clarify the difference between the Air Resources Board and-
I've heard you say Air Resources Board now a few times. That's a state agency, I think you mean the Air Quality Management District.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. He is our local representative on the Air Resources Board, so he did-
I want to know if I'm missing something.
Anyway, okay, Air Quality District, got it.
It's my understanding they're the enforcement arm for the Air Resources Board, but I'm not positive about that. So, then we have this other piece of equipment that we're in the process of buying, and some other ideas that we're also thinking about.
What about all the other vehicles? I mean, we saw the aerial, again, that wasn't real current, it was current enough, though. I mean, so if all that, all that stuff, I mean, muddy or not, you can probably get most of that out of there. I don't know where it would go to, but it's not permitted on the site, I don't believe, so.
It's my understanding that the equipment can be-
Equipment, oh, yeah, equipment, but what about, but there's other, it looks like cars and pickups?
There's a couple cars, we can clean them up and get them off there. That's certainly possible. I did meet with the violations department out on the site, and we walked the entire site.
Did you get a punch list?
I did not get a punch list at that time, but I can do that, and we're happy to get rid of a couple of cars or clean up the site.
Well, again, I see Jared's here in the audience, so again, I trust you're the inspector on this particular site. Jared?
I was walking up.
Rose, Rose Orian.
Okay, Rose, okay.
So I didn't get a punch list, but we can certainly work on that, that's not a big issue. And so I think we were pretty successful on, on the major topics that I promised the Board that we would do, which was the north wall, getting started on the south wall, and then we got the plans submitted. That was really important, because that will allow us to do the site improvements. It's more likely than not that we'll do a fee-in-lue instead of site improvements, and that's what the adjoining neighbor did. So we probably won't end up doing a sidewalk curb and gutter, we'll pay the county a fee-in-lue. Anyway, so that, that process would be pretty quick, and we'd be up and running as far as the conditions of the use permit. And then we just need to pay the fines, and we need to get a valid piece of equipment there, which I've talked to Air Resource about, and that's an extremely complicated issue, and so we're working to conform so that they're satisfied.
What about the amount of material, Mr. Saman, because, again, the estimates, and, you know, Jessica did the back of the envelope, but, again, the aerials, best we can go by here today, and, you know, I haven't been on the site, I've been on G and R's site a couple of years ago, when they were in for their request. And so, as far as the stockpiling, and, you know, this is a year, obviously, when a lot of other trees have come down and so forth, but has, has any movement of materials in, has that ceased completely?
Absolutely, and no new materials come in for quite a long time. The only material that was moved was to move it out of the 500-foot setback, so some of that material was ground removed, that was quite a while ago. So there's one existing pile. You were wondering about how long it would take to remove that, I would assume about two weeks of a fully operating machine. And we have a machine that can be permitted for that use, and permitted long-term on that site, is my understanding, the red machine, eventually, if that's what's decided. But there's other options, like bringing electricity and using electric motor, or using a brand-new machine, which would cost approximately a million dollars. So, these aren't simple decisions to make it a profitable project, and owners trying to facilitate that process, getting rid of the two old machines out of the state, and using that money to fund a purchase of a newer machine. So we're not having these issues. One of the things the owner does is he has two businesses. One, he goes onsite to Orchards up north in Ube City, and then the other business he has would be on this site. So he has a, he would like to have a machine that would accomplish both those goals. The red machine, as I understand it, won't accomplish the goal, and the two other machines- And the two other machines definitely don't.
So those are going?
So there's some issues that we're working on to come into compliance on that. And it's going to take a while because it's a lot of money. But I think generally we are successful, other than paying the $11,000 fines, which I'm told will be done within the next week. And we'll have that southerly wall done pretty quick. Our plans are in, so we're waiting on the county to get back to us on that. Those issues are pretty easy if we do a cash-in lieu. And then it's a matter of getting a...
So you'd be able to pay that, is that contemplated in the loan that's being considered? Again, I don't want to get into proprietary business, but I just, I mean, again, that's going to be, not just doing payable, it's not just about saying, well, we'll get to it when we get to it. It's, I mean, and then...
No, I'm representing to the Board that the use of the funds for this loan are to pay these fines.
As well as the in lieu? Because that's a trigger, that's why I asked you about that. And again, if you need to consult with your client, fine. But I mean, that's, otherwise it's just, you buy more time. You pay $11,000 in fines and you get this, plans, you sit on the plan check shelf for months until somebody satisfies the, assuming that's what's contemplated, rather than installing the, you know, curb gutter and sidewalk. And if staff's supportive of that, it's generally an acceptable condition.
No, I think from my understanding of the loan, that the amount of the loan, it would be enough to pay these fines. I'm referring to the $11,000 of the county. And it would be enough to pay the cash-in lieu.
Okay, okay.
What about the $75,000 to the Air Resources?
At this point, we're negotiating that amount.
We've already negotiated it down from 110 or 25 to 75. Do you really think you're going to get it lower than that?
We didn't negotiate that amount, there was an error in the facts that they had, so they...
Oh, you said negotiated earlier though.
That was the meeting, that once they've got some additional facts, then they realize that the $125,000 was incorrect. But we really haven't negotiated that and we're trying to work together.
Well, say they cut it in half, is there enough net proceeds in the financing to pay all these fines?
No. There wouldn't be enough to pay...
There wouldn't be enough, okay. Well, I appreciate the honest answer, I mean, that's why you asked the question.
So I got to tell the truth. That's my understanding, is there wouldn't be enough to pay everything. So you asked the question, I'm telling you the truth.
Any idea what the in lieu fees would be for curb gutter sidewalk, well, that does probably be pretty significant.
I didn't, when you say significant, I mean, maybe 25 grand, maybe 30, somewhere in there. For curb sidewalk and gutter, it's not that much. There's no special storm drain that's required as fire, you know, and I'm not an engineer, so... But I don't think it's going to be exorbitant. There would be enough for it to pay the $11,000 and to pay fees. And then we could kind of be up and running if we got a chipper that was permitted.
Well, I think getting into compliance and certainly if there's, you know, whatever the settlement is, obviously those will be monies that'll be owed to the district and they have avenues to pursue in the event that they, you know, if their promise is not paid. But you know, I think reason for a lot of the questions here today and certainly obviously why you were called into it is that there, you know, there hasn't been a real good basis for believing that certain things were going to occur. For whatever reasons, again, I don't pass judgment on people's circumstances, but you know, nonetheless, that's what brings us here today. And one of the recourse's that we have, and it's a powerful one obviously, is to revoke the land use entitlement, obviously which then, you know, basically terminates the business use that's contemplated here. And so I think that, you know, there's been some evidence of progress being made. Again, it may be late in the game and nonetheless, I think it certainly is, it shows some good faith movement. And I appreciate the representation here, again, and staff, you know, they may still be biting their lips about this because obviously, you know, it's been, you know, been tough getting here and, you know, they don't think it's lightly either. And neither do I. I mean, I think clearly this is a use that, you know, can provide benefit for recycling of materials and obviously, you know, I guess generate cash flow if it's done properly. But the other part of that is it needs to be done in accordance with the rules. Otherwise, you know, you don't have the rules and people aren't going to pay attention to them, so. Well, anything else, Mr. Saman, you wanted to add on behalf of the applicant?
I'd just add two things. One, I appreciate you giving us the 30-day extension to show our good faith. And I think staff would tell you that when they've emailed me, I've responded promptly. We've had three or four meetings now with the various departments. I've made myself available to everyone, you know. So we've come a long way from where we were before I got involved, so I'm doing my best.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Frost, may I ask you, I don't have any questions for you?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the financing. Is the loan, you said it was expected to close in the next week. Is it approved or a conditional approval?
It's approved, it's an approved loan, they're in escrow. It's supposed to fund any day now.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe, again, maybe with that in mind, I guess I'd look to staff that, you know, I'm still of the mind that if we don't take the recommendation, the staff action, that this has to have a pretty short string on it. And not to continue to have repetitive hearings here, but to actually see progress, that payments are being made on obligations that are a part of, you know, the enforcement and the process that brings us here. And that in accordance with, you know, what's being permitted, that, you know, the conduct of the business is going to be one that's going to, you know, toe the line. And Mr. How and his associates will, you know, do what's required of them and, you know, and that wouldn't be a problem. But I'm not inclined to just, you know, set this aside, and I don't know where my colleagues are on this. And again, we could carry this on the agenda with a progress report. Again, not to take our time nor your time or staff's time. But I'm not prepared to let go of the revocation at this point in time. I do think there's been some progress been made. You may look differently in the eyes of some folks. I think some of the code enforcement issues need to be dealt with and you've got code officers here. And I think those are things that, a couple more days of drying time, you can move vehicles out of that pit, if not now. And if there are some things as it relates to moving materials and getting them more confined to areas that, you know, where they'll actually be properly chipped and so forth. Again, I don't have all those things nailed down, but I guess I would be inclined, again, just, you know, if you're representing that, both the in lieu and the, you know, fines and penalties with the exception of what's going to be ultimately determined at the Air Quality District or, you know, you're prepared, decline to make good on those as soon as this loan closes. And I don't know if that was disclosed to staff because I guess I was, maybe that was, you know, I heard Jessica say that, you know, they understood that we're going to be paid immediately and...
I had made that representation in the prior board meeting.
Okay, okay, all right, appreciate that. So that's kind of my thinking is that we keep this on...
Are you going to come back for comments from the Board?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything else from Mr. Saman though. Okay, all right. Anything else staff wants to add and then we'll come back to, anything else?
I did want to report back on the amount of tonnage that the current use permit allows.
Okay.
And just a rough calculation, depending on weight, there's different weights of wood. We have between 10 and 16 tons. So the current amount would be roughly 200 times what they're allowed to have on the site, just back of the envelope.
Okay, so it's a lot. More than a day's worth. Okay, anything else? Let me, Jared, if I could just ask you, or Rosa, whoever's handling this. So relative to, you know, other code items that are out there beyond what the use permit called for as far as improvement, so what about vehicles and those types of things? What was, I asked if we give a punch list, but did, so I assume there's a listing, but it hasn't already been given to the applicant? They could be detailed as to what would have to occur relative to particularly vehicles? What's on the site?
I don't think we've, vehicles, there's been a couple improper vehicles. I don't think they ever made it on our violation notice.
Oh, well, I thought that Jessica pointed that out, you said there was...
There's 12 different, about 12 different violations enumerated on the violation notice.
Okay. So you guys, you folks were at the meeting then? You were at the, you folks, and did you talk about, one of these is going to, so you talked about how we're going to come to compliance on the code issues? Some of those related to fencing and the conditions of approval, I get that. But aside from that, other code issues that weren't necessarily related to, you know, physical improvements that had to be made? Could you detail those?
Only other violations that existed separate from the development standards related to use permit was night watchman's quarters. And I think that's it.
Which has been corrected.
Okay, so it has been corrected, okay. And that was what, a night watchman's quarters that wasn't allowed in the permit or was provided for?
Correct, it was added to the property without a building permit and they started their case in 2011 to pursue that. And then when we started our case based on the complaint of the storage materials, we also added it for not having the proper use permit.
But that's been removed?
It has since been removed.
Okay, and what about vehicles? Are there any vehicles that need to be moved off of the site? Are those a roll?
It being zoned, the M2...
They could have those vehicles there?
We're not that concerned.
Okay, okay, I wanted to get some sense about that. So there's not, outside of those related to use permit, there's not any other building or zoning violations in? I mean, there are the ones you've delineated, fencing and improvements and so forth, and too much material?
Correct, that's what we're addressing right now.
Okay, okay, that's what you're addressing.
Technically, yes, the vehicle storage is a violation of that zone because it doesn't have its development standards in place to do industrial...
Yeah, right, okay, I got you. But if they had the fencing and so forth, they...
Back there in violation, but that's not really why we're there.
Okay, okay.
Two vehicles, we can live with that, we're after bigger problems.
All right, thanks Jared, thanks Rosa, okay. All right, I'll be back to my colleagues, Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I understand everything clearly here. There's $25,000 in in lieu fees, $11,000 in code violation fees, up to $75,000 in AQMD fees, plus a comment that he needs new equipment to accomplish certain things. I see no evidence that the owner has any interest in following code or county regulations in looking at how long this has been going on and the kinds of complaints from code. Not putting in the road correctly, putting in someplace for the night watchman without getting a permit. It's just on and on and on. I don't think he has a going concern, I don't see how he can possibly pay all these fines. And I don't, I think it's, I won't say that. So I would be one in favor of upholding the planning commissions. Vote to revoke the use permit.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Frost?
I guess, are we to underst... Supervisor Peters summarized some of the fees. And I heard you say that they, the loan would not cover AQMD fees. And so are we to assume that when the loan closes, they'll be able to pay the county fees and then buy the updated chipper and machine that they need so that they can be back in business and actually begin to make money so they can then go after all the other costs and the improvements? Is that what we're to understand?
Two points. One, he has a legal chipper, he just has to get it permitted. And that's a fee of approximately $6,000, so we've discussed that. As far as their fee of $75,000, that's not a static number. That's something that's being worked on, so that's not a final fee. We're not ready to pay it, I don't think they're ready to assess that number yet. As far as not willing to be in compliance, I don't think that's quite accurate in that we've submitted our plans. We had a set of plans prior. We spent a lot of money moving the telephone pole and getting ready to comply with the conditions. I mean, we've definitely showed the willingness and the determination to get this done. It's not that we've completely ignored everything. We shouldn't have brought the wood on the site, that shouldn't have been done and that's how we got here. But as far as conforming to the requirements, I think we're doing that. So there's enough money with the loan to pay the approximately $11,000 in county fees and the cash-in lieu for the improvements.
And the permit, and the permit for the chipper is included in that, which puts them back in business?
Correct, correct.
And then what is the timeline then for clearing out the tons of wood piles?
To start removing, the total time to remove the amount of wood that's there now would be less than two weeks. Once the chipper's up and running, we're permitted, everything's good to go and we had good weather. It would be about two weeks of operation, he would have that cleared out. And then he could get new wood and remove wood and get the circular motion going and be up and running. It's very feasible.
So I guess my thought is that if we uphold the recommendation to...
Revoke?
Revoke the business license, then there's no opportunity for recovering any of the costs and there's one less business that could have been a viable business. So I would be willing to support extending their opportunity to make things right.
Okay, anybody else? And I'm bringing it back here, certainly understanding my, two of the colleagues here and their views on this, that I signaled out a moment ago that I'm willing to keep this on a very short string. I mean, like a matter of weeks, maybe 30 days. And again, with some good weather and the financing coming through, a number of these things could be satisfied. Work could begin on other things that have been delineated here. There will be ongoing discussions with AQMD and that could be a fairly high number. But in clearing the material, if that's the case, and again, I do think that there needs to be a point when compliance is established in the very near future. And that would include the wood material being removed and before, any new material, you can approach somebody, Mr. Saman, any new material were brought in. I mean, there shouldn't be one shred of wood coming on that side until, in the event that we did not revoke this today. But I would be, again, our staff work, certainly, we've got a lot of folks here that have worked this that are, you know, have agreed to meet and certainly your client as well. But there's a lot of staff time being devoted to this and I think that's part of, you know, the concern. And I'll speak for myself on this, but I'd probably share it by others here, that, you know, it's not just having this hearing. This is a piece of it, this is people's due process, but it's, you know, building up to this, all the departments and the time taken away. And when there was a lot of ignoring of warnings and of, you know, of the normal processes that are, you know, allowed anyone who may have alleged violation. And so it's not just these hearings and, you know, we get it bundled here with a presentation that's done in a, you know, a format that allows for a good exchange, but a lot of frustration represented here and maybe on behalf of your client as well. But nonetheless, he was the holder of the permit, he had the obligation to, you know, meet those requirements. And so I guess I would say that, and again, I don't know how the majority of this board feels, but I'd be willing to continue this for 30 days with certain things that need to be done relative to progress. We could even outline those. And then have this back before us and continue to hold the revocation. Again, I don't want to give any, you know, false sense of security, well now we can walk away and, you know, we're just going to go ahead and do it. I'm not saying that's anybody's attitude, but that's not my attitude. I'm familiar with the site and again, I think if we go this direction, we're stepping out. And again, you know, staff would much prefer that we just say, that's it. You know, if you want to start over again, then you come back in. And so this is, you know, a chance, if we do this, to make it right. And I appreciate your representation of it. And again, I think that follow-through will be critical in the next 30 days. And I guess my expectation would be that, you know, unless the heavens open up and rains for the next three or four weeks, that there's significant progress made, that things are paid.
Can you define significant process?
Progress?
Progress?
Well, you said if they can get that, the chipper permitted, that they can in two weeks get the material out of there. Now, again, I don't know how muddy it is out there and so forth.
Yeah, but what about paying us fines and getting into compliance with, I mean, I just want to know what it is you expect in 30 days?
Yeah, pay the fines. And the air quality, well, they got the sill on the mound, that wouldn't be paid, Susan.
We'll commit to paying the fines and as far as the in...
And the in lieu?
The in lieu, that has to be determined by the county. So they have to look at the plans and with the engineer, they'll come up with a number. So I don't want to say we'll have it paid in 30 days because there might not be a number.
Okay, well, then county, I see you put on us, you figure out the number and we need to tell them so he can pay it. So that money doesn't go elsewhere.
But we can make a deposit toward it, you know, we can commit, in the meeting, I can say, maybe we can commit putting up $10,000 toward that because it'd probably be more than that obviously. So, you know, if they don't come up with a number in 30 days before the meeting, we'll have the fees paid and additional 10 deposited with the county so that they know we're acting in good faith. And then as far as chipping all the material, that's a matter of weather and getting the final...
You need to get that permit for the chipper, make your application to that, work with the air district. And the air district can accept the application even with the pending enforcement action?
Yes.
Dave, can you come forward? Because I will make this into motion in a moment, so we'll build it up, so you could...
It's a little more complicated than that.
Okay.
We have not yet received an application for permit. We don't know which piece of equipment or whether they've already obtained a piece of equipment that they wish to have permitted moving forward. So we have nothing to evaluate at this point in time, so I can't commit to any timeframe or anything until that comes in.
Well, I think you said there was one piece of portable equipment that could be used.
For the temporary removal of what's there.
Okay.
For, for the temporary removal of what's, what's there. That can, that can happen using a piece of equipment that we actually haven't observed, but he asserts is under PERP registration. That will, that will be for the purposes of mitigating whatever needs to be done here. We'll allow that.
Okay, that's what I was talking about. I think it goes from Ms. Peters' question, though, you know, what would be done, you know, what's the understanding? And that, and I guess maybe for the record, Mr. Saman, so that's the piece of equipment we're talking about here that you say is under--
Can he speak to that? Can you speak to that?
Correct. It's a, it's a red piece of--
Stay there, Dave.
It's a red piece of equipment, as I understand it. We discussed it in the meeting. And it can be permitted long-term at that site, and once it's done, it can't be moved around. So those are some of the issues that--
Rented piece of equipment?
Rented?
It's a red.
Red.
We refer to it as the red chipper because that's how we've all identified it.
Okay.
So it's the red chipper. He doesn't own it yet, but he has the right to use it. And the board's staff's aware of that piece of equipment, and it's a legal piece of equipment that could be used on that site temporarily and even permitted long-term. And then it'll be grandfathered in, as I understand it, but--
We're talking about kind of this first step to get all that material cleared off of there, to get it into compliance, that's the thing.
Yes. My understanding, the staff would allow that. I'll let him to speak to that.
Yeah, what, what makes this kind of a difficult problem from PERP registration point of view is he's created a stationary source through the facility, in our, in our opinion. So moving forward, and Supervisor Serna is gonna, in his other role, gonna be looking at this in June. There's a clarification of that, part of the PERP regulation, as well as the air toxic control measure that goes along with that. But, but we think that moving forward, that PERP registration use at that, at that facility will not be viable because it's, it would be precluded by law. In the meantime, you know, we think that we've been shown the paperwork that, that shows PERP registration for what we've known as the, the red piece of equipment. The red piece of equipment is not on-site right now, so we're unable to verify that information. But even at the time when we do go through the permitting process, there are fees involved in that.
$6,000, I thought you said.
Roughly, I think it comes in at $6,961. And then annually after that, it'd be half that fee going forward.
Okay, but the $6,900, assuming it was the right piece of equipment that had the registration and they paid the fees--
That comes in with the application.
They could put, they could put it into use then, and they could use it to take the piles down, the ones that are there. We're talking about the, you know, getting into compliance, and I think that's--
Right.
--a milestone that needs to be achieved before we go any further.
Right. And even if, even if allowed to use PERP equipment, that turns into a pumpkin in 2020. And so that wouldn't be a viable use after that.
Okay. Got it. Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think as I made clear last time, the representative for the plaintiff was here, I was willing to express, you know, a substantial amount of deference to, to you in terms of this being a, obviously, an issue in District Five. But I also qualified my tempered support for the motion then with, I look at this from the standpoint of how do we treat people equally, agents equally, when it comes to compliance with, with our ordinances? And so I'm feeling even more itchy about it this time. If, if the motion is gonna take the form of 30 days, and I'm hearing, you know, layaway plans for how you pay fees, I'm just not getting much more comfortable, quite frankly, with kicking this can. So I guess I agree with Supervisor Peters. I'd like to know when, when, in your mind, because I want to be, again, respectful of the fact that it's in your district, when in your mind will there be no, a determination of either compliance or not? Because they, they may come back with some incremental progress, whatever that might be, in 30 days, and we had the same discussion. And in theory, this could, this could go on for a number of meetings and a number of months.
Well, I delineate some of those things, and Leanne certainly helped, but if we get to a form of motion, that would be one that, again, and I won't even have to caveat for weather. I think there's probably good enough weather windows now that, that in 30 days, I guess the expectation that I would have, and I'd set it forth in the motion, that you would permit that, permit the chipper, and you would go to work, and this would be a priority for Mr. Howe and anybody else that he got employed, to basically, you know, finish the material and get it off-site and come into full compliance with the amount of tonnage that's permitted under the use permit. Another portion of that would be that with the financing, that you would pay any of the outstanding fines and building code and environmental management. You're still in the work in process, obviously, negotiating with EMD. And that we would have for you a, at least a full estimate for what it would be for the in lieu, and that that would be paid, that would be paid in full, the deposit. And it wouldn't be on us to not have given that to you, but that would be paid. And those would be three of the conditions that I would have, and that the progress would continue then on, assuming the weather permits it, but on fencing and other things that have already been set in motion. And, and clearly, again, in 30 days, if you haven't, you know, you haven't got an air quality permit, for whatever reason, the red machine got broke down or whatever, well, that becomes too many excuses, I think, to your point, Mr. Serna, and certainly to what Susan said earlier, is that there needs to be milestones. You've met some of those, coming off of 30 days, but 30 days can pass pretty quickly. And I've heard you saying there's a good faith, a willingness. We'll put a commitment together, and, you know, if you can meet it, fine. And if not, we can still be in the same spot, because either way, those gotta be paid, and you gotta get it cleaned up. And so it may be not the outcome people are looking for as it relates to this permit, and potentially being revoked. But that would be, I'd be willing to put those in, in the form of motion and, you know, give the applicant until the, I guess we're back in 28th of March, or 21st? Wouldn't be the April?
March 21st is our next.
Okay, well, that's not in full month.
Then it's April 11th, then April 25th.
Okay, well, then I'd be, be the April 11th. That'd be, give you a few more days. But that, basically, we'd set those forth. And other conditions, I would entertain those as well. If other people wanted to add stuff, that's, but anyway, that's--
Is that, so am I hearing fees paid in, in full?
Yeah, fees paid in full. The only one would be the air quality one, because they don't really know that. Yeah, that one, he's, he's said that they could pay that, but I mean, there's going to have to be a plan for paying that.
We do have that attachment, one, to your report that listed conditions. Maybe that would help if you worked off of that, in terms of, some of them would have to be modified. We have the immediate action items, no additional wood waste accepted at the site. I think that one's pretty clear. Are you following along?
Okay.
Obviously, we would delete the next one, no chipping or grinding, because you're contemplating allowing that in order to remove what's there.
But you could say that, but chipping or grinding materials would be undertaken with the permitted piece of equipment. I mean, we could state that very affirmatively.
With permitted equipment, yeah.
Okay.
Pay all fines. I think basically, we would delete the wood debris removal. That would be covered by the chip and grind all existing materials and remove it on-site, right?
Okay.
Basically, the second bullet and the fourth bullet would be combined into allowing them to chip and grind and remove the material from the site.
Okay.
The next one, remove inoperable vehicles. It sounds like there's only two, so that could be done.
Okay.
Doesn't sound like junk and rubbish is too big of an issue. But we could receive confirmation from code enforcement, complete immediate action items by AQMD and EMD. I think the key thing that I'm unclear about what the board's expectation is in 30 days is whether we expect them to complete all site right-of-way and roadway improvements. I'm not convinced that can get done in 30 days.
No.
But we could get a report back.
But he could get a permit and pay for the permit.
Yeah, but they're gonna pay the in lieu.
They'd pay the in lieu. That's what he said, Leanne, that they do, to take, you know, the IOD and take the deposit for the Bradshaw Road widening.
When I hear pay, pay fees fully, that, that would be included?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
I heard Mr. Saman said that they were contemplating doing that. So that would be in lieu of making those frontage improvements. And as Susan says, not only have the permit, whatever's required for that, and to pay those fees. And again, we could, you know, give them the amount of money that they need to, to pay in order to satisfy that, so.
Got it. All right, so that, I think, covers what we had laid out and the things that you've articulated.
Okay, and so--
What did you decide on air quality fees, Don?
That they, you need to pay the permit for the chipper, the $6,900, and they're still, I guess, negotiating the determination. I guess that when we came back next, if they made progress on all of these, that's gonna be the, probably the biggest--
So if they come to agreement on what the fee is for air quality, should that be paid?
It was gonna need to be paid, but would it be something we would demand? Typically, sometimes you can work that out, Dave, so I mean, it's a fair question. And I know you do negotiate those.
So as, as you know, that we have a mutual settlement program which follows a formulaic penalty. So we're distinguishing penalties from fees. Fees would be for the permit application, that sort of thing. The penalty is for past violations.
Yeah, and I meant, my word was to include all. I may have said fees, but--
Exactly. I understood, but I just wanted to make a clarification for the record. The, you know, it's, it's unlikely, I think Supervisor Peters, you asked if half of that was, was capable of being paid. That's, that's likely in the ballpark of where we're gonna end up on, on that, on that penalty.
Understood.
You know, we, we think that we have all the information now that, that our penalty's close to being set. We did make an adjustment based on some information that we received when we met with them. We asked a number of other questions. We still have some information that we probably need to receive, but, but right now, we're getting pretty close to where it's gonna end up.
But, but there's still a process to go through, so I guess, but within, by April 11th, do you think that there would be some determination around that? Again, I mean, there's still gonna be the question of how it's gonna get paid, and I, that's not an unfair question. But determination, do you think you would have that through mutual settlement process, if people were active in that, to have some determination?
A lot of that will depend on the respondent providing us with the information that we've asked for.
Okay.
If I may. So, but it is in the realm of possibility that, that if they provided the information, it was set in motion, everything that needs to be done in terms of partial or, you know, enough fee payment so that they get the permit to operate the machinery, right? So that what we're talking about here, by April 11th, actually could happen in theory.
The, the permit, we could expedite it if we received the fee for the permit. They could, they can put a legal piece of equipment in there, and we can permit that. That would be separate from our, from our penalties. Both of those happening at the same time, it's, it's possible, but not very likely, that it moves that quickly.
So does that mean that we would set ourselves up so they would not be able to meet the deadline?
I thought you just said you were almost certainly there. It sounded like you were a couple days away from coming up with a number.
Well, as I said, we're still expecting some information back from them to come up with the precise number to make--
Let's pretend that they would give you that information tomorrow.
Okay.
Then is it possible that they could do everything to come into compliance based on what you've heard up here?
We would send them a, an amended settlement offer, and they could pay it at any time after that.
But, but what about the permit so that they should do the, the machine? Because that's the other piece. That's the active piece of this. You got the piece that they're gonna owe for violations that will be settled on. You said you could expedite the permit. Again, I know you probably, you know, the tendency would be, you know, for someone who's caused grief in the department, and, you know, but recognizing the emphasis. If they came up with the $6,900, showed you the proof of registration or certification, that permit could be issued. How, what's it take? A day or two to issue that permit? Or how long?
Not on that one. It's, it's a little more complex. We'd have to do a health risk assessment on it because it, diesel is a hazardous air pollutant, toxic air contaminant.
Okay, so this is for the equipment that you said is already permitted, though?
No, the, the PERP-registered equipment can operate--
That's what I meant.
Can operate now without anything happening.
Okay, so that piece of equipment, that, that red machine could go out there and operate right now?
We're, we're allowing properly perped piece of equipment, which is the red machine.
To go out there and take down a pile that's already in existence?
Yes, we've agreed that we'll allow it to do what's necessary to comply.
So there's no, so there's no holdup? There's no requirement for that one? Now, if they, long-term, they want to continue the operation and stay in compliance, they've got to go through this other process. And so that's why I said, there has to be a clear dividing line, get this cleaned up, and then you've got to get the permits for the machinery that would allow that operation to be, you know, to Mr. Frost's point, allow you to continue to cycle the material through under the permitted requirements. But to get this into compliance, to get that cleaned up, you have a piece of equipment that right now--
Right.
They go out there, they go out this afternoon and operate it.
Well, we need to, we need to line up the, the, the registration that we saw with the piece of equipment. That right now has not been confirmed yet, but we're assuming that that's going to be--
Okay. And Mr. Saman, that, that's doable tomorrow morning? Somebody could be out there, if they had somebody available, you could line that up. I mean, if the equipment's out there on-site, and you got the paperwork.
You got, you got fair weather for a few days.
I don't think the equipment's on-site, but generally--
Oh, it's not? Oh, it's not, okay.
That, that's correct. So there's that issue.
It's portable, but it can get here. It's--
But it's not, it's not in Illinois or something?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Because again, I think that, that's gonna be, I mean, it goes to the questions here, is that, is this doable? It's, it's doable.
That's doable.
And our folks are, go ahead.
The only thing that's, that's not doable, and all due respect to staff and my client, is the due process of the fee. I mean, we could have gone in last week and paid 125,000, and we'd have been $50,000 off.
Yeah.
So there's a due process. We have to look at their file. We have to come to an understanding of what the fee is for, because it goes by the, what machine was operated, how long. It's a pretty complicated--
It's a settlement process, yeah.
It's a settlement process. It's gonna take, you know, to, to be honest, I took the oath. So my belief is that it would take months, not 30 days. But, but we're working with it. I respond to every email I get. I've made myself available anytime, anyplace, and, you know, we're showing our good faith to move forward on it.
Okay. Dave, is that fairly reflected? You believe he's made himself available? I trust what he says, but that, you know, since we've had this conversation, that they're being available to talk about the settlement portion of this?
I, I think Saman has been available. What we have yet to receive, though, is from the respondent information to finalize our settlement offer--
Okay.
--which they can negotiate and, and reject or accept.
So that material then, Mr. Saman, because again, I think it goes to the, you know, action we're gonna take here potentially in a moment, is that that could be provided in the next two weeks?
Yes.
All right, so on the record, the next two weeks, you'll have that information, assuming we don't revoke the permit here, so, okay. All right, is that--
You don't want to restate the motion?
Well, no, I want to state the motion. No, I think it needs to be stated. I think Leanne helped with this. And so, yeah, I would restate the motion that, looking to attach about one, Leanne, and maybe you can help walk through this, that immediate action items, no additional wood waste accepted at the site. We will allow chipping or grinding. In fact, we're gonna ask that that be done. Basically, the, we're basically asking that with these permitted piece of equipment, that the goal will be by April 11th to have that material down to what would meet the permit, you know, what was permitted under the original use permit, which is a lot of material, but I'm trusting that people can, can do that. So we put that in the condition, and that would combine, what, two, two and four, you said, bullets here?
Yes. So basically, they would chip and grind all the existing material to get it down--
Yeah, with permitted equipment, with--
With permitted equipment, yeah.
Okay. And then pay all existing fines and fees associated with the code enforcement case, and all existing fines with the EMD and building permit, which is about $11,000. Remove the inoperable vehicles, and confirmation code enforcement staff, it's sufficiently cleared, the industrial standards.
Mm-hmm.
And--
So--
And then the last bullet would be--
Yeah, meeting the industrial standards, the last one, complete all site right-of-way and roadway improvements. We talked about the in lieu fees, but the site improvements were the fencing, the driveway improvements, all that. I don't know that they will have that done in 30 days.
No, they can, need to show continued process and progress on--
Right. They need to go shop. We can report back, but--
And can I just clarify on the in lieu? Because I thought I heard that it was about $20,000, and I thought I heard an offer to make a deposit of 10. So I'm, want to make sure that we're clear.
He said if he didn't know, but otherwise, he said they'd pay him in full, if I understood.
Right.
Yeah. They, he said if they didn't have a number to him, Chris, but I would say that we would have a number to them, and that we would have those paid in full. So we, it's an obligation for LDSIR or SIPs to, to get that to him based upon plans that have been submitted. And if there's a permit that comes with that, then that permit is be issued as well, so. Because they've submitted improvement plans for the conditions, is that, that last bullet, under immediate action, that's what they did today?
I, I believe, yeah. Yes. Yes.
And that's what needs to be calculated, the fees on. Okay. Sorry to be so complacent. And so I would add those, and that we have, April 11th, we'd have, also add information for the settlement would be then submitted by the respondent within two weeks. Mr. Saman?
I just want to add, there was a condition on the use permit, and I don't want to conflict with the promise I make today.
Can you make, can you get between the microphones, please?
I just want to make sure that we have an understanding, because there was a prohibition on chipping during a certain time of the year. And I think that goes through April 15th, doesn't it? So we, under the use permit, we're not allowed to chip until after April 15th.
And that's why?
Staff had made that recommendation in the original use permit, which I wasn't involved, so. so.
What is the nature of the property and flooding?
Oh.
I believe it was storm water quality related?
So, yeah, apparently because the property was unimproved, they were worried about flooding and debris in the drainage.
Okay, so that in, I appreciate that, because again, if we were to say you have it done by April 11th, then we're basically telling them to violate the condition of use.
When they can't start until 40 days later.
Yeah, I'll admit I wasn't either. What if we went more like 60 days instead? That would get us past that date.
Okay, how about paying the fines and fees and all that within, you know, within 15 or 20 days? And then having the material, I guess, again, I appreciate you raising that issue, otherwise we would have put you in a.
They could stage, they can stage to get ready to go.
Yes, yeah.
We're staged, we're ready to go.
Well, you weren't, because you don't have the machinery there.
You don't have the equipment on site.
Right?
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, but at any rate, I'm prepared to, in light of that, unless we were going to give them exception to the condition that we, I guess, apparently put on there. Of course, if it wasn't going to flood this year, probably not going to flood any year, but nonetheless, if that condition can do anything to April 15th, then I guess we'd give them till, it would be a May date.
Flo, what's your May?
We could do May 9th.
Okay, so they meet all the other conditions besides chipping and grinding, have all the material off, and give it till May 9th? That'd give you roughly three weeks then to get it done in, so that's a pretty short window, and gives you time to stage, and we're going to know, you know, what the settlement is, and all these things that are, and I'd just say, Mr. Saman and Mr. Howson, the audience, that if these are not satisfied, I, you know, and, you know, if there's some reasons why people can't do it, I think there's been enough time given, so, I mean, the action's been taken the last 30 days, shows some progress. The big climb is in the next 30 to 60 days, and so, and if not, I'm, my tolerance level will be very, very low for, you know, any further continuance based upon whatever reason people come up with, that didn't have the money or whatever. They need to be satisfied, and I think there's a plan here, albeit the staff is not recommending that, and I, some of my colleagues are not too happy with this either, but that would be my motion then. LeAnn, detailed, attachment one, do you want to run that one more time so everybody understands? And now we've had a change, please.
No additional wood waste at the site. Chip and grind with permitted equipment.
After April 15th?
After April 15th. Pay all existing fines and fees. Remove inoperable vehicles. Confirmation from code enforcement that the site is sufficiently cleared to meet industrial vacant lot developments requirements. Pay the in-lu fees for right-of-way and roadway improvements and make progress on site improvements. Provide information for the settlement with AQMD.
And that's within two weeks?
In two weeks, yes.
Within 15 days.
Does that cover it?
Okay, did I cover every condition?
Yeah. I'm prepared to second the motion, but I want to make clear that the appellant and the representative understand that what you're hearing in terms of our frustration is not because we have some burning desire to stick it to people. That's not, that's not why we're here. But what we are here to do is make sure that our local laws are enforced equally and in our ordinances. So, again, I said it before, and I said it at the previous meeting, my interest here is trying to get to a solution that's workable, but at the same time, keeping in mind that there could be an appellant next month that was watching this hearing, has watched the last hearing, said, "Well, look at the treatment you applied last time, we'd like the same treatment." And so, that's when we get on some pretty thin ice. So, I agree with the chair that, you know, I think that collective tolerance is probably going to be very, very limited, so we're going to expect results.
Okay. All right, so, the motion would be then including those items as outlined. You understand it, Mr. Saman, on behalf of your client? Okay, and we can, we can give them a written confirmation of this, so we'll clean it up, so you'll have that. And then I would move that we continue this to May 9th, continue the hearing open and with.
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM, 2:00 in the afternoon on May 9th. So, hopefully we'll have a good report and continue to make progress. All right, that's my motion, the second. Any other comments or questions by board members, staff? All right, please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters voting no.
Okay. All right. Go forth and do good work. Got 60 days. All right, Flo.
Okay, so our final item, or our next item, excuse me, is item 54. This is your appointments from your own ranks to various boards and commissions. And we'll be referring to the attachment spreadsheet. So for today's items, we have a few items that we still need to follow up on from the last meeting. And I can just start with the first one, would be the Adult and Aging Commission.
Yes, on this one, I actually spoke at the commission last week, and I've talked with my chief of staff, and assuming that no other members of the board, chief of staff is interested in doing this, Cheryl's willing, Cheryl Venegas is willing to serve in this capacity, at least for this year, and so I would nominate her.
Okay.
All right.
And the next item is the Area For Agency on Aging Governing Board. Supervisor Frost?
I'd like to nominate Felicia Bae as alternate. Spelled B-H-E.
Okay, update that. And then our next item is the Cal ID Ran Board. County Exec?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I need a little bit more time on this nomination.
Okay, all right. Come back.
Our next item?
60 days?
Two weeks.
Is your chipper in working order?
And I also want to point out that I was respectfully asking the board if I could follow up for these items today via a memo to the board with an updated spreadsheet of your own ranks listing.
Sure.
Okay, so the next.
It's shorter, we're all ready.
Your next item is the Human Services Coordinating Council.
Yeah, I would suggest, I guess we have, go ahead.
I would like to make a recommendation to nominate our clerk to that.
Okay, I want to second that. Okay, that's fine, Flo, glad you were willing to do that.
Okay, for your Regional Airport Planning Committee, I would like to recommend that your board would remove this from your own ranks list due to the fact that they are inactive status. The last meeting that was held was March 2013. I understand that in 2014, there were three meetings that were all canceled, and I also spoke with Director John Wheat to confirm this, and also spoke with a representative from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission listed as the contact person who confirmed that the board is inactive. Your next item is the Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board. Supervisor Frost?
Let's see, all right, on the library board.
The public library board.
I'd like to continue that, please.
Okay.
For the San Joaquin Valley Rail Committee, I would also like to recommend that the board remove this from the own ranks list. This body is now an advisory committee to the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority. The membership on this board is not comprised of elected officials, and appointments are made to this body by the SJJPA.
Okay, so noted. Good work.
And then for your final pending item is the Tobacco Securitization Corporation. Mr. Gill?
As fascinating as this corporation is, we cannot find somebody, so I need more time. Maybe 60 days?
Okay, okay.
And that concludes my notes for your own ranks and my comments.
All right, well, thank you, Clerk's Office, County Executive's Office, to the other offices for helping, I said, we narrowed the list down quite a bit, so.
Okay.
All right, that concludes that item. Any else, Flo, you have?
I have nothing further for item 54. Now we're on to your county executive comments.
All right.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I do have one item that I wanted to provide some clarification to the board. Since we had the reduction in our budget starting in 2010, we did make some decisions with mental health and emergency room and the utilization of how those services were provided to those individuals. Since then, we've had ongoing dialogues with our partners in the hospital, and they've always advocated, as they should, that they're getting a lot of traffic into their emergency room, and they wanted some relief. In 2014, they really started their process again with us, and in it, we started having some dialogue with them, saying, "What can we do to alleviate the issues you're having?" A committee was formed at that point that had representatives from Sutter, Dignity, Kaiser, UC Davis, Sacramento Medical Society, DHHS, County Executive's Office, I was the Assistant County Exec, Paul Lake, our Chief Deputy, and Sierra Health Foundation also participated in it. And at that point, our newest member of the board sort of volunteered for that role, so Supervisor Kennedy participated. And we spent better part of 2015, from January till May, working with this group to see what kind of solutions could we bring to alleviate the issues about providing medical care for the, for this population, basically, not stereotyped, but most of them were homeless, they were ending up in emergency departments. That work resulted in us coming to you with a recommendation for, in June 2015, to allocate $5.7 million to create three more crisis residential units. And that's the work that we've been doing since then, is we had one that located in Supervisor Frost's jurisdiction in Rio Linda, we're looking at two more geographical areas. So I want to kind of give that preamble, because since then, there's a grant that's been called the Whole Person Grant, that the state has been asking counties to participate in. And it is using Medicaid dollar amount to help some of this program, to help the homeless or folks that need medical services. In their website, DHCS does say that it is to increase, improve, and achieve integration among county agencies, health plans, providers, and other participating entities, coordinate and appropriate access to care, access to housing and supportive services, health outcome, healthy outcome for this population, data collection, and targeted quality admin improvement benchmarks. You kind of get the flavor of this, a lot of the work that we're already doing in the county. And stated goal at that point is reduction of inappropriate emergency department and inpatient utilization. And when this grant opportunity was put forward to DHHS, our department is always looking for money to see how we can augment our services. They looked at it, they studied the grant with the preamble that I started, that we already have $5.7 million that the board, each year, we're asking you to put in to help some of the goals that are stated here. And they looked at the grant, and the provisions in the grant, they found some difficulties with it. One of them was that if we were to participate, is that to use a matching amount. So the county would have to provide to the state, to the feds, I want to use for discussion purposes, $10 million will be your matching grant, and then we will get matching money coming back. So we had to put our own money into it. Also, there's a six-month requirement of making, reporting on activities and collecting data, and at that point, then the state would access the money, money will come back to The other issue that they, when they analyzed it, it so far sounds like we're already doing this work, we should be in it, is that since we do not have a county hospital, collecting this data is kind of encumbersome. And that's one of the things that, and that works, Supervisor Kennedy, when we were there, we spent some time discussing, how do we get all this data and what do we do with it? So the determination was made that this was not, if you will, a grant that the county was willing to pursue at that point. And so, I wanted to clarify that, because there has been some discussion, and I've had individual board members ask me, "How come the county didn't pursue that?" That is not in any way, I want to leave the board with the impression that we're not interested in grants or working with state and with our partners. They've been fantastic, our health systems, in reducing this issue. But this grant, given the requirements that we had, we did decide to take a pass on it. I am going to ask our director from Department of Health and Human Services to memorialize what I just said, so that you have that for your record, and I want to have her give it to Flo, so that you have the background behind it. But I do not want to leave the board with the impression that if there was any kind of grant money that the county had access to it, that we did not take that seriously. We did take it seriously. We saw the work being very much close to what we're already doing. We have this commitment of $5.7 million that we're putting in there in June budget, you're going to hear again, and we make, every six months or so, we give you a status where we are. So in June, we're slated to come back and let you know what kind of work we're doing on it. So I know that County Council was very careful with me, not to deviate too far off, I know it's not on the agenda, but in talking with County Council, and, is that I did feel that we had to clear the air a little bit, and we will memorialize this in a memo to you.
Thanks, Dave. Mr. Serna, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, and I know Dr. Heller's going to give some more detail?
No, it's a memo that we're going to give you. It's not on the agenda, so we're trying to make sure that we're not.
Understood. So, first of all, I appreciate the careful explanation. What I didn't hear, but what I thought I heard in at least my one-on-one conversations with UNAV and with Dr. Heller, was that we also had other competing grants that were of interest to the county that we did apply for. So, again, to the point that you're stressing, which is making sure the public or, you know, any other elected bodies believed that we were sitting on our hands when we really weren't, it's not just that we were taking hard looks at this particular grant opportunity, but we were looking at a whole menu of grant opportunities, and we did, we did respond affirmatively to apply for those grants as well, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and we will have this in the memo, and some of the funding opportunities that we're still pursuing. No Place Like Home Housing Initiative, we are absolutely in on that. Drug and alcohol Medicaid waiver, we're working on that. Prop 47, we just made the application, the board authorized it two weeks ago. So that's some of the examples that we have of grants that we pursue that come through the county.
Great, thank you.
It's right, Kennedy.
Yeah, I'll further even follow up on that. For the last two years, we have been applying for MHSA dollars, which we've been very successful and very competitive at getting. And so, when, you know, it's insinuated that the county walked away from money and didn't look at this opportunity, I can say for, just to back up with the county exec has had to say, that I myself have been in a number of meetings, not only with our staff, but outside organizations, including the Steinberg Institute, in which our staff was present, I was present and/or my staff was present, in which we took a real good, hard look at this and a good run at this. And frankly, we're not in the position of turning down money if we think it's something that's viable. One thing that I've learned in the last couple of years is that there's about 58 different ways of delivering mental health services in the state of California, and so it's not a one-size-fits-all. Unfortunately, this one didn't pan out. It's not to say that we don't aggressively go after them, and we'll continue to do so, if that's accurate.
And I would just add one comment. I appreciate the update, because I think that, you know, at least having some additional explanation behind it, and we'll get that in written form as well. But, you know, when we get the notice, as it was on today's agenda, that, you know, utilization of beds, it's still, you know, pretty static, and we're having to supplement once again to the conversation we've had over ensuing, you know, a couple of years, if not three years now, of having to continue to put in millions of dollars. And meanwhile, we're, you know, making efforts to try to reduce those bed days, and certainly the impacts on the hospitals, but just, you know, have better access, to Mr. Kennedy's point about, you know, better access for folks who, you know, some of them come to crisis, but before they ever get there. And, you know, I think we've made some good inroads, but, you know, we continue to spend a lot of money. And I guess I would trust, and that's why I make this comment, is that, you know, examining, putting in the continued amount of dollars we're putting in just to buy bed days, if we would have thought that this was, you know, a wise move, you know, then I know we would have looked really hard, whether it made sense to put those, you know, put monies up to match the grant, to try to, you know, achieve the desired outcomes, and being that we don't have a county hospital, I guess we were dependent upon, in large part, if not entirely, on the hospitals to give us that information, both the, those that operate programs, but the psychiatric ones as well, and with the exception of Samar. the psychiatric ones as well, and, with the exception of SMIC, which is, you know, mental health treatment facility, I guess you could put it in category hospitals, but certainly not the, the hospital systems, and so, again, I think that, you know, anytime, you know, you're criticized for not, you know, pursuing dollars, that we need to at least offer an explanation as to why that is, because we rarely turn down that opportunity, if it's going to do good for the folks of this county, so. Yep, all right, any other comments on this? Thank you, Nav, and, and appreciate Dr. Heller and Paul being in the audience this afternoon, so. Okay, without any other, you're going to get another shot tomorrow afternoon, so if you didn't get it all in today, you can be back tomorrow afternoon. Okay, Supervisor comments, may I turn here, Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Peters, Kennedy, Supervisor Cernan?
I'm going to have the clerk focus in on the flyer here. It is that time of year again. The Ban Unsupervised will be playing its fourth, now fourth annual Department of Human Assistance, Department of Health and Human Services Scholarship Fundraising Gig this year, it's at Harlow's here in downtown Sacramento on J Street, midtown Sacramento, I should say, Monday, March 27th, and we're hoping to set a new record in terms of funds raised to match those dollars that our very generous employees in both agencies generate every year to help deserving young people that are heading to college, so I'll probably be doing this a few more times between now and March 27th, it is a school night, as many have pointed out, it's on a Monday this year, but we hope to have yet another good time raising funds for a very good cause.
Very good. Thanks, Phil, to you and your unsupervised crew for raising money for a very good, worthy cause. Okay, if there's nothing else coming for this body, tomorrow, I apologize, we missed lunch today, but tomorrow, if you miss lunch, it's your own fault, because we won't be in session until 2 o'clock, so, so we'll, without, we'll stand in German and be back tomorrow, too.